Good evening, everyone, and welcome. I would like to call this Monday, January 24th, 2022, Meeting of the Bloomington City Council to Order. Thanks for joining us tonight. We will start our meeting as we always do with the Pledge of Allegiance. If you would please rise and join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Once again, good evening, welcome. Thanks for joining us this evening. Mr. Brillard, if you could please call the roll call of the City Council. Councilmember Carter.
Present.
Coulter. Might be on mute there, Councilmember Coulter. Councilmember Delcendro.
Present.
Lohman.
I'm here.
Martin.
Present.
Nelson.
Here.
Mayor Bussey.
Here.
The record show all seven members of the Bloomington City Council are present this evening. Next up on our agenda is the approval of the agenda. And a couple of items that I do want to point out, first of all, if you've tuned in for item 6.3, which is the Xerxes Old Chancapi Road Project easement agreements, we are going to be removing that from the agenda. We're going to place it on the February 7th agenda. So I would like to remove item 6.3 from tonight's agenda. Also like to call everyone's attention to our item 7 on our agenda, which is our hearings, resolutions, and ordinances. We have five officially under that, under that heading tonight. We will have a public comment opportunity under 7.1, which is regarding the local sales tax resolution. Item 7.2, the resolution declaring a climate emergency in Bloomington is not a public hearing, so it will not be an opportunity for public comment there. But we do have then three public hearings, 7.3, which is a time of sale inspection evaluation ordinance, 7.4, the SAC deferral program ordinance and policy, and 7.5, a public hearing regarding target residential picketing ordinances. We will then on item 8.1, we will welcome Chief Hartley this evening to give us a public safety update. So those are the highlights from tonight's agenda. Again, I would move then, unless, unless the council has anything else to add or to change. Councilmember Lohman.
Mayor, I figure I might just throw it up at this point in time. Would, would there be any interest at all? And we've got such a long agenda here of delaying 7.5, opening it up and having that public hearing and then having discussion on that later on? Just want to throw that out there.
How about if we say this, Councilmember? Let's see where we are by the time we get to 7.5 or by the time we get into the agenda a bit? And if it would make more sense to, to delay it to try and cut some time off the agenda? Because you're right, it is a packed agenda. We could consider it then. Would that be okay? Councilmember Coulter. Councilmember Coulter, I believe you're on mute. He's not on mute. Do we have, do we have this Councilmember Coulter muted here?
Councilmember Coulter, try again, please.
We're not hearing you, Nathan. Why don't we try one more time? And then if need be, why don't you log out and log back in again? Why don't you do that now? Councilmember Nelson.
Yeah, and I don't know, Mayor, if this is possible at all, but I know that in the past, we've done our public health updates at the beginning of the meeting, and I was wondering if it might make sense for people that are interested in the update regarding the police activity and things, if that is possible to do at the beginning as opposed to the end. Don't mean to put Chief Hartley into a spot earlier than he wants to be, but maybe that helps.
Thank you, Councilmember Nelson. Actually, I brought that up earlier and thought about that myself as well. My hesitation with a, with an agenda this long, people who saw it as item 8.1 might not be tuning in until later, you know, looking to catch it as item 8.1, and if we did it right away, I'm afraid they might miss it. And I think in hindsight, yes, we'd, we've been thinking about it, probably should have had 8.1, the public safety update underneath our introductory items as well, like we do with the, the COVID-19 updates. I'm a bit hesitant to move it now, just in case there are folks who are planning to tune in a bit later to catch out, to catch it at item 8.1.
Thank you, Mayor. I think that makes sense, and I think lesson learned, so, yeah, sounds good.
So council, unless there are other changes or additions to this evening's agenda, I would move tonight's agenda, noting that we are going to be removing item 6.3, and it will be heard then on, or it will be removed and moved to the February 7th meeting agenda. No further discussion on this? I need a second?
Second, Councilmember Lohman.
Got a motion and a second by Councilmember Lohman to adopt tonight's agenda as stated. There are no further discussion. Mr. Brillard. Carter.
Aye.
Coulter.
Aye.
We can hear you. Perfect. Delcendro.
Aye.
Lohman.
Just kidding, aye.
Martin.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Mayor Bussey.
Aye.
Motion carries 7-0. We have an agenda for this evening, and that will take us to item 4, which is our public comment period, a 20-minute period at the start of each meeting, where we allow residents to speak for up to five minutes on items not on tonight's agenda. As we always do, we start with item 4.1, which is a response to prior meeting's public comments. Mr. Verbrugge.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Councilmember, this evening. Last meeting on the 10th of January, we had several comments before council, only one had specific questions requesting follow-up. Oliva, and Mr. Oliva expressed concerns regarding the city's advertising for job openings and specifically language in there that encourages applicants from BIPOC communities, Black Indigenous, or persons of color, as well as other historically disenfranchised and, and underrepresented communities as well, and suggested that perhaps the, the city's employment advertising is violating EEOC guidelines or even employment law. Our legal team did do an initial review, and, and we're confident that the posting is in compliance with the law. We have taken a look at our internal practices, and we agree that the city of Bloomington can make a stronger statement about commitment to diversity and be consistent with what other large employers nationally and locally are doing. We, we believe it is important to make sure that the city of Bloomington is an equal opportunity employer and is committed to creating a diverse environment that reflects the community we serve. And that's a statement that we can and will add into our future job postings to make it clear. I do want to also make clear that in no way do we believe that by encouraging certain populations, especially those who have been historically disenfranchised or, or underrepresented, to apply for positions is by any sense of the word discouraging other populations from employing. The history of systemic racism, institutionalized racism, is that communities that have not often had opportunities because of that experience are reluctant to put themselves forward because of that history. And so the statement that we have in our advertising is acknowledging that and making sure they know that this is an employer who recognizes that past and is committed to not continuing passing justiceses. So with that, Mr. Mayor and councilmembers, unless you have other questions, that's the response to the prior public comment.
Council, any questions of Mr. Verbrugge? If not, thank you, Mr. Verbrugge. I also wanted to add, based on Mr. Oliva's comments last week, where he, he basically questioned the intent and the legality and the messaging of the Bloomington equal opportunity statement, that is part of all of our job postings. And for a point of reference, here's what the Bloomington equal opportunity statement says, word for word. "The city of Bloomington is an equal opportunity employer and actively seeks a diverse workforce that reflects the community we serve. Applicants who are Black, Indigenous, or persons of color are encouraged to apply. We also encourage women, veterans, members of the LGBTQIA community, and individuals with disabilities to apply." So that's the Bloomington equal opportunity statement. And Mr. Oliva brought up a number of points in his comments, and one point in particular was troubling to me, and I wanted to address it. And so Mr. Oliva made this statement, and I tried to get it as close as I could based on his comments, based on the, the recording from last week. Mr. Oliva stated, "You've created a situation where if a Black man, a white woman, and a white man all apply for this job, and a Black man is hired, people will look back and question if it's because of his race or if he was the most qualified." Mr. Oliva went on to say, "You can say you don't hire people based on race all day. I even spoke with Faith Jackson, racial equity coordinator for Bloomington, who said that the city doesn't hire based on race. But your job description clearly states who you're looking for, and it's not white people." I believe, folks, this type of language is just totally unacceptable. Basically, what Mr. Oliva implied here very strongly is that Bloomington ignores the qualifications of applicants, either the required or the desired qualifications. He implied that we ignore the expected knowledge, skills, and abilities that are included in every job description, and that we don't give any credence to education or experience. Mr. Oliva implies very directly here that the city of Bloomington hires only based on race. And based on those comments, I can assume that the logic would extend to other groups mentioned in our EEO statement. So women, or disabled people, or members of our LGBTQI community, or veterans, basically anyone who is not a white male, was not hired based on their qualifications, but rather because they're part of a group listed in the city's EEO statement. This is incredibly insulting to everyone and anyone who works for the city of Bloomington, especially everyone and anyone who belongs to a group included in the equal opportunity statement. I have said before, and I will continue to say, Bloomington city staff is absolutely second to none. Judging from the number of candidates who routinely apply for openings on city staff and the quality of those candidates, it's absolutely clear that the city of Bloomington is a destination employer. We are an employer of choice for talented people looking to work as part of a great organization. Bloomington has always hired the best people, period, the best people. To imply anything otherwise is offensive, and it's flat out wrong. Now, it would be easy to think that perhaps Mr. Oliva misspoke, or that speaking off the cuff, he was incorrect when he made his remarks, but in fact, Mr. Oliva was reading from a script. He meant what he said, and he said what he meant. And I think Mr. Oliva owes the employees of the city of Bloomington an apology. Council, any questions on that? If not, we will move on to item 4.2 of our public comment period, which is the public comment period itself. As I said, a 20-minute period where we allow folks to speak up to five minutes on items not on tonight's agenda. It's typically not a back and forth. We'll offer statements of clarification or fact, but it's not a back and forth. It's an opportunity for the council to listen, and then we would reply if necessary at next week's meeting or the next possible meeting, as we just did, to the response in the prior meeting's public comments. So item 4.2, our public comment period, I don't believe, was Ms. Ness signed up this week? I thought she was. Mayor, Ms. Ness registered to speak by phone. Ah, very good. And I believe she was the first one to, to chime in. So Nora, if we could please unmute the phone of Sally Ness to speak in our public comment period, item 4.2.
Hey, as a reminder, if you wish to speak for public comment, you may press a star one on your telephone keypad. Thank you.
Ms. Ness, you there? Ms. Ness, you there?
I'm here.
Go ahead, please.
Okay, okay. So, yeah, Sally Ness. Tonight, I am providing an update on the overuse and noncompliant use of 8201 Park Avenue and how it continues to negatively impact the Smith Park neighborhood. That the overuse and noncompliant use is injurious to the surrounding neighborhood and is an excessive burden on the streets in Smith Park. This summer, a child was at the crosswalk and a car sped through it. If the child would have taken one step forward, the car would have hit the child. The traffic continues to be too much and too fast, and it should be addressed. A road median is not the answer, and in my opinion, it is more dangerous. The road median causes drivers to hug the curb, and so vehicles are closer to the pedestrians on the sidewalk waiting to cross the street. One step into the street, and a pedestrian will likely be hit. The road median also does not allow room for those walking or riding their bike on the west side of Park Avenue. The traffic sign on the median has been hit and knocked over three times that I am aware of. It does not make sense there's a road median on a street that does not take too long to cross and is not an arterial or a collector. To be clear, because of the median, traffic is too close to the curb, and there is no room for pedestrians and bikers on the west side of Park Avenue. The median should not have been approved or built, and the city should address it. In addition to the median, there's a bump out on the southwest corner of 82nd and Park. The bump out is also not the answer to the traffic that continues to be too much and too fast, and in my opinion, it is more dangerous. What the bump out has caused is those driving east on 82nd to move into the lane of those driving west. The busy intersection was not safe before the median, and the bump outs were constructed, and the intersection is not safe after. In addition to the median and bump out, the city installed a stop sign on Oakland and 82nd. The result, cars on 82nd do not slow down because cars on Oakland are stopped. There was one recommendation that would have slowed traffic and increased safety. Unfortunately, it was never required. It was in the staff report dated September 10th, 2018. It stated, "A stop sign for eastbound traffic on East 82nd Street is also recommended for this intersection control." Other concerns include the additional vehicle conflict at the new park entrance where 8201 Park patrons try to exit onto Park Avenue, especially when the view is obstructed by the patrons who park, who parked in the entrance, regardless that park parking requires parking in a designated parking space. 821 Park patrons continue to park in the street regardless of the off-street parking regulation, park too close to driveways, park where it is identified as no parking and park, and no parking fire lane, and park too close to fire hydrants. 8201 patrons are also parking in front of the large gymnasium where the signs say no parking. About the traffic numbers, the staff report dated July 23rd states, "The volume on East 82nd remains under 1,000 vehicles with this increase in trips, consistent with residential livability and pedestrian and motor safety." Recall that the school added 50 additional students but did not add any trips because additional students were hybrid students, even though it was stated that staff would be using the buildings on Fridays. The point is that the trips on Fridays are over what is consistent with residential livability, and yet there is a Veep truck serving Veep patrons on Friday. There's a flyer that informs Veep patrons to park in the street in this already congested area. It is not safe for pedestrians or motorists. What also is not safe is that there are no entrance lights to the parking lot at 8201 Park or Smith Park. The one entrance that was lighted is now an exit only. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ness. Nora, do we have anyone else online who wishes to speak in tonight's public comment period, item 4.2?
I don't know if you can hear me.
Yes, good evening.
Hi, good evening. My name is Brian Armitage. I live at 9653 16th Avenue South. I have spoken with Councilmember Lohman, but wanted to bring my concerns with full council as well. I live in a drive-off 16th Avenue that has had direct trash pickup to the three houses off 16th Avenue for the last 50 years. Not any persistent issues in the past, but now this year, we've had several instances where our trash was not picked up. We're told there was an issue there, and we were not told there was an issue until one of the residents tried to contact the city. We were told that our drive is now too dangerous to pick up the trash, which has literally been done for the last 50 years that this drive has existed. I have a few concerns about this. The first of which, as an orthopedic trauma surgeon and somebody who deals with hip fractures on a regular basis, the city is now requiring, and I know that there is still an inquiry into this, older residents to move an extended distance, move their trash and extended distance up to the street, which puts them at a high risk for fall and a high risk for hip fractures, which as a part of my daily activities and the work that I do, I know puts them at a 50 to 80% risk of mortality within a year of having a hip fracture. And if the drive is too dangerous for young, able-bodied trash collectors to go down or a trash truck to go down, I don't know how it is a safe place for the older residents to drag large trash cans down. Another concern of mine is disparity with the surrounding communities. I know that the city of Bloomington had consolidated down and eliminated the multiple options for trash pickup, which in and of itself is not an issue, but the same service that provides, that is saying they cannot come down our private drive to pick up the trash anymore, and changing the policy that's been in place does provide the service in the city of, in the, in the Minnetoka area to the residents that are there readily. And so there is a disparity in how the communities are being dealt with. I'm also concerned about the lack of information notification. We found out by just having our trash not picked up multiple weeks in a row, which around the holidays is quite an inconvenience when you have activities going on and you're starting to pile up trash at your house. The other concern that I have is this consists amongst all the three services in the city. So are all the private drives in Bloomington now not receiving trash pickup, or has this changed? I, you know, and when we contacted the city, spoke with Dr., with Councilman Lohman, who has said that he would be working on this issue and looking into it, my big concern here is that the city has taken away our ability to hire or provide our own disposal of trash with the policies and like some things that it's done. So essentially, the residents on this drive now, if there is a risk of them falling because this has been deemed a treacherous throughfare, or whatever it is being deemed, the residents have now lost their ability to hire somebody and protect their own safety. And none of the people on, you know, none of the three houses that are affected by this have any concern about, you know, the concern is not whether or not there is an additional issue here, something needs to be done. We pay for plowing or snowblowing of the entire drive. The drive is cleared off and made to be cleared because we'd like it to be safe for people coming there. Regularly, Amazon, UPS, USPS, FedEx, all come down the drive and drop off packages at the house, at all the houses directly. But for some reason, this situation has come up with a trash collection service, and we feel that we have no choice but to just subscribe to whatever decisions are made without having the ability to actually affect and make a decision about our own safety. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Armitage. I, I think you said it at the, the start, but if you could say again, what is your address, Mr. Armitage?
9653 16th Avenue South.
All right. Thank you much. We will, we will certainly have staff looking at this. We'll get back to you. Councilmember Lohman?
Yeah, Mayor, I just wanted to just be, just be clear that we had the questions that Mr. Armitage had. The questions I had was the lack of notification, 50 years of service in that particular location, given the contract had been going on for quite some time. Now, why the, the two-week piece? And then, are all private drives being treated the same across Bloomington regarding the contract? Is there anything else that we missed, Mr. Armitage?
Well, I think the, you know, I really do think that with the age of the residents on this drive and the extended periods for which they've all been on this drive, that the inability to hire a service to address this and not having, I mean, to be quite honest with you, I mean, I'm, I'm an orthopedic trauma surgeon. I fix hips on a regular basis. I am an expert in this area, and I know the risk of, of having a fall in the elderly and what it does to health and mortality. And if the drive is truly too dangerous for a truck to go down, I think the city really needs to consider the situation it's putting its residents in, to say that they do not have an option for hiring a service to come down there. And so the city is, is truly putting the residents of this drive at direct risk for their health and safety in doing this.
Thank you, Mr. Armitage. Nora, do we have anyone else on the phone wishing to speak? Item 4.2.
Sir, at this time, no one's on cue wishes to speak for public comment. You may proceed.
Thank you, Nora. Is there anyone here in the council chambers who wishes to speak on item 4.2 tonight, our public comment period?
I'll go first. My name's Rick Oliva. Maybe you just heard my name. I will not apologize, and right now, I'm angry. I was going to thank you and Mr. Verbrugge for the nice thoughtful email that was sent to me earlier on. I get here, and now I hear this nonsense. I will not apologize. Let's be very clear, I was speaking about specific language in the job posting. Says, "The city of Bloomington is an equal opportunity employer and actively seeks," actively seeks. EEOC says, for example, a help wanted ad that seeks females or recent college graduates, may discourage men and people over 40, blah, 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 and is a violation of applicable laws. Once again, I have five minutes, I have four minutes and 12 seconds left. I can read this all day. "The city of Bloomington is an equal opportunity employer and actively seeks." A help wanted ad that seeks, maybe in violation of applicable laws. I hope I've made myself clear on that. Now, let me give you a story about me. Why is this disturbing to me? Why did I use myself as an example? Why did I say that if I apply for the job and I get hired, people might question my integrity? About 10 years ago, I was working at McNally Smith College of Music. It was my dream job. I loved, I loved working there. I was a music teacher. It's what I wanted to do. They had financial troubles, and I needed to find another job. I had been teaching for a long time. I didn't have a Minnesota license to teach. I had a friend of mine who is a, who at the time was a principal at a high school. I won't say his name, I won't say the school's name because I don't have this in writing, and I don't want anyone to come back at me for like libel. He said, "You should absolutely get your teaching degree." Why? Ask yourself why. Is it because I'm such a charismatic person because I'm such a great speaker? Is it because I had been teaching for 15 years, both privately at the West Bank School of Music, at McNally Smith College of Music, for five years as a teacher? Is that why he said I should get a teaching degree? Is it because of my passion and dedication to the students? No. It's because you're a minority male music teacher, you're hard to find, you're very desirable, you're very hirable. That was the main qualification. So when you put out a posting that seeks, and I was on the school board, I understand the nuance of saying, you know, "Our legal team says that we aren't in, in violation of the law, but we're going to change our wording anyways." I, I, I can read between the lines, I know what's happening, because in the email that Mr. Verbrugge sent to me today, a little after 2:00, he says, "Well, we're working on the wording to make a more, a stronger statement. We have not formally settled on our new language." Why would you need new language if your old language was so perfect? If I'm the piece of shit because I'm saying that it's wrong, right? Why would you have to change it? The new language, maybe, it's still in the works. "The city of Bloomington is an equal opportunity employer and is committed to creating a diverse environment that reflects the community we serve. All qualified applicants will receive consideration for employment without regard to race, color, religion, gender, gender identity or expression, sexual orientation, national origin, genetics, disability, age, or veteran status. Applicants who are Black, Indigenous, or persons of color are encouraged to apply. We, we also encourage women, veterans, members of the LGBTQIA community, and individuals with disabilities to apply." What's missing? Can you tell? Well, I know, I have to, I'm addressing, I'm not addressing them. What's missing? The word seeks. I'm pretty sure that's what I said last week. That's what I said, I believe, the violation was. I want the city to succeed. I don't want us to get sued. I don't want us to get sued because someone gets hired and now they, or someone doesn't get hired, now they file a claim with the EEOC. So I came in here, I gave you my personal story. You changed the wording, just like I asked you to, and then somehow I'm the bad guy. I had a whole bunch of other things I want to talk about. Maybe it'll be next time. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Oliva. Anyone else in the audience wish to speak to item 4.2 tonight? No one coming forward. Nora, last call for anybody on the phone wishing to speak to item 4.2? Nora, is there anyone on the phone wishing to speak to item 4.2? Did we lose Nora?
Hello?
Sir, your line is open.
Good evening. Welcome.
Good evening, Mayor Bussey and city council members. I'm Dave Prestus. I've been a Bloomington resident since 1975.
Mr. Prestus?
I'm here to provide.
Mr. Prestus? Were you calling, were you calling to talk about item 4.2, the public comment period? Or were you, I think we had your name on the list for the local sales tax resolution.
Well, I was told to call in for this, but I can wait for it. That's fine.
Nope, that's exactly right. We had you on the list for.
It has to do with the, Dwan Golf Course, so wherever it falls.
That is, that is coming up in the, we've got you on the list of folks who want to talk about that. That's coming up on item 7.1, and we will get back to you then if you just hold on the line until then, it'd be great.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you. Seeing no one coming forward and having no one else on the line, I will close tonight's public comment period. And we will move on to item five on our agenda, which is the introduction of new employees. We like to take an opportunity at each council meeting to introduce some of the new employees here in the city of Bloomington. Folks get a chance to introduce themselves to both, to both the council and to the members of the public, especially if they're going to be working out in the public and interacting with folks. And we've got, I believe, two folks tonight. First up is Mr. Kevin Toski, who's our Assistant City Attorney. And Ms. Manderscheid, would you like to give him, Mr. Toski, a bit of an introduction?
I would. I can't wait for him to get his camera on. All right, in the interest of time, I'll just get started. I see that Mr. Toski is with us. Kevin comes to us, comes to the city of Bloomington from the League of Minnesota Cities, where he worked as a staff attorney for the past four years. And in that role, he answered all kinds of questions, including some questions from me, and presented on aspects of municipal law at lots of conferences and trainings. Prior to that, he served as a judicial law clerk in Anoka County. And at the city of Bloomington, he will be representing primarily, although we all work together, he'll be primarily working with the community development and park and rec departments. With that, I'll turn it over to Kevin for anything that he would like to add.
Good evening, Mr. Toski. Welcome.
Sorry, Mr. Mayor and council members. Thank you. My phone, or my video camera didn't quite work there, but I'm really, yeah, I'm really excited. Started working right away on stuff with planning and parks, so really enjoying it so far. A little challenging starting during the pandemic, I'd say. Isn't quite as many people around as there would be normally, but it's fun so far. It's something new every day and I'm enjoying it.
Well, welcome. Glad to have you here. So, quick trivia here. Pat Beatty and I, Pat Beatty from the League of Cities and I, we started at the League of Cities within a month of each other, actually.
Oh, really?
About 10 years ago, yes. And she's, she continues to be very successful there. So, running the, the legal division and hiring good people like you, and I'm glad we could hire you away from her.
Yeah, I am too. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you much. Looking forward to meeting you in person very soon.
All right, thank you. Appreciate it.
Our second new employee to welcome this evening is Scott Roth, who's the Assistant Golf Course Manager. And I think I saw Peter Curbers here earlier.
Yes.
There he is. Good evening, Peter. Welcome.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council members. I'm pleased to announce the hiring of Scott Roth. Scott is a 20-plus PGA of America golf professional. He comes to us most recently from the National Sports Center in Blaine, where he's held a number of positions in the golf industry, Director of Golf, Head Golf Professional, as well as Director of Strategic Initiatives for the National Sports Center. So Scott began working about two weeks ago on January 10th. So we're certainly excited to have him here at Dwan and we're excited about all the experience he can bring to the city of Bloomington. So Scott?
Thank you, Peter. And thank you, everyone. I appreciate being able to talk to you this evening. Very excited to be working with Peter and everyone at Dwan. Again, I'm just excited to be a part of the fabric of the city of Bloomington and the community. Everybody's been very, very welcoming to me so far, my first couple of weeks, and that alone may be the most exciting part, is just having a warm, welcoming environment. And we can't wait to get the course opened up here in a couple of months. So thank you again.
Well, thank you, and we can't wait for the course to open either, to get to that point in this Minnesota winter that we get, can get the golf course open. Well, welcome aboard. I know at least one council member is glad to see the insignia on your jacket here. Councilmember Carter?
I just wanted to say, go Cyclones.
Well, thanks for joining us tonight, Mr. Roth. Again, look forward to seeing you in person very soon. Thanks.
Absolutely.
We will move on to item six on our agenda, which is our consent business. Councilmember Nelson, you have our consent agenda tonight. Good evening.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. So just a quick note, I think item 6.3, we moved to February 7th with the action on the agenda. Just wanted to note that, that we had already taken care of that item. And then I believe we have one hold for item 6.9, which I think we typically hold. It's our legislative agenda and just kind of to talk through that a little bit more. Otherwise, did I miss anything? Or did anybody else have anything else to hold?
Mr. Mayor and Councilmember Nelson, council members, if I may, with the action to hold 6.9, the legislative agenda, I would recommend moving it to organizational business because we have an item later on the agenda, 7.1, that is related. And if the council chose not to proceed and we already had the legislative agenda approved, we have a disapproval of an item than approved agenda. So why don't we just put it to the organizational business and we'll discuss it then, if that's okay with the council?
I think that would work. So if we would move item 6.9, and we will make that item, we will make that item 8.2 on our organizational business and then bump everything else down by one. So the Board of Review appointments, 8.3, HRA Commission appointments, 8.4, and City Council Policy and Issue Updates, 8.5. If that's acceptable to all? Very good.
Do we need to do anything formally to do that?
Mayor members, it would be a part of your motion on the consent business item, similarly taking action on 6.3.
Okay. So I'll try to be as formal as I can. So we're going to move to approve items 6.1, 6.2, 6.4 through 6.8. We are going to move 6.3 to February 7th, and we are going to move 6.9 to Organizational Business 8, something or other.
8.5?
8.2?
8.2. We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion by Councilmember Nelson and a second by Councilmember DeLisandro to accept tonight's consent business as stated. And no further questions from the council? Mr. Brillert? Carter?
Aye.
Coulter?
Aye.
DeLisandro?
Aye.
Lohman?
Aye.
Martin?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Mayor Bussey?
Aye. Motion carries 7-0.
Moving on to item seven, which are hearings, resolutions, and ordinances. And our first item under this is a public comment opportunity for a local sales tax resolution. This is item 7.1. Mr. Verbrugge, are you going to introduce this and kick us off on this one?
Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor and council members. For some time, actually more than six years or so, the city council has been talking about necessary improvements to city facilities and various amenities in the community. And over the past five, six years, we have been working on a plan to address those facility needs and try to do timely improvements that will not adversely impact Bloomington taxpayers to the greatest extent possible, recognizing that many of our city facilities are of a certain age. And most of the, most of the facilities, well, all of the facilities we're talking about here are, well, most of them are 50-plus years old. The outlier is the Center for the Arts, which is 20 years old. But when, when a city reaches a certain age in a life cycle, facilities just are at a point where they require either significant improvement or replacement. And for a number of our facilities, that's where we're at. Case in point, we have a number of fire stations that are slated for replacement over the next several years. We have an improvement at our Public Works Facility that needs to occur and is scheduled to occur in the next couple of years. And we have tried to, we have tried to utilize the property tax base to deal with those facilities that are tied to the critical services that we provide. Now, as we've looked at options for addressing some of these facilities, one of the options that is available is to pursue approval of a local option sales tax. And so the state legislature, through the, the state legislature will review requests from local municipalities to implement a local sales tax to pay for the costs of improvements that are of regional significance. And so as we look at our facilities, we identified four specifically that meet that legislative test and that by getting a local sales tax would relieve Bloomington taxpayers of a significant tax burden. The Bloomington Ice Garden is in need of significant improvement, a roof replacement, refrigeration, and other mechanical, in addition to some other facility improvements and enhancements and modifications. The, the Public Health Facility is, is functionally obsolete for its, both its age, its size, and its mission, as is Creekside. And the Dwan Clubhouse at the golf course is of a similar condition. I referenced earlier the Center for the Arts. The issue there is that we have resident arts organizations that, when the center was built, it was identified as the home of these resident arts organizations. And due to their success, we are frankly crunched for space in that center. So these, these nonprofit arts organizations are now having to go out and actually pay facility charges at other locations for rehearsals and, and other purposes, which is, I think, antithetical to what the Arts Center was intended for when it was first constructed. So the project there is an expansion of the Arts Center to continue to accommodate and allow growth in the resident arts organizations serving Bloomington. So the local sales tax, what it does is it allows us to capture a much broader tax base. The local sales tax, if a half cent, or I'm sorry, a half, one, a half-cent sales tax, if that were implemented, would generate about $11 million a year in revenue. And from that revenue, we could finance a number of projects and repay those over the course of 20 years. And so these projects, if we were to do them with Bloomington property taxpayer dollars, would cost a median value home about $210 a year, based on the current median value home cost. If we were to have a local sales tax available, the cost for the, for the average household in Bloomington would be about $70, $72 a year. So one-third of the cost if we were to utilize our own property tax base. So the, the resolution that's in front of the council right now is to ask the state legislature to consider granting a local sales tax to the city of Bloomington. And if the legislature does approve such sales tax, it will have to come back to Bloomington voters and be approved in a referendum in November, or at the next general, actually a general election in the next couple of years would be the window. Our thinking right now is that it would be November of 2022 if it passes the legislature this year. So I'm going to stop there, Mr. Mayor, and take any questions that you or council members may have. And if there are other points that need to be made, we have staff who are working on the various projects as well as topic matter experts to answer your questions.
Thank you, Mr. Verbrugge. Council, any questions? Councilmember Lohman?
So, manager, you alluded to it earlier. Thank you, Mayor, as well. But I wanted, and I know we've covered this in the past, but there are some folks who are just tuning in tonight. And so maybe if you could provide a, kind of a, a short primer on those folks who are with fixed incomes and those folks who, you know, this is a regressive tax, if you could comment on that. And then I know in the past, we've had folks who have seen that we've had a couple of different surveys that are out there, and there were certain items on those surveys, for example, natural resources that top that list. Why these four items as opposed to some of those other items that are out there?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council members. Councilmember Lohman, to the first question you asked about the sales tax, it is what is referred to as a regressive tax. And what that means is because it is a flat rate, that people who are at a lower income are feeling that tax impact at a greater, you know, the greater impact than people of higher income for whom that rate may be of lesser consequence. And so that's what they refer to as a regressive tax. Now, the property tax, by comparison, is, is referred to as a progressive tax because the tax associated with your property increases based on the value of the property. And so that's, that's why they refer to as progressive, is the more the property costs, the more tax you're going to pay. Okay? So when we look at the local sales tax, what's important to note is that the, the essential needs that the state of Minnesota states is tax exempt, things like food, clothing, baby products, feminine products, the, the tax exempt classification does not change. And, you know, there isn't an additional tax classification adjustment for local sales tax. So we think the more important issue here with the, with the regressive nature is actually relieving Bloomington taxpayers of the tax burden because property taxes, if these projects were paid for property taxes, would, it would cost three times more than the average household. Okay? And if you're a homeowner or a renter, it doesn't matter because an increase in property taxes, you'll either pay it as, you know, for your home if you own it, or you're going to pay it through rent if you're a renter. So the, the value here is that the revenue stream, which is a much broader tax base, it's not just Bloomington residents, it's a much broader tax base, relieves Bloomington taxpayers of that tax burden. And then the second, I'm sorry, Mr. Lohman was.
I can just give you, sorry, I gave you a.
Oh, how these projects were, yeah, selected. There is, there is an allowance in state statute for projects that are a contiguous trail. But a natural resource project, especially one that's undefined right now, would not meet the statutory criteria as it is currently in state law.
Thank you, manager.
Council, any additional questions? Councilmember DeLisandro?
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Verbrugge, can you speak a little bit to how, how the tax? Mr. Verbrugge, can you speak a little bit to how, how the tax process, for lack of a better way to put it, ends, I guess? My understanding is that this, this tax is not something that's permanent. It can, it can be re-upped if you have additional projects, correct? But if these, once these projects are funded, if we did not have anything else, the, the tax would end. Is that correct?
Mr. Mayor and councilmembers, Councilmember De La Sondro, that is correct. I'm going to invite our Chief Financial Officer, Lori Economy Scholler, to address that.
Ms. Economy Scholler, good evening, welcome.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor, currently, we are forecasted a twenty-year duration of the tax. That is the maximum that is allowed under the current statute process. And that duration would fund the four projects at their depths, which is the interest in financing cost over the twenty-year period. So should one or any of the projects not pass in the voter piece at the, in November, the half-cent sales tax would, would continue, but the duration would be shorter. It would fund as much as what we need, and then the Department of Revenue would discontinue it.
Councilmember Nelson?
Thanks, Mayor. And I guess my question is just, what is the process in terms of consideration of each of these projects? We're not approving these projects tonight. There'll be much further discussions, much greater detail before, I assume, it gets on the ballot. Can you just talk to what that process looks like if people have concerns about any of the particular projects or what they might look like?
Sure. Mr. Mayor and councilmembers, Councilmember Nelson, first at the legislature, each of the projects that are proposed would have to meet the, the statutory requirement, regional significance, and, and Ms. Economy Scholler has some info about that, if, if you want more explanation there, or the, or other qualifications of the project. And then if it is approved by the legislature, when it is on the ballot for referendum, each of the items stands alone, so that voters would not be voting to approve all four of the projects, or however many appear on the referendum, they would be voting for each one separately. And so it is possible that all, some, or none may be approved, depending on... The city will have public education and information materials available regarding each of those projects as we proceed, both during the time it's being considered by the legislature and if approved by the legislature in the period leading up to the referendum, so that voters are fully aware of what it is they're being asked to approve.
And then a quick follow-up to that, if I might, Mayor?
Please.
Um, when would we do, like, the project development, the design? I mean, you know, the, the, any of these renovations or projects or rebuilds are gonna take significant design work and things like that, which would take expenditures. Are those covered by this? Would that be done before it went to referendum, or would that be done after they were approved by the voters?
Mr. Verbrugge?
Councilmembers, Councilmember Nelson, I'm gonna ask, I'm gonna ask Ms. Economy Scholler if she would respond to that, because I'm having a little bit of bandwidth issue right now, and I wanna make sure that this point is made.
Ms. Economy Scholler?
Mayor and councilmember Nelson, when we look at each of the projects, I can say that there are going to be specific pieces that...
And Lori, Lori, excuse me? We're having a hard time hearing you again. I think our microphone troubles again.
I will speak louder, I will use an outer voice. When we look at each project, we're gonna have to really analyze each one of them and talk about each one of them over the next few months to, I would say, look at maybe the timing, which project would go first, and maybe explore that, and which one might be one of the more wants versus needs, and that might be the last one. And so it, just, for example, if the concert hall is approved, but it's number four in line, to design it today and price out the cost today, when we might build it in three years, does not make all the total efficient process. So we would look at each one timing. I think there's needs to be some decisions that needs to be made between the council, between now and then of May, of where some of these processes, or where the community center might go. Some of those things, I think we need to get a better handle on, so that when we're having the education with our residents, we can answer their questions in a much more detailed and responsive way. But I don't think we're gonna get the full costing and full design work done in three months.
And so, Mr. Mayor, if I may, what's, what's important then is that voters will understand that whatever they approve for a project, we cannot exceed that amount. And so any project that does come forward as an approved project would have to fit within that approved amount.
Mayor and councilmembers, the intent of the entire project piece here is that we're gonna, we would be looking at issuing general obligation sales tax revenue bonds, as the revenue for the sales tax is pledged to these bonds. At no time is the intent at this point to subsidize any of this with general obligation bonds. It would be normal sales tax bonds funded by the sales tax.
Thank you. Council, additional questions? And I think, I think I heard Councilmember Loman ask the question, well, why, why these four projects? And I, I just wanted to make that very clear. I mean, first of all, is the need for these four projects, there's definitely is the need there. But also criteria within this local sales tax program is that they have to be of regional significance. So there has to be a regional use and regional significance. And the argument can obviously be made for all those four projects that were described, that they do indeed have regional significance. I think every hockey player across the metro, probably in Minnesota, has played at Bloomington Ice Garden at one time or another, so that certainly has regional significance. We have data showing that people from basically across Minnesota and across the country come to the Bloomington Center for the Arts for performances. The, the combined replacement for Creekside and Bloomington Public Health Center, Bloomington provides public health work for Bloomington, Edina, and Richfield, so that's got a regional significance. And finally, Dwan Golf Course, the rebuild of the clubhouse there. We know that Dwan is one of the most played golf courses in the state, and we know that people from, again, across the Twin Cities come and play Dwan for a variety of reasons. So we can make the solid argument that all four of these projects are indeed regional significant, regionally significant, and, and are worthy of, of being a part of a, a local option sales tax program. Councilmember Coulter, a question?
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I'm, I'm sorry, I'm a little bit late to the, the train here, but I just wanted to ask, the city manager earlier referenced some of the public safety facilities, in particular fire stations that, that Bloomington is rebuilding. And I'm just wondering, you know, given mutual aid agreements and so on, was there any discussion about the use of, of a, of a local sales tax for public safety facilities in, in, in addition to or instead of the, the projects that are proposed here?
Mr. Verbrugge?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and councilmembers. Councilmember Coulter, we did not pursue the fire stations as projects because the mutual aid agreements aren't necessarily at the, at the threshold of the criteria for, for regional benefit. If, if, if a city from greater Minnesota, which maybe serves as a, a hub for a, a number of communities in a rural area, was providing fire service, I think that more easily makes that argument. I think it's hard within the metro environment here to say that we do provide regional service with our fire department, because the vast majority of the time spent responding and the protection area is within our own borders. And, and again, to the, to the point made earlier by myself and by the mayor, the facilities that we have proposed have a significant number of users from outside of Bloomington, and it is not unreasonable to expect with facilities like that, that the, the improvements be paid for users coming from outside the community, which is exactly why we're looking at this local sales tax as an option. And that, and, and you can't make that case with the fire department, for the most part.
Thank you.
Ms. Economy Scholler?
For the studies that we have received from the Minnesota Extension Office, it does indicate that seventy-five percent of the residents, or the monies that would come for this revenue source, would be from visitors to Bloomington, non-residents. So that regional impact is being paid by the visitors to our city.
Thank you for that clarification. Council, anything else? I don't see any hands going up. So what I would like to do here officially, state law doesn't require a, a public hearing on this, but we certainly wanted to get public comment on this. It's, it's a, it's a big step for the city, and it's a big discussion, discussion and decision for the city to be making. So we did wanna make this a, an opportunity for public comment, and invited people to call in, make a reservation, just have an opportunity to speak. So we're gonna start going through that list now. We'll, we'll limit you to five minutes, and if you could do less than that, that'd be great. And if, if you could stick to the, just one, just one moment, please, if you could. If you could stick to the topic at hand, please, just the, the, the topic in front of us here. And, and, you know, brevity is, you know, brevity is best. We're, we're already at seven o'clock, this could be a long one if we're, we're not careful. So would invite you to do so with as much brevity as you possibly can. We had three folks call ahead of time and kind of reserved spots asked to go. Karen Nordstrom, I see on the list, Dave Prestus, and then Josh Sirdamacki. Those were the three that called ahead of time, and then we'll make our way through. Everybody else will have an opportunity to speak as well. Ms. Nordstrom?
Good evening, Mayor Bussie and councilmembers.
Good evening, welcome.
There were more people on the council when I was on. What happened to all of you? Just funny faces up there. I'm here to speak regard, the, the combination of a new community center paired with public health. It seems like a strange combination until you think it through. And when I first heard about this proposed half penny, or whatever, it's one percent sales tax, I thought, this is a no-brainer. This really would be a great idea. And the fact that people from elsewhere would be paying ex, a little extra for food and drink and whatever, it just seemed like a good thing, because Bloomington's not completely responsible for something that is shared by so many, like artistry, like the, all the arts here. My husband and I moved into our current home fifty years ago without, it was new for us, without looking at the community, without looking at schools, because we had no children at the time, and found that Bloomington had everything as, as our kids came along. And I was in the Bloomington Symphony Orchestra for a while, for many years, actually. And we participated in Angelica Cantati, and that's about it, I guess, for the arts. But everything that we needed was here. In fact, I made a pact that I would never go outside of Bloomington for anything, especially And my son, at one point, said, it's okay to leave, I'll leave once in a while. But Creekside, the orchestra played there for many years. They would rehearse there on Sunday evenings for a couple, three hours. And it's been invaluable for many groups. Now it's for seniors. I take a class there weekly. And when that was gonna shut down, I think there were a lot of disappointed seniors. Can't believe I'm a senior, but there it is. And it was started, was it built in the sixties?
I believe so, yes.
Doesn't matter, but anyway, it was a grade school for a long time. But as long as I've, we've lived here since seventy-one, it's been what it is now. So we were happy to see it reopen. I think the, spreading the tax burden and the benefit with this small tax, again, seems like a no-brainer. The, I'm here for dual reasons. I think I'll speak first regarding the concert hall. It would really be great if we could get that built at some point in time. It's not as crucial as the other things, except maybe the golf. I don't golf, but that's okay. The orchestra raised money, as well as other arts groups raised money to help with this. Turned out that the stage was too small for our orchestra. And one of our orchestra members especially was livid. He had given a sizable amount, and our orchestra couldn't even fit on the stage, because we had seventy members. They had cutbacks, so the stage was cut back. So it really would be ideal. Another, what did we used to call it? Steve Alkins, another pearl, in the string of pearls. I was told that the public health, current public health building was forty years life expectancy. Why do people build stuff like that? That's just nuts. Don't let them build these new facilities. But the, the public health and I, I see that this new facility for public health plus community wellness, I think that's really well-done, well-thought-out. And that should be one of the prime reasons to move this forward. As far as number of people in the Bloomington Symphony, that's one last thing. Years ago, when I was still a member there, sixteen percent of our orchestra members were Bloomington residents. Otherwise, they came from all over the place, some distance sometimes. So there you have it. I should sign in, I suppose.
If you could, that would be helpful. Thank you very much. Thank you for your comments.
Nice to see you.
Very good to see you again as well. I believe next on our list, Nora, could you please bring Dave Prestus into our discussion here? Dave Prestus?
Mr. Prestus, you may press star one to speak for pub, public comment. David, your lines are open.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor.
Uh-oh.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Good evening, Mr. Prestus.
Good evening, Mayor and city councilmembers. I'm here to provide support for finding a way to repair, replace, and thereby improve Dwan's clubhouse and golf course to heighten the golfing experience and other related activities that utilize the Dwan site. Thank you for selecting Dwan Golf Course as one of the four projects to be considered. I know that for a number of years, we have anxiously watched the Dwan site go off the capital investment list, and the last time I heard it was like two or three, and then this hit. I'm just interested in getting something done. I've played there and participated in Dwan activities since nineteen-seventy-five, when I moved to Bloomington. The one thing that hasn't changed over all those years, that it remains a great place to play golf. It is kept in great shape by the management and, and crowd's crew. The management and workers have always been friendly, and the snack bar, dining area has always needed expansion and more variety. There are some things that make Dwan a very busy place. Primarily, it's open to everyone. If you're six years old, you can play at Dwan. We have over sixteen identified leagues and large groups that have scheduled tee times that play throughout the golf season. They hold many events for reunions, high school teams, nonprofit organizations, from Bloomington and from the surrounding area, and as well as statewide. This past year, we set a record for five, fifty thousand, five hundred and one rounds, which sounds like a lot, but it is about ninety-six percent of the total capacity allowing for darkness in Minnesota. And there also, we had an exceptional year where we didn't have a lot of rainouts or stormouts. So it is being used to its maximum. And as far as we know, most people have an enjoyable experience. The scheduled play, meaning leagues and large groups... The scheduled play, meaning leagues and large groups and everything else, only account for about 7,000 rounds. The Dwan Men's Club, of which I'm a member, we have over, we have 3,330 scheduled rounds throughout the season. That leaves about 86% for the public, small groups, or anyone else and wherever they're from. So it provides a regional asset to both the state and the metro area, as well as to our residents. The emphasis that the project has been defined as is for the clubhouse and the golf course. And in the summer, the city conducted a survey, which received a very rapid response. And a number of the items there would be included in any improvements that would be made, like a beverage cart, expanded menu and hours of operation for the dining area, warm-up and practice areas, as well as addressing safety issues and creating a safe, as well as cordial, golf slash social environment. The problem with the course and the clubhouse have been known for years. Sand traps and rocks, sand and dirt mixture. Bad design and construction may comply to that. There are questionable placements, and we possibly have too many sand traps to begin with. We have 52 in an 18-hole environment. The clubhouse is just plain old. It opened up in '70, and I'm sure it was built prior to that. It is a constant need of renovation, and some renovation has occurred over the years. We've had to live with leaky roofs. We've had to leave with, the siding falling off. We've had expansion needs so it can have a real kitchen so they could, and this could probably be provided by an outside vendor. We need expanded dining capacity. We need ADA compliance. We need bathroom updates. And we'd like to have a pro shop. Some people say that Dwan is just a short course, although it being a very nice short course. And it detracts from some people. That's okay, they can go other places. The course itself is not a pushover, despite having six par threes and two par fives. The scores that are listed after playing don't reflect it being an easy course. It's a course that can be used by all age categories. It promotes walking.
Mr. Prestus?
Good exercise.
Mr. Prestus?
Yes.
Your five minutes are up, but I appreciate your input tonight.
Okay.
Thank you for calling in. And the third person who called in ahead of time on our list is Josh Sirdamacki. Good evening, welcome.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members. My name is Josh Sirdamacki, resident of Bloomington, parent of a ninth grader at Bloomington Kennedy, past president of the Bloomington Amateur Hockey Association, which represents all of the youth hockey players and their families in our community, and a member of the city's Community Budget Advisory Committee last year. It was a pleasure and an honor to serve. One of our recommendations to this body was to find creative solutions to fix or falling apart public infrastructure. And I commend you for having this on the docket tonight and for your consideration. I stand today in strong and enthusiastic support for making improvements in the Bloomington Ice Garden. And I urge you, without any further delay, to move forward with this proposal. The Ice Garden has created phenomenal opportunities for kids in Bloomington and the surrounding area, but it's also attracted families and kids, Mr. Mayor, as you have mentioned, from all across the state, who've come to our community, who've not only enjoyed playing hockey and watching hockey at the Ice Garden, but spending money in our fair community. So it's only fair that we share the burden to help pay for the construction or the modernization of the facility, while also sharing the benefit of enjoying the great institution. So let's make this investment. It will help our kids, give them a positive environment continued in the future to do productive activities and get some good exercise. And final point, amenities like this attract and keep families with little kids, which continue to support our public schools in the city of Bloomington. So again, thank you for the opportunity, and thank you for considering this potential investment.
Thank you, Mr. Sirdamacki. That completes our list of folks who had called ahead of time. So now I would like to open it up to anybody else in the chambers, and we'll go to the phones eventually here. So if you could, please, come on forward. You can queue up. Everybody will get an opportunity.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members. I am Carol Odowski. And I am here to speak in allowing me to support the Wellness and Community Center. I've been a volunteer first, and then a staff nurse for the Bloomington Health Department for about 20 years. And I continue to volunteer with this COVID outbreak. It's been a wonderful opportunity. And I want to mention, I have been at two buildings at the Health Department, one across the street, the White Building, which is now engineering, and the current building. And both of them aged out. In fact, I was doing nursing at home because I could not be talking to my clients at the time, and it's still happening at the Health Department. But a little history piece. Years ago, we had a satellite office for the Health Department at Creekside, Monday through Friday. It was a great opportunity for us nurses to really work with programs over there and to offer blood pressure screening on a weekly basis, immunizations, health information, education programs, support the exercise programs that were available, and other programs that we were able to offer. It was a great blend. And I'm so glad we're now looking at, with both Creekside, we talk about it as a community center, it ends up to be in a senior center more than anything else. We need to get other people there and involved. Because I think you know that public health is really a prevention model. And we're able to offer these services there to all people of all ages. You know, years ago, Penn Junior High closed, and we thought, that would be a perfect place for us to bring in that combination of Health Department and the senior center and the community center. So that didn't happen. But we looked at it because it was close proximity to both Richfield and Edina, which contracts with Bloomington. So in looking at that, I think considering this new proposal would be excellent. And I appreciate the opportunity to have spoken to you tonight in support of this. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Odowski. Appreciate your comments. Others who'd like to speak on this.
Sorry, it appears I've sat too long. Brian Savig. Been a resident of Bloomington, I'm sorry, and mayor and council members. Brian Savig, I've been a resident of Bloomington for 43 years. And I want to commend you on, both you and past people, on how well you've managed the city, kept it vibrant, kept it growing, kept it, you know, looking great. Some concerns I have are not so much over the the method of financing. In fact, I think it's a great creative solution for, you know, a problem that's just looming and isn't going to go away. My concern is more, you know, is over the projects themselves that are under consideration. And I realize there will be some determinations in voting on those things at a later date. My concerns, so my concerns really are are more of the long-term impact. For instance, the sales tax. Will there be a sunset law on it? That it will expire once this is done? Or will this just be another means of loading things into a tax structure that is ongoing? Because even though, as I said, it's a creative solution and it appears to save homeowners and businesses from, you know, paying more real estate tax, it is still an additional tax. And one part of the city that I, I think is underrepresented are the people that have been here a long time and have moved to a financial status of fixed incomes. Every single year, the taxes go up. The income doesn't. And I remember a woman that lived across the street from me. She was in her 80s, and she was seriously always concerned about, am I going to be taxed out of my house? I'm going to have to leave. She was capable of keeping it up and staying there, but financially, it was becoming a burden. The, I've lived here 43 years, and I've never even been aware we had a Health Department. I raised three kids here. I did a little checking, and I apologize. I'm late to coming into this process, so I don't have a lot of data. I don't have a lot of information. I just have some concerns. But, you know, it, for instance, consolidating the Creekside Center with the Health Department building makes sense, probably, because Creekside Center probably is expensive to heat and so forth. But I'm concerned 80 million. I mean, when I go to Creekside Center, and I've gone a few times, I'm fine in sitting in a plastic chair at a little table that was probably used for grade school kids or something like that. It's adequate. And I mean, one thing I've learned, being on a fixed income, is adequate is perfectly satisfactory. And a concern is that if we build an $80 million building, I have no idea what the score footage of it is. But it's also going to drive the amount of services that can be generated. And it seems like we're on, we're struggling with many of the same things that all the cities are struggling with. We're pressed for more services, particularly to low-income and fixed-income people, and declining revenues and so forth. So I mean, it's a crunch from both ends. But a concern I have is that we're not only just considering the cost of the buildings, but, you know, if we enhance the size, aren't we going to also, by default, be enhancing the amount of services? And the money's got to come from somewhere. And so anyway, again, there's many wonderful things that we could do. I don't see any problem in theory with any of them. Again, my concern is just, you know, remember us that have been paying for the city for a long time. We appreciate what's been done, but we also don't want to be driven out of the city because we can no longer afford it. So thank you very much for your consideration.
Thank you, Mr. Savig. Come forward, please.
My name is Jim Farrell, and I live in West Bloomington. Like the previous presenter, I've lived there for 43 years. Transferred here from Los Angeles in 1979 with the 3M Company. Before that, my wife and I lived on the west, east coast. We had homes in Pennsylvania, Maryland. And in '73, moved here and lived in Woodbury for 16 months, then got transferred to LA. Well, anyway, I guess the previous presenter, we're senior citizens now. After living here 43 years, I lived half my life here. And I think we're about to relocate. But to address the issue of the sales tax, I guess the only comment I have is like the previous presenter, does it have a sunset? And I play golf at Dwan. It's a great place. And it's an enjoyable place to meet friends of my age group. And we have a great time. There's no question it needs updating. And I can only speak for that facility because that's the one I occupy. But it's like, what's our tax rate here in Hennepin County? 7.25 presently? Yeah. So I was under the understanding that the sales tax increase was going to be a quarter of a percent, not a half a percent. Am I correct or not?
No, it is a, it is a half cent.
It's a half cent?
Half cent.
Okay. As I said, if you look at the occupancy of the multitude of hotels and motels in Bloomington, the occupancy is way down. So you're not going to really get a lot of revenue from that sales tax from those hotels and motels. And the comeback of that, if you've looked at travel by the business industry, is way down. And will it come back? Who knows? Will it come back this year, next year? Or with Zoom meetings, and I still have a lot of contacts at 3M, their travel budgets are way down. And they're doing Zoom with customers and with their people. So that's something you really have to consider. And the issue then is, if you don't make the nut for these investments in these facilities, what's your fallback position? Is it to extend it? To keep it ongoing? But I believe the citizens of the city would like to see a sunset. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Farrell. I appreciate your comments. Anyone else like to speak on this? Don't see anyone else coming forward in the chambers. Nora, do we have anyone on the phone who wishes to speak to item 7.1?
We do have Ms. Colleen Bloom. Colleen Bloom, your line is now open. Ms. Bloom, your line is now open.
Good evening, welcome. Are you there? Nora, could you please double-check and see if we can make this connection?
Ms. Colleen Bloom, your line is now open. You may speak. She's not responding.
Is there anyone else?
Can you hear me?
Oh, yes, we can. Good evening.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Glad we can finally hear you. Welcome.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mayor and City Council. I would like to address the half percent sales tax.
I'm sorry, if you could just state your name. So we officially have it for the record.
Oh, sorry about that. Okay, my name is Colleen Bloom.
All right. Please, go ahead.
Yes, my name is Colleen Bloom.
Please.
My name is Colleen Bloom.
Welcome, Ms. Bloom. Go ahead.
I am pretty much a lifelong resident of Bloomington. I've lived outside of Bloomington for eight months in my 62 years. While I believe the project, while I do believe the projects are appropriate, there are improvements that need to be made to the Ice Garden, Creekside. I don't agree with the sales tax, especially since you're looking at people outside of our community supposedly paying a lot of it, but it's really going to be the residents of the city that are going to be paying it. We're the ones that live here. We're the ones that shop here. Other people from outside do come in and spend money, but our hospitality industry is way down. We're not going to be getting those kind of travel dollars. People are not spending money on discretionary items like going to theaters and stuff. There's still too many restrictions. The attendance is down, ticket sales are down. So people coming in from outside of the city are not going to be paying for that type of stuff. So a lot of the burden's going to fall on the taxpayers. If we're looking If we're looking for money, I think we need to start looking at some of the salaries we are paying our city employees. We are paying salaries that are way above the private sector benchmark. And when we are paying a couple of employees in the city more than the governor of the state of Minnesota, that is a problem. We need to really look at where is our money going? We had a 44% decrease in our household income in the last year due to illness and job change or whatever, but yet our taxes went up 15% between sales tax and income tax and, well, income tax should have gone down, but it didn't. Property taxes went up. We can't continue to be paying more taxes here, there, and everywhere else. A half percent here, 5% there, it all adds up. We need to start looking at other ways, and taxing the residents of the city of Bloomington is not it. We've got, we have businesses that want to move in. I know Aldi was one that was planning on moving in. They were all set to sign on the dotted line. They came in for the final council approval, and there was a change made at the last, at the 11th hour. Aldi pulled the project and left. There was a recent project that was going in over behind the car dealership, the old health club off 494. Again, another project that would have brought significant jobs, would have brought sales tax or payroll tax and stuff like that to the area. They were projecting upwards of 1,000 employees coming in, and at the last minute, someone in the city decided for aesthetics that the building should be turned 90 degrees. That company pulled the plug on their project. And I know of several others because of the business that my husband's in is in, is in the construction industry. So, he's, he's well aware of a lot of the projects that get pulled. So, we need to start basically getting off our high horse as far as regulations on companies over-regulating ego projects and get our salaries in line for city employees. When a secretary is making $25,000 more working for the city, doing basically entry-level admin and making the same as an executive secretary in the private sector, we have a problem. So, I don't think the sales tax is it. We need to look at more creative financing and things like Bloomington Ice Center and the theater and stuff. Maybe they can do more fundraising. We shouldn't be paying tax dollars for that. And the Bloomington Ice Garden just got a facelift a couple of years ago. They won $75,000 from Kraft, and there was a significant amount of money put in by the city to do an upgrade not all that long ago, maybe two, three years ago. My dates might be wrong on that, but we already invested quite a bit of money. If more needs to be done, then maybe Bloomington Ice Garden needs to do some more fundraising. But doing a sales tax and sticking it to the residents of the city of Bloomington is not it. So, that is my two cents. I thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Bloom. Nora, is there anyone else on the line who wishes to speak to item 7.1?
No one's in queue wishes to speak for public comment. You may proceed.
Anyone in the council chambers wishing to speak? Last call here. I do not see anyone in the council chambers moving forward. We don't have anyone in the queue, so I will close this public comment opportunity for item 7.1, our local sales tax resolution. Thank you for everybody, to everybody who spoke this evening. Greatly appreciate it. Mr. Verbrugge, there was a couple of questions brought up, and maybe we could address those before we get into our conversation here. A couple of folks brought forward the question regarding the sunset of this local option sales tax. Brought up the, the question of operational costs at any of these facilities, what that might be and how that's all playing into it. If the sales tax does not meet the obligation, what's the fallback plan? And then also, if you could comment just perhaps about the future of hospitality, because there was a question about that, whether or not we would be getting back to where we once were regarding our travel and leisure in the city of Bloomington.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council members. The sunset provision is already built into this process by the state legislature. The sales tax may only be in place long enough to service the debt necessary to complete payment for the project. And so, there is not a provision that allows the city to continue collecting the tax after that point, so it will turn off automatically.
And do we have a time frame on that, Mr. Verbrugge? I mean, is it 10 years, 20 years?
Yes, Ms. Economy Scholler said the, the maximum length is 20 years, and that is what we typically do as a debt service duration for projects of this size.
All right, thank you.
And then regarding the, the future of hospitality, our staff has been tracking that very closely, and we are confident that the analysis by the Minnesota Extension Service, which identifies the, the amount of revenue to be generated as the, as a floor, not a ceiling, is an accurate portrayal of, of where things will be in the future, that the likelihood is there's going to be greater revenue than, than what's been estimated, because they are very conservative assumptions. And I think I'll look to the chief financial officer to again, address the issue of what happens if in fact their, the sales tax revenue is less than what is forecasted.
Mayor and council members. When we look at each item, as we're becoming to debot it for our Minnesota advisor, and we have Terry Heaton on the phone also, we would do an analysis of where the interest rates are at that time, what we have to work with. And, and so, if we're looking at a project, say golf is 15 million, and we see the capacity because of the revenue is just not there, we would need to bring that project, total project cost down. So, they might only get 14 million. I also wanted to address one of the questions. When we look at the sales tax for lodging in all the different categories of codes that are out there at the Department of Revenue, lodging in Bloomington in 2019 represented 10 and a half percent of the total sales tax. So, it's not the whole piece of it. So, if residents are thinking lodging and travel is all-in accommodations, that's just now where the sales tax numbers are being reflected. So, as we move forward, operations and cost of that, we do anticipate, you know, there will be operation costs, but electric and gas and efficiencies, as we're looking at each of those facilities, may mirror exactly what we're currently paying for those or save us money in the future. So, as we look at each facilities, right now, we have two buildings for public health and Creekside. That would be one building. So, you know, there are going to be savings and there are going to be costs. And until we get to the point that we're building it and looking at that, we wouldn't be able to make those estimates today.
Thank you, Ms. Economy Scholler. Mr. Verbrugge, something you said, you mentioned the estimates done by the Minnesota Extension Service. And I remember when you first mentioned this to me, I had the question that I've heard from other residents as well. Why the Minnesota Extension Service? Who are they? What, what are they doing? How, how are they, the organization, doing this type of analysis for cities regarding how much expected money would be generated by a local option sales tax?
Mr. Mayor and council members, Minnesota Extension Service has a number of different business enterprises under their large umbrella. This one comes through the Center for Community Vitality, which is a specialty area that looks at economics and, and local impacts of those economics. So, the, the Extension Service has done a number of these studies before and has a methodology that has proven to be reliable.
Thank you. Thanks for that clarification. Council, additional questions? Councilmember Carter.
Thank you, Mayor. So, another question that I heard in the comments of, I believe it was Mr. Sevig, he brought up the kind of price tag for the public health slash community center slash Creekside replacement. So, could you talk to us a little bit more about what the vision of what that building will look like and why it would be at that level of a price tag?
Mr. Verbrugge?
The Health and Wellness Center, councilmember Carter?
Yeah.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council members. So, as, as was referenced by Ms. Economy Scholler and previously, the, the public health building and the replacement for Creekside being combined is trying to really take advantage of opportunities from several different departments that we have delivering service to the community and putting them all under one roof, because in many respects, the services that we provide for senior services, the, the services that we provide for young people, and the scene, the services we provide for public health are all very much consistent in what they are trying to accomplish, which is, you know, for the betterment of all of our residents. And so, by having a center where we can combine those activities in one location, we're going to be more efficient in reaching people and frankly, in terms of how we operate a facility to, to try and keep operating costs down. And then we can maximize our programming by having it all in one place rather than split out in different places around the community. Does that get to the question, councilmember Carter?
I think so, Mr., no. I was looking at Mr. Sevig to see if he felt like that was a good answer. But, I mean, I, I understand the conversations that have happened around a community center that would embed the components of, you know, the senior activities and the public health activities and, and based on the conversations that have happened in the past. And so, I think it's just important for people to understand that it'll eventually be a building that is not just a senior center combined with public health, but it'll be a community center and with a variety of services and amenities. And so, I, there's a, there's a good one pager in our council packet that I would, for all of these projects, that I would advise or recommend that residents look at if they want more information. The other question that I, or I wanted to make a clarifying point, Mrs. Bloom had talked about BIG and I believe the Arts Center, and I just want to clarify for her and others who might be listening, the city owns and operates those facilities. They isn't run by any other organization except for the city. There are organizations that use our facilities, but we own the facilities and operate the facilities. And that is the last, I think I, that's all I have for now. Thank you.
Thank you, councilmember Carter. And yes, that's a good clarification. It's just Bloomington Ice Garden is indeed a facility, and it's not a separate entity, it's not a separate world. It's, it's our responsibility. And by our, I mean certainly the city council, but city staff and the entire city of Bloomington. It's, we, we all own it. We all, we are all responsible for it. Council, additional questions? Councilmember Loman.
Thank you, Mayor. I, I just want to say, we probably won't be able to get through all of the questions because there were so many questions that were asked, but I, I want to say that many of these questions have been raised, Mayor and manager, at different points in time. This has been a longer conversation, and I just want to let residents know that, you know, there, there are some of these meetings that are out there that you can always go back to. So, certainly feel free to, to call in and folks can help to, so you can see the full piece of it. But I wanted to make sure, just, just a couple of other, other questions that were raised here, because one of the questions I thought was asked basically came down to the point of, manager, is there any other way to raise this money? Through fundraising, through some other process? How do we get to this, this particular process?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and councilmembers. Councilmember Loman, that's an excellent question. And these are, as, as the mayor and councilmember Carter said, city facilities, and we have an obligation to maintain or renovate or replace, depending on age and condition, to continue to deliver the services from these facilities that we have, unless the council were to make a decision that the services being delivered from these facilities are, are going to be discontinued. And so, therefore, there's an obligation to identify the most reasonable way to make these improvements and to do so with, with the least amount of burden to our property taxpayers. So, what we're trying to do is minimize the, the cost exposure for residents of Bloomington. If we were to proceed with these projects and to do it using our charter bonds or our general obligation bonds to pay for them, getting back to the point I made earlier, that would cost the median value home of $210 a year for these facilities. And let's say we only did it for the, the facilities that were greater than 50 years old. So, let's not even include the Center for the Arts. That still is going to be in the neighborhood of probably 170 to 100, 160, 170 million dollars, I'm sorry, 160 to 170 dollars a year, which is still quite a bit more than if we did this through a local sales tax. So, what we're trying to do is find the least costly way to make necessary improvements in our facilities and do it with the least burden to Bloomington property taxpayers, and, and that's what this approach does.
So, I hear you're saying something for nothing. There's two really other points here, and we've got other folks here who want to ask some questions here. One of the things was raised about the employees, that, that we pay our employees much more than the, than the private sector. And so, I, I want you to, to, to address that. I've got some comments of my own about that, but could you, would you be willing to opine on that in terms of that's a way to save money to pay for these projects?
Yeah. Mr. Mayor and councilmembers, councilmember Loman, and we've discussed on a number of occasions in the last month or two, this question, and I appreciate that perhaps the speaker hasn't seen those presentations. We, we base our compensation on several different issues, but the, the primary ones are comparison with similar communities, because we have to remain competitive in the market. We have recently studied the compensation for city employees. We are not outside of what is considered standard compensation for cities similar to Bloomington. We also have a number of different state laws that we have to comply with in administering and our, our compensation plan. And so, the, the notion that we could dramatically reduce salaries would not be feasible for a number of reasons.
It basically gets to the question of service, and I, I'll talk about that later. The last piece that I want to bring forward, Mayor and manager, is we talked about this Minnesota Extensions report that was done. Was this report done prior to the, to the COVID piece hitting there? And if you will, tell us why that, that data is still valid today to, to make this analysis for these projects?
Mr. Mayor and councilmembers, councilmember Loman, the data that we have is, is as recent as 2019, and that's because the, the data that is available from the Minnesota Department of Revenue has a lag time to it. So, yes, these, these calculations are pre-pandemic. Our intent is if we do receive legislative approval, that we will update the study again this year to get the most recent figures that are, would be available, which would be 2020, and those are going to be, you know, that's going to be a collection during the pandemic year, and that will represent the absolute bottom. I think everybody understands that. But the, the availability of the data is based on the timing of when Department of Revenue has that data available, and so, this is the most recent data available.
Councilmember Nelson?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Just want to follow up with a couple of quick questions on sort of tangents from some of the things I, I heard here. There was a really good question about the sunset. I know a couple of people have had that, and I've heard that question a lot. So, my question is, what happens if tax revenues, the sales tax revenues exceed expectations? I heard we're being conservative in our estimates. That is not funds we can use for a different project, for anything else in the city, for the city council to throw a big party, anything like that, right? What, what happens if there is additional money that comes forward?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor and councilmembers, I'm going to ask our CFO to step in on that one.
The Department of Revenue will look at each of these four projects, and we will receive our project money and, and financing costs for those. We not need the $120 million, the $11 million each year for 20 years. They would submerge with the factors of the fact that would occur earlier.
Okay.
Department of Revenue will monitor us closely.
I'm sure they would. I'm sure they would, as they should. So, that's-
So that sunset is a maximum term then, is what I'm hearing, which would be dependent on the amount of tax revenue, but also then the project. So if, you know, the city decided to do a smaller health and wellness building or scale back on one of the other projects, that would just reduce that amount and there'd be fewer years that we would collect that sales tax. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay. And then, does any of what we're talking about here preclude some of the good ideas that we heard in terms of additional revenue sources like fundraising, naming rights, advertising, sponsorship, looking at fees for all of these things? If we were able to get, you know, people willing to do, you know, to contribute to this, that would just reduce the cost for us? This doesn't block us from doing that in any way, does it?
Mayor and Councilmember Nelson, we would welcome all the donations and all the contributions people would like to make for these projects. And any grant that we could apply for that helps.
And thank you. The grant is a good idea as well. So just looking at all of our funding sources here to make these projects move forward in the most economical way for our community, for our residents, for our businesses is what I'm hearing. So, thank you.
Council, additional questions? If not, we have to decide how to move forward here, Council. And I guess I'll be happy to log in first. I think this is a creative and an effective and cost-effective way to address some of the capital project needs that we have here in the city of Bloomington. We have a long list of our capital improvement plan. I don't know if you've got the book we delivered to you this week. It is pretty thick and it includes a lot of different projects. This is an opportunity to pick off a couple of projects, as I said earlier, with regional significance, but projects that are certainly important to the city of Bloomington and would have great benefit to the residents in the city of Bloomington. I like this, I like this way of doing it, this thought of doing it in this way because it's, it doesn't disproportionately affect our residents. It does split the costs at a 75-25 share, allowing for folks outside of the city of Bloomington to pay the majority of it. It is sunset. And most of all, what I like about it is that ultimately, this isn't the final decision. We will make a decision tonight, one way or the other. If it should pass, it then would have to pass the legislature. And if it passes there, one way or another, it would then come back to Bloomington voters once again. So it certainly gives folks here in the city of Bloomington the opportunity to weigh in, to ultimately take a vote on these different projects if we get that far and to ultimately decide if they want to impose on themselves a half-cent sales tax that will help fund these important amenities for the city of Bloomington. So I'm in favor of this. As I said, certainly in favor because this vote tonight isn't the be-all and end-all. It's the first step of at least three that we have to take on. I see Councilmember Coulter and then Councilmember Martin and then Councilmember Carter and then Councilmember DeLisandro. Councilmember Coulter?
Thank you, Mayor. And I think you, excuse me, I think you have stated this well. I have long favored a local option sales tax for Bloomington. I think it just makes a ton of sense, given the resources we have and everything else going on. And, you know, these projects in particular are really, really, these are really critical needs. And I would say these are almost entirely what I would call existential issues. I mean, we need to be really clear about this. I mean, we are talking about not only replacing the roof at BIG, but we are talking literally about the replacing a coolant system that is out of date, that they do not make the coolant for anymore. If we want ice at the Bloomington Ice Garden, we need a new coolant system. And the Center for the Arts Performance Hall, same story. You know, I was just recently appointed to the Artistry Board and Artistry is already talking about locating performances in other spaces due to an inability to get space within this theater. And, you know, we've certainly talked at length before about the outdated nature of Crete side in our public health building. And I think, you know, these, of course, I think are just sort of the very definition of regional assets. But I think for me, what it comes down to is really just the question of how much will Bloomington pay for folks coming from elsewhere? I mean, we, you know, we've seen the numbers. We know, you know, who is using these facilities and a lot of folks from outside of Bloomington are using them. And so I, to be frank, my preference would be that folks from outside of Bloomington pay something. You know, it paid something more than zero. And if the option is a local option sales tax or property taxes, then that burden falls entirely on Bloomington property taxpayers. And I think, Mayor, I think you put it well, that at the end of the day, you know, if, sorry, my phone. At the end of the day, we are not the final decision makers here. This will, of course, go to the legislature, but ultimately, that question that I just asked, how much will Bloomington pay for folks coming from elsewhere? That will be decided by Bloomington voters. And we are putting it before the people of Bloomington in perhaps the most direct way possible. And so that's, I think this is just, like I said, I think it just makes a ton of sense all the way around and will absolutely be supporting this.
Councilmember Martin?
Thank you, Mayor. Just kind of along similar lines quickly. I, that's kind of how I framed it in my brain, is just around, just simple fairness. I mean, obviously, we've got this huge international airport. We're at the convergence of some of the biggest highway networks in the state, the Mall of America. We are a massive hub for economic and recreation activity in the region. And our residents are paying pretty much the entire cost for the base improvements to some of these regional amenities. And if we're going to, we're obviously welcoming all these videos, the visitors, we love to have them here. But considering all that usage, I don't think that's fair to put the cost of maintaining and improving and ensuring the relevancy of these facilities solely on the 90,000 residents within our borders. So I'll look forward as we continue looking at these projects and more specifics. I know in the past couple of years, we've done a pretty good job with ensuring fiscal restraint and responsibility. I think through the pandemic, the resiliency has really shown that, especially with the levy increases and how we kept those down. So obviously, we'll be prudent with this moving forward. But that's just how I'm framing this in my brain. I don't think it's fair to put 100% the cost for regional amenities on just the folks in our community.
Councilmember Carter?
Thank you, Mayor. So I also will be supporting this vote tonight, this ordinance, or this resolution, sorry. I guess I'll just say that I echo what others have said. I also want to emphasize two things. For me, what brings me confidence in moving this forward is what's been mentioned, is that residents get to vote. They get to ultimately decide, and they get to decide by project. So you can vote for one project that you like and against three that you don't, or you can vote for all four. And I think by putting that power in the hands of the residents, really makes me feel very confident in making this decision tonight. I also want to emphasize for people, and it was mentioned in the presentation, but kind of basic goods are not going to be part of this. So things that are precluded from sales tax in Minnesota are many food and food ingredients, baby products, clothes, medications, feminine hygiene products, school meals, some of these very basic goods and services that people purchase daily of all incomes will not be subject to the sales tax. And so I just really want to emphasize that as we're thinking about the impact on anybody who is going to be purchasing items in Bloomington. And so with that, I am very, very excited to support this. I think the staff have done an excellent job preparing all of the materials, being very thoughtful, laying out the process and the timeline very clearly, and just being very, very transparent and doing a very, very good job overall. So thank you very much.
Councilmember DeLisandro?
Thank you, Mayor. So a couple of things I'd just like to add to the dialogue. I took the opportunity, and I would encourage anybody else to do this if you're inclined, to call the Minnesota Extension Service. I actually talked to Ryan, the guy that did our report, because I was curious about the numbers. When you put a number out there saying, hey, 25% of the, only 25% of the burden is going to be, you know, borne by Bloomington, you should know, like, how did you come up with that, right? And so I called and I got a really good answer from him. We had a lovely conversation. It's important that we recognize that those numbers don't include online sales, which is another interesting thing. So maybe our online sales numbers will be burdened more to Bloomington, but not in all, like, so there's a lot of flux in the numbers. But these folks do this every day. This is what they do. There's some great reports, if you want to look out there, from Assanti County and other places that have adopted local option sales tax. Ours is public record as well. And so I want to instill a sense of confidence, you know, in the information that we received. And I want to thank the city staff for making sure that we had external data done in a methodical and statistically valid way that allows us to bring this forward. I think that that's really important. Data-driven decisions are good ones usually. I'm also, I also just want to mention that I'm encouraged by the activity I'm seeing. So I've been out on a number of ride-alongs with the police and other things like that in the first month here. And we happened to go to the Wolf Lodge, you know, water park. Boy, that place was bumping. And so, you know, I'm encouraged by the fact that I think there is recovery happening. And so we will see data in 2020 and 2021 that's lower than our expectations, but I'm encouraged by that. And I know that those people are not from Bloomington necessarily. And so there's great opportunities for us there, I think. So I encourage anybody who's listening tonight who is still skeptical about that information to contact the Extension Service. They're very happy to talk to you. I'd encourage you to check out what's going on at some of our major venues to see the activity that's there. You know, I have been to the Mall of America parking lot six times in the last month and I, there's no parking. I just am saying. So there are 15,000 spaces there and somebody's using them. I'm hoping that that's the people that we can count on to help us with these regionally significant projects. So I'm looking forward to this. And I do think, you know, five cents for every 10 bucks you spend in Bloomington going to things like supporting our, I believe, our Olympic athletes right now. Don't we have a potentially a pair skater training at the BIG right now that might be going to the Olympics and other things like that? So, I mean, these are really great things to support and mean a lot to the residents of Bloomington as a point of pride. So I'm happy to support it. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Loman and then Councilmember Nelson. Councilmember Loman?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll just start off by saying that when this first came forward and even into today, I've been a big, strong supporter of additional tax like this. We know that our residents are burdened by inflation and particularly those folks who are struggling with their income, who've had a very difficult time trying to get their income up. We see the haves getting, have more and the have less, have even less each day. And so when you present this particular tax to folks, this is a significant burden, especially we've heard those speakers tonight that came before us and talked about how they lived in our community for over 40 years on a fixed income. Those folks are being pushed out. What they're saying to us is that the affordability of living in Bloomington is very difficult. I'm not, I've never been a big proponent of aggressive taxes. When you bring those forward, those punish those folks who are at the lower incomes. But with that being said, for all those reasons, I haven't been a strong supporter of that. But one of the things that has kind of come forward with this is that those folks who will be facing those burdens, we really have a choice for you here. And this is where I'm moving in this direction. I always, when I ran, I talked about striking a balance. This is an opportunity for us to strike a balance. I think where we look to go here to go ahead and make this increase, I hope that we will look to, when we get to the end of next year and we get ready to do our balancing act, that we look to make a reduction there with that. With that being said, though, this particular council brought forward one of the lowest levy increases in its history of this council and one of the lowest levies brought forward by any of our peer cities across the Twin Cities area. And I think that's something, that record, we ought to be proud of, of that work that we have done. We've tried to create affordability across the city in very difficult times, where other cities maybe didn't have the opportunity to do that. We took advantage of that opportunity. So for those of you who are being burdened, I just want to let you know that we are thinking about that. We've asked questions about how can we help those folks with fixed incomes and those folks who are struggling right now. And so with that being said, you've got an opportunity to vote on this. When it comes before you, it's going to go before the legislature, as my other colleagues have said that. And for those reasons, and also, you know, some of these things are key. Public health, community center, Dwan, those happen to all be in my district. Certainly, the other ones that aren't in my district are also key and important to the city of Bloomington. So with that being said, I can support this because I think that this is the most fiscal, responsible way to move forward with your particular tax burdens.
Councilmember Nelson?
Thanks, Mayor. I'll be quick. I'm not going to repeat everything, the thoughtful comments of my colleagues here. The one thing that I wanted to add is, one of the reasons that I do support this is because of economic development, which has been a priority of mine. And I see having, you know, an updated, well-maintained BIG that can draw more people into our community that are going to, you know, get there really early in the morning and go grab coffee at, you know, either Mugshot's or Caribou or Dunkin' right down the road for them. They're going to grab lunch over at North Star or Willie McCoy's or Carmine's and stay for dinner. They're going to, you know, they are going to be the ones that help support those amenities that have been so important since I first ran. People want places to go eat in our community. Well, in order to support that, it's not just us. We need to have these types of facilities here where people can go in and patronize them and do them and shop at our local, or shop at our local stores and all of those types of things. And I think that having these facilities, the Art Center, the Ice Garden, the golf course will all help with that type of stuff. So that's one of the other reasons that I wanted to add that is really important to me for this, looking at this way and spreading that cost, as has been talked about amongst the entire region and not just us, because it is going to bring people in regionally and nationally. So I support this. I think the last comment I have, and really appreciated hearing this in the public comments, is this was something that was really, not specifically, but the idea of being creative and how we fund this. So it's not all coming down to property taxes. Came out of that Community Budget Advisory Committee. And I think just one of the, another example of how well that committee worked. And so I appreciate that point having brought up earlier.
Thank you, Councilmember. Well, Council, I think everyone has had an opportunity to weigh in. And I appreciate the support and the comments that everybody has offered regarding this. And we are to the point now, I would look for a motion to move this forward. Councilmember Carter?
Thank you, Mayor. I would move to adopt a resolution approving a local sales tax and authorizing actions to be taken by the city in connection with such taxes.
Second?
Second. We've got a motion by Councilmember Carter, a second by Councilmember DeLisandro, to adopt the resolution approving a local sales tax and authorizing actions to be taken by the city in connection with such taxes. Hearing no further, Council discussion on this? Mr. Brillert?
Carter?
Aye.
Coulter?
Aye.
DeLisandro?
Aye.
Loman?
Aye.
Martin?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Mayor Bussie?
Aye.
Motion carries seven zero. Mr. Verbrugge, next steps?
Mr. Mayor and Councilmembers, the resolution will be communicated to the chairs of the respective tax committees at the legislature. That has to occur before January 31st of this year. And then we will work with our legislative delegation and our lobbyists at the state to make sure that as this is progressing through the session, that we have opportunities to address legislators and hopefully be in front of committee to make our case. And then the session ends in the middle of May. So we will know at that point whether we are moving forward towards a referendum or not. So stay tuned for city communications over the next couple of months, not just on the progress of the request at the legislature, but also continued discussion about the facilities themselves as we move forward in our planning processes.
Thank you, Mr. Verbrugge. And I think another bit of communication, just an explanation of this. I think this is, we've been talking about this for a while. I think the folks on the screen here that we're working with, I think they understand it. I think this is probably news to a lot of folks, or at least foreign to a lot of folks. And the more information we can get out, just explaining the process and explaining the situation and how it all works and what it would be funding. situation and how it all works, and what it would be funding and so on, I, I think would be a, a very good thing. A, a frequently asked questions page on the website, or something along those lines, just to give residents a better idea and understanding of what we're talking about here.
Yep. Mr. Mayor and councilmembers, FAQ page is available, and we are continuing to add to it as we hear more questions that frankly are, are good questions that people are asking, because we're hearing them here. We're gonna hear them in other places in the community. So that information is available on the website. We're also working with our communications team to prepare additional external communications to the community so that it is well-understood what it is that we're trying to accomplish in pounds.
Very good. Thank you. Thank you, council. We will move on in our agenda. Move on to item 7.2, which is a resolution declaring a climate emergency in Bloomington, Minnesota. This was in the news this week. I don't know if you saw the Star Tribune article about the number of cities that have moved forward with a resolution, a similar resolution. And we have Emma Strass, who is our Sustainability Coordinator, here to explain it all to us and, and lead us through this one. Ms. Strass, good evening. Welcome.
Good evening, Mayor Bussey and councilmembers. I'm here tonight to provide some background about this agenda item. So there's an emerging coalition of Minnesota cities that have discussed declaring a climate emergency in their communities, given the adverse effects of climate change on the economy and our quality of life. So far, 13 cities in Minnesota have declared climate emergencies, and there's an additional eight cities that are considering declarations this week. The Sustainability Commission had many discussions about this during 2021 at their meetings. And at their December meeting, they made a motion recommending city councils approval of the enclosed resolution. So with that, if you have any questions, I'm here to answer those. And thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Strass. I, I think for a lot of folks, that there's, there's questions exactly what this would do, what this would entail. Been through it and read it. Could you give us the, the brief highlight of, of what it, what it would do, what it would entail, what it would require of the city, and, and if there are, if there are cost items, if there are expenditure items in here that we, we need to, to worry about or think about as we move forward with this?
Yes. So, Mr. Mayor, councilmembers, essentially, the resolution is looking at past statements that the city has made, acknowledging the Paris agreements, and also acknowledging the city's Energy Action Plan and those goals, and also the, the science around climate change and the effects it has on Bloomington in terms of heat waves and increased flooding, and also air quality with wildfires that we've experienced this summer, and the smoke from those, and the changes that we're seeing with bird populations, as, as well as the fact that as climate change progresses, that's going to affect future generations more than those today. So looking at that, and then what the resolution is, is essentially, it's aimed to partner and employ subject matter experts, but who have knowledge on sustainability and resiliency, to address climate change solutions, to engage with Bloomington residents, to continue to implement Green Step City's best practices, to continue to implement the citywide Energy Action Plan, and to identify strategies for reducing Bloomington's largest source of greenhouse gas emissions, which are from energy and transportation. And also ends by utilizing the authority of city council and the city manager to drive climate change and sustainability measures. In the resolution, there isn't a specific budget ask. It's summarized in those five bullet points.
Council questions regarding that? Councilmember Lowman is a member of the Sustainability Commission. Hoping you could chime in and, and share with us the discussions of the Sustainability Commission and the views of the folks that are, are members there.
Yeah, I want to give a little bit of a, a background on this, just for council, so that for those folks who are both here, and also for those residents that are, that are tuning into this. We, I mean, you may not remember this, but we had a proposal come before us, before, actually asking for such a climate emergency to be declared, almost two years ago, I want to say. I can't remember the specific date.
May 2020.
Thank you. And I was very opposed to that. And when this, I, I had joined these, these other state leaders to have the conversation, I actually brought those concerns then. At that particular time, we were dealing with the aftermath of George Floyd, who had passed away, killed, and the COVID virus. And, and one of the things that I was concerned about then, and we, as a commission at that point in time, had made the conversation, said at that time, that we didn't think that it was appropriate to bring that forward, given the, the types of things that were going on during that period of time. And one of the, the biggest issues that we had with that is just this particular type of emergency is long-term, and the resources that are needed in order to be able to resolve this particular crisis that's out there is not like those other two items that I mentioned. And so it's much more complicated and difficult to be able to do that. And that particular proposal was very prescriptive. It had one provision where it had all staff getting together, and it had specific budget requirements about what you needed to do. It did not, it wasn't allowed, you weren't allowed to tailor it to what the, the city of Bloomington needed. And so when this came forward, I had asked during that dialogue and conversation about that, that we would be able to create a resolution that would relate to our specific cities that were out there, and the particular things that we needed to do in the steps in which, in, in where we found ourselves as a city. And so we made that recommendation, we were able to get that. We got together as a commission, and there was a, a work group that worked through the entire resolution. We rewrote the entire thing, line by line, for hours and hours, and then also went through to, to get to those five conclusions. Now, one of the things that, that we wanted to just communicate, and one of the, the things we struggled with is, we didn't want to tell this council what to do, but we also wanted to raise the concern that this is a serious issue that needs to be dealt with. And we understand that this is just the beginning of that dialogue, that we're hoping to make sure that not only this council makes that declaration, but also that the community are aware that we believe that there is a problem, we need to deal with it. So, much like what we've done with our, our, our inclusion and equity piece, and with our, our racial justice plan, we have, we started that, we made a resolution, and this is sort of, it's following in that same footstep. We'd be asking that the council start there, and then we would bring back more specifics about what we want to, want to do beyond what's there within those five items. Emma, does that, is that, I mean, is that a good summary? I mean, we've spent a lot of time talking about this, discussing, there's lots of different points of views and perspectives. But that's what I, I would say about this, Mayor. Is that, any questions at all about that process?
Thank you for that recap, Councilmember. Appreciate it. Counsel, any questions of Councilmember Lowman and the, the path the Sustainability Commission took to get to this point? Any questions? Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead, Councilmember.
One other thing I want to say, Mayor, is even leaving the meeting, I want to make sure that all councilmembers are aware of this too. And I, I think it's really important that you know this. This is really your decision. I made sure that we, you know, this is up to you and what you want to do tonight with this. I, I didn't want to make it that you feel like you have to pass this tonight. So just understand that we don't have to pass this this evening. I can understand, because I've had differing points of view on this particular thing, but want to put it forward for you today to, to look at this.
Thank you. Council questions, comments, thoughts on this?
Comments are in order?
Councilmember Dalisandro.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Yeah, I, I can't imagine why we wouldn't want to take this up as soon as humanly possible, frankly. If any of you had trouble breathing in, I think it was June or July this year, or if you were, if you were completely enthralled in a horrific way about the fires that we just saw in Colorado in the middle of December, of all places, we have to know that there are, are actions we all must take. We know very specifically in Bloomington that we are behind on our climate targets. We, we put that action plan together, I think, what, back in 2016 or something to that effect? But it, it did not, it is not, we've not kept pace with it, if you will. And so bringing this together, putting, putting it in front of us, recommitting ourselves, if you will, to the idea that, you know, climate change is something we need to mitigate for the benefit of both the economic interest and also the environment, or the health and well-being interest of our community is just, in my opinion, something we need to do. By doing this today, I think we, we give ourselves the opportunity to think about all of the capital projects we just talked about through the local option sales tax. We, you know, we, we get to talk about some of the, the up and coming things that may or may, may happen around the South Loop area and the Expo. All of these with the, with a specific lens of, of ensuring that we are doing all that we can to, to make, you know, those projects mitigate our climate challenges. And so I, I would please encourage you all to, to consider this. And I would, it would, it would be, I just, it would be really, really great if, if we could pass this resolution tonight and, and, and put that same, put that, put climate at, at the same level as, as the good work we're doing. By the way, they're related to each other, right? Environmental justice is racial justice. We know this. We know, for example, that our heat sinks and things like that here in the, the area happen to be in the same place where our lowest income residents happen to live. You know, there's just, there, there's correlations that you can't really deny. And so we'd be doing ourselves a service on a number of levels. Thanks.
Thank you for your comments, Councilmember. I will chime in. I appreciate the, the resolution. I appreciate the, the, the action steps, the be it further resolved, the action steps that are included there. But what I really appreciated, the final two, be it further resolved, that the city of Bloomington calls on the Minnesota Legislature and the executive branch to immediately and aggressively support cities of all sizes around Minnesota to mitigate and adapt to the effects of climate change, including providing funding and resources for the development and implementation of climate action plans. And the other one, be it finally resolved, the city of Bloomington calls on the federal government to immediately commit resources to support the climate mitigation and adaptation efforts of cities, large and small, to invest in the infrastructure needed for a sustainable future, and to ensure that investment is on a, is, is at the scale needed. Two very important points. This is, these are cities kind of coming forward and talking about this type of thing, but our resources and our reach and our ability to impact things on a global scale are, are limited. We can do what we can do, and we should do what we should do. But my goodness, we need to see that type of commitment at the state and the federal level as well. And so I appreciate that this resolution calls for that to happen. Councilmember Coulter, Councilmember Coulter.
Thank you, Mayor. I hadn't planned to speak. I just wanted to add that I, I agree with you on those, on those last two, be it resolved, statements. And I think it would make a lot of sense for staff to submit copies of this resolution, both to our state legislators, but also our, our federal representatives. I think that makes a lot of sense to get their eyes on it, if for no other reason than they can say, see, this is what my constituents are talking about.
Council, additional thoughts on this? Additional thoughts? If not, council, I would look for action on this item.
I'd be happy to, to finish it off, since it's been a long process.
Councilmember Lowman.
Mayor, I'd like to go ahead and move to approve a resolution declaring a climate emergency in Bloomington, Minnesota.
Second?
We have a motion by Councilmember Lowman, and a second by Councilmember Dalisandro, to approve the resolution declaring a climate emergency in Bloomington, Minnesota. Hearing no further council discussion on this? Mr. Brillert. Carter.
Aye.
Coulter.
Aye.
Dalisandro.
Aye.
Lowman.
Aye.
Martin.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Mayor Bussey.
Aye. Motion carries seven zero. Thank you. And Councilmember Lowman, if you could pass on our thanks to the members of the Sustainability Commission for their work. Ms. Strass, thank you for your work and your, your leadership with the Sustainability Commission. This is, this is an important step. We've got a long way to go, but I think to have this on the record and official, I think is, is an important piece of, of moving what we need to accomplish forward. So thank you for that.
Thank you.
We will move to item 7.3 on our agenda. This is a public hearing, and this public hearing relates to our time-of-sale inspection evaluation ordinance. And Bernadette Gillespie from Community Development is going to talk with this, about this, as well as Carla Henderson, our Community Development Director, is going to kick this off for us. Good evening. Welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and councilmembers. Here to talk about time-of-sale. So we're going to get right into it. Bernadette Gillespie is on, our Buildings and Inspection Supervisor, and Duke Johnson as well, our building official. We have a brief presentation for you. Just want to recap kind of like where we, how we got here. So, I don't know.
Well, we're pulling up the presentation. Good evening, Ms. Gillespie. Good evening, Mr. Johnson. Thanks for joining us tonight.
Good evening.
Thank you.
And I think it's timely, after the resolution that was just passed, since you all know that we are now going to add the energy disclosure as a part of our time-of-sales.
Very good.
Okay. Looks like we're ready to go. So just wanted to provide the timeline. This program has been going on for over 26 years. In August of 1995 is when it was implemented. We can go to the first slide. And then in October of last year is when the energy disclosure was presented by Emma and, and talked about a lot. And it was finally adopted by city council, and the effective date is April 1st of 2022. So as we started internally to look at what that meant, we clearly came across a very disjointed process. Disjointed for the citizens in terms of, and Bernadette's going to share some data in terms of, you know, who to call. The fees were different. And many times, the inspections were not occurring, we were not getting the inspections report from our private inspectors in a timely manner. So we thought, what would be the best solution? Perhaps bringing it in-house and having what we like to call a one-stop-shop. So we talked a lot in November about this process, in terms of through the budget process, what that would look like, the amount of staff we would need to bring on. And also provided a one-weekly with additional data that was shared, I think, on December 3rd. And then council approved the budget in December with the addition of two full-time and one part-time for the proposed time-of-sale program changes. And so tonight is the public hearing to talk about the ordinance revision that would need to happen. And now I'm going to kick it off to Bernadette.
Next slide, please. Okay. Thank you, Carla. So the pros and cons to the city performing these inspections, and this might look a little familiar to some of the councilmembers, as it was in our previous, our previous slides, but councilmember Dalisandro hadn't seen it. So we wanted to provide just a, a highlight of these items again. So, again, the pros, provide a one-stop-shop to customers that will create a high level of efficiency. Again, the customers will come to us regarding all of their inspection needs. So they will contact us for scheduling their inspections, regarding initial time-of-sale, re-inspections, payment. All of that will go through the city. Currently, they go through private inspectors and through the city for those items. So mitigating inconsistencies between private inspectors, reports and city reports, and confusions to homeowners. So a lot of times, we'll, we'll get feedback from homeowners asking, you know, why are they being called out below hazard, or, or below minimums on private inspectors' reports? When on a, a city inspection report, it would be called out at a, a different level of a hazard. So there's some inconsistencies between the reports that we're receiving. Another pro, city staff are the subject matter experts, and are able to properly answer the questions regarding the trades and perform a more, a higher level of inspection. But we do have specific electrical, plumbing, and mechanical inspectors who do re-inspections for those specific trades. But when we do have specific hazards that are So when we do have specific hazards that are just electrical or just mechanical or just plumbing, we have actual electric electrical inspectors, plumbing inspectors and mechanical inspectors, who go out and do those re-inspections. Many inspectors who are able to determine what items require permits and more permits are pulled as a result. And we do see that with city inspections, we are getting more permits pulled as a result of those inspections versus when private inspectors are doing those reports and inspections. Faster turnaround of reports due to immediate inspection results with city software versus up to a seven-day turnaround time with the private inspectors. So again, we have a mobile inspection software. As soon as the inspector is done completing that inspection, they're able to email that inspection result to the customer and applicant, whether that be the Realtor or whoever the person was who who had requested that inspection. Versus sometimes it could be multiple days before they get a copy of that report. Sometimes we get some feedback from customers calling the city, asking to get their re-inspection. And when we look in our system, we don't have the initial report in our system yet. So that's kind of some of the other inconsistencies we have. And then the inconsistency with the costs. Currently, private inspectors set their own rates while the city has a standard set rate approved by city council. Again, there's 38-plus inspectors right now who all set different rates. And so we do get feedback, again, from residents asking if it's a city program, why are there different rates for these, you know, same type of inspections? So on the con side, the reduction of private sector work to private inspectors. I know this is this has been sticking point with some of the private inspectors and some of the Realtors. We've gotten some feedback. But we have found that we can help mitigate this through an RFP process. So request for proposal process that we're going to be, if this passes, will be kicking that off in February. And so we'll be opening that up to anyone who's an existing time of sale inspector and anyone else who would like to apply that meets the qualifications in that RFP application process. So they would be able to apply for this contractual agreement with the city. It would be a three-year agreement with the city to be a private inspector. And then during that three-year time, oh, sorry, if at any time that the city would be unable to perform those inspections within a two-day turnaround, or if it's immediate requests, let's say they call today, they need the inspection done tonight, it's an emergency, we're not able to respond to their needs, we would be able to go to that list of contractual inspectors and say, here's the list, we can get the this inspector there tonight. So that's how we would mitigate those those needs. Next slide, please. So here's a five-year time of sale data, just kind of look back on the private evaluator data that we pulled. On the left, you'll see there's private evaluator data. So these are this is all inspection inspector reports but did not have hazards versus city evaluator data. So when I say reports that didn't have hazards, so these are when inspectors go out and they don't find hazards on the property. So they come back, no hazards found, we can issue a certificate of compliance immediately and move on. There's no re-inspection. As you can see, the data shows on average for the last five years, a city inspection is more likely to find a hazard 89% of the time compared to a private inspection at 40%. So this shows that many hazards may be going unidentified and compromising, obviously, safety of our residents. This also creates an inequity in how the program is being applied as city inspections are requiring homeowners to dispose hazards to potential buyers, which leads to hazards being fixed prior to buyers moving into the home, whereas time of sale inspections completed by private sector are not disposing those hazards at the at the same rate. And so buyers who are using city inspectors may be having to, you know, put more money into their homes prior to the sale. And so buyers who are using private inspectors may not be having to invest money prior to the sale of their home. Next slide, please. This is another data point. So private inspector reports that incurred either a late fee or required amendments. So a late fee is incurred when a privateness evaluator report is received more than seven days late from the date the inspection was completed. Also, each report is reviewed by a city inspector. And so when the report comes in and it they see that there's a mistake on it, they have to require an amendment. So the amendment goes back to the request for the amendment goes back to the evaluator. The evaluator needs to amend it before the city accepts it. So again, that is another delay and another time that a city inspector has to touch the report. And so again, it's it's inconsistency and it's time delay for residents, and it's more time downtime going into the program. So streamlining the time cell program in 2022, this is what we're proposing, is that these inconsistencies will be greatly reduced by providing greater customer service for the residents and also reducing the inequities that have been found during the the process of this. Next slide. So the next steps, today, January 24th, is our public hearing time of sale ordinance amendment adoption, if it is adopted. February 28th, so this would be kind of our go-live with our new employees. So if the ordinance is passed, we will be posting positions open to employees. Positions are posted, we'll be hiring, and then between February 28th and March 4th, training for new time of sale employees. That would be the new time of sale inspectors as well as the office support for that. And then between March 4th and April 1st, we would do one month of fieldwork, which includes a test house for those inspections while piloting the new energy disclosure portion of the program. During this time, the RFP process would be running concurrently. So we would be posting the RFP application, we would be gaining all of those applicants, going through the application process, the interview process for those applications, and then we would be selecting those private inspectors for that list. And then those would also be available April 2022, when the energy disclosure would be going live as well. Next slide. And if you have any questions, we are available.
Thank you very much, Ms. Gillespie. Counsel questions. Councilmember Dalisandro.
Thank you. Good evening. So a couple of things that I was confused a little bit by. So first off, there's like two things happening simultaneously here, right? One is that you're you're changing the code to bring the evaluators in-house, and so we're going to we're going to fix that piece. And then, of course, there's the addition of the the energy audit associated with the inspection as well. And so I asked a few questions, and I think I think Emma actually responded to those specific to the the energy audit. My understanding, correct me if I've got it wrong, Ms. Strass, but the if you're still on, but the the statute of limitations on that is like five years, right? So the the energy audit doesn't necessarily have to happen at the exact same time that the inspection does, because there's six specific things that the inspector is going to be looking for that are kind of a part of this now that weren't part of that before. Do I have that right?
I'm Bernadette. Yeah. Go on.
Yeah. So I don't believe that Emma is on.
Okay.
But the energy audit portion of this.
I'm sorry.
And just to clarify, so tonight, we are just asking for the the inspections to be brought in-house. The energy audit portion of this was adopted in October of 2021 with an effective date of April 1st. So because of that, and when we started looking at how that would how we would start to run that program with our current inspector pool and our current software needs, that's when we started to evaluate how we would start to look at our current needs for going forward. And then we were, oh, here's Emma. She's jumping back on.
Yes. We still do have Emma here. Why don't we why don't we bring Emma into the conversation? Ms. Strass?
Great.
Good morning, councilmember Dalisandro. Five years is your question to the audit. So if they get a home energy squad visit or another audit that's approved by the building official, within those five years, that will count towards disclosure.
That would satisfy the disclosure, right? Okay, great. Thank you for that. That's that was a big thing, because, you know, what what I think we're trying to encourage by the energy portion of this is that people actually do the work to improve their homes, and that will have a benefit, if you will, when it comes to selling their home, you know, as as people are starting to look at this energy information as as one of the main reasons that they would choose to home buy one home versus the other or something like that, right? So, okay, that's really, really helpful. But it it doesn't it doesn't have to happen at at the moment of of inspection. However, there are, I think, six or something specific items there. So the second question that I that I have around that is it says in the resolution that are the the ordinance changes that we're looking at today, that there are duties for these evaluators and that and and so I've been I've been asking questions about like what what's the qualification that these evaluators have, right? And it points me to the section for duties for evaluators, but in the markup, we've actually got it crossed out. We have it we have it redlined. So I just wanted to make sure that we are going to include in our in our ordinance explicit information about the duties of those evaluators and 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 what their qualifications are, so we can be comfortable with that.
Mayor, council member, we will be including that in our RFP application. So that'll be part of the RFP application process. And Melissa can speak to this. Those qualifications, we will have that outlined on what they will need to meet in order to be eligible to be a time of sale inspector with the city.
Mayor members, correct. You could see a bit of a preview of that information in the actual ordinance. For example, draw your attention to section 14.529, which is on page 191 of your packet. You'll see sort of the education requirements, insurance requirements. Again, to the points that Ms. Gillespie made earlier in her presentation, there's a desire to get some uniformity and consistency across all of the evaluations. And so the RFP will set forth what is expected among all of our evaluations, so that our city evaluations will be the same as what's being undertaken by the private inspectors. Similarly, they'll all be using the same form, they'll all be using the same process, the same portal, and also same fees.
Okay.
So we'll be able to ensure more consistency and content across the board.
I have two more, if that's okay. Yeah, go ahead.
I'm sorry, Councilmember McCarthy, you have something related to this?
Yes.
Okay, please.
So before you, okay, okay. So I was wondering something similar, you know, hearing the presentation around the issues related to the 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 timing delays when applications are receive or the reports are received and then just some of the other issues like around the number of hazards found. I mean, I would assume that we would want to, I mean, I would assume through our RFP process and the criteria that we will lay out, that it will help address those issues. But I do wonder if we we would want to have something laid out in our ordinance like we had before around some of that criteria. And I mean, I would assume we would still want them to have like general liability insurance and just some of the things that were in the ordinance that are marked out. And so I guess, I don't know, Ms. Manderscheid, if you want to talk a little bit a little bit more about that, why we're removing all of that language when we I would assume, even though there are subcontractors now, we would still want to have some of that.
Ms. Manderscheid, why in an RFP as opposed to an ordinance?
Mayor members, I made a drafting decision while I was preparing it. I stuck with the term qualified instead of getting into all the specific qualifications. In my conversations with staff, Ms. Gillespie, Ms. Mr. Johnson, and Ms. Henderson, it became clear to me that there were a lot of things that they were looking for in trying to bring all of the inspectors, evaluators, if you will, under a common set of qualifications and skills. And those had not all been worked out. We knew what some of them were, but we didn't know what all of them were yet at the time that I was preparing this. Again, remember, that has to be done, you know, weeks in advance because of the posting requirements. So we did not get into that specific level of specificity. One thing we did talk about and might be something that you would be interested in as a common ground or a medium way of approaching that is to create a term being qualified private contractor. We ultimately decided not to add that term or that definition under the thinking that we could always come back and tweak it, tweak this ordinance, given that it's a brand-new program, a retina, rather, a brand-new approach that we're taking. And once we get through that RFP process, we may realize that we need to do a little bit of tweaking. And we don't think so at this time, but we we, you know, we might. And so we thought if we came back and had to do any tweaking, that we would be able to add in that clarification, should we need to do that at that point.
May I, Mayor? Okay. So I was just going to clarify that that point. So I don't I don't necessarily have a problem with it not being in the ordinance, considering the ordinance can get stagnant pretty quickly, you might want to be updating the the requirements and things like that. But I I do, I would recommend that we make that very public information and that it's very clear and easy for people to find it, so that they can have confidence that, hey, all the people that you're going to be hiring from the city to do this on your behalf meet these qualifications. And if we have to update them from time to time, maybe it's not in an ordinance, because that can be somewhat burdensome, but that we have we have the ability to do that. So, okay, that's helpful. The only other question that I have for you then is what the one of the biggest concerns that we are hearing from our our friends in the real estate business is that that this will cause delays in the turnaround times associated with with inspections. And not so much that, to your point, you have the mobile app and you can, you know, basically submit the electronic function, you know, directly, I get that part, but in the scheduling process, for example, right? So as hot a market as we have here in Bloomington in the South Metro, you know, time is of the essence, for sure. And so I'm hoping that we can talk a little bit, or if you have any ideas, for how to ensure that, you know, I don't want to be blunt, but let's be blunt for a second. You know, sometimes the city doesn't move as fast as the private sector, right? And so there's some concern that the that the city will bog this down more so than it will speed it up. And so the streamlining part makes sense. I'm just curious if you can help me understand the timing.
Sure. Bernadette?
Yep. Mayor, council members. So to mitigate that, again, we have the RFP with 10 to 15 qualified inspectors. We are hiring the additional for one full-time, one part-time inspector. So we already have two city inspectors that do this, so we'll have three full-time city inspectors and a part-time city inspector. In addition to that, we have eight fully certified time of sale inspectors on staff currently who do backup time of sale with the city now. So at at that time, let's say someone calls in today, they need an inspection tomorrow, we're booked up, we would go to that list of certified inspectors. So it would be just as it is today. We would send them to that same list, just as we would today with the 38-plus inspector, private evaluator, so that there wouldn't be that delay. Let's say they wanted it for next Monday, we couldn't accommodate it within a 48-hour period. Again, we would go to that that list and schedule it directly with the evaluators.
I'm satisfied. Thank you.
Councilmember Nelson.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Few questions here. So if I understand what I just heard there, the only time the private inspector would be able to be used is through the city. So if a real estate agent and inspector had a really good relationship, they worked on a number of projects, even if they were an applicant to the RFP and approved by the city, the the seller working with their real estate agent could not request that private inspector that they have a good relationship with.
Mayors, mayor members, there is a there is a request for outside inspector process that we do have. that we do have, but it would be on a as-needed basis. Am I correct, Melissa? We have that form that they could request. So I don't believe that it's for any time that they just want to use any inspector that they would like. It's more for in certain circumstances, like I was saying. I have an inspection today, I can get this inspector that I've worked with, can you accommodate it? No, we can't accommodate it. Can you schedule it with XYZ inspector? That type of situation.
Mayor and members, the language that's currently in the draft is, again, on page 190, excuse me, it's on 190, paragraph C, underlined at, towards the top of the page. The city has the sole discretion to determine whether it's an employee or a private contractor that's, that is being used. And again, those private contractors come from that list that's drawn out of the RFP process. The city gets to decide, as it's currently drafted, the, the city would go to that list when they are not, when the city staff are not able to accommodate the request, within the given amount of time. So for example, outside of the regular workday, or exigent circumstances. Exigent circumstances is not defined in the ordinance intentionally, in that it could be when the city can't accommodate the request, within the given timeframe, or whatever else staff determine in order to meet the needs of the requser.
Okay. Next question was about some of the data you had in terms of city inspectors versus private inspectors, and, you know, the, the difference in the number of issues that were found and, and things of that nature. Was there any analysis to control for other variables, like the age of the house, the price of the house, are private inspectors more or less likely to be used in different types of houses? Was there anything, you know, to take and analyze that a little bit more detailed, to see if there was potentially other factors? The other part of that is, was it analyzed? Do we just have a, you know, do we have a group of the private ones that are doing a really great job, and some that aren't doing a good job? And we need to take a look at a different way of doing that? I guess I'm just trying to figure out what's driving those, those discrepancies, other than this private versus public service model?
Mayor, members, so we did not look at the age of the home, or where the homes were located in that data. We did look at inspectors, and it was very, very well spread out throughout the inspector list.
Okay.
On private inspectors.
Okay. And I think this was maybe some information that we got prior to the meeting about engagement on this issue, but what I saw in the engagement that we've had with the Realtor and inspection community was related to the energy inspection. Can you talk to what engagement was done about the change to bringing this all-in-house? Because I believe in our packet, we had a letter from the Realtors Association that they were surprised by this, that they were not aware that this change was going to be discussed tonight, and had concerns, and asked us to delay our decision tonight until they could have an opportunity to discuss it further and, and make sure it would be workable.
Mayor, councilmembers, you're correct in that there was very little time after we've realized with the energy disclosure, what this kind of meant for this program going forward. The outreach was mostly to the time-of-sale inspectors. Our building official, Duke Johnson, reached out to several of the inspectors that do the majority of the inspections in the city, and spoke with them directly. And then an email was sent out in December directly to them, letting them know that this was a proposal, and that they can contact us directly regarding any questions that they may have. And I had a handful that reached out to me directly, and then several Realtors through the notice of publication, reached out to me, and I spoke with them. Steve Commerce from Adina Realty, I spoke with him regarding this, and a few others as well.
So, no, I appreciate you talking with them, but that is one of my concerns in terms of the engagement, and if, if, I guess my next question would be, is there a reason that we need to act on this tonight, as opposed to spending a little bit more time engaging with the Realtors Association or other interested parties, to just make sure this will actually work in the marketplace? Because I, one of the things that I have heard from the conversations with Realtors that I've had is the timeliness, which I think you've, you've done a nice job of addressing that, but also those relationships, and that, you know, a lot of times, some of the variation or the reason they're bringing in a private inspector is they may be doing a number of projects for them, or they may be doing a more extensive project, and the time of sale is only one aspect of what they're doing, of things of that nature. And so I want to, you know, obviously make sure this will actually work to meet the needs of our residents, the buyers and sellers, and the Realtors. Sorry, long question. Does it need to be done, do we need to act tonight?
Mr. Mayor?
Oh, gosh.
Councilmembers, we just have that April 1st deadline date that we were trying to achieve. So that's really, you know, once you pass the budget, staff sat down and did this timeframe. I know that, as Bernadette said, we have, the, some Realtors have reached out, some groups have reached out, and we could insert community engagement. Bernadette is taking those calls and conversations, and once we explain this fully, kind of what this program will look like, most of the people, Bernadette, and correct me if I'm wrong, don't seem to have a problem with it, but I definitely get your point, Councilmember Nelson. We're just trying to get everything done for this April 1st deadline, and really trying to make it the best program we possibly can, so.
Correct. And I think that there's been some miscommunication just with how the ordinance was published, and with how many positions that we're adding. I think that a lot of the feedback I'm receiving is, oh, I thought, I thought that you were only adding one and a half people to run this whole program. I didn't realize that you were going to have still a list of contractual inspectors, or you already have two on staff, and your other eight staff are also available to do these inspections. So there was a level of comfort, once I did speak with them, and like Carla said, I would be more than willing to do a virtual webex with the Realtors Association after this and do some engagement, just so that they, there is a more comfort level with them as well.
So, and I appreciate you doing that, and I'll be candid, my experience in talking with them was fairly similar to that, that once I explained the additional availability of people and things like that, it certainly eased some of those concerns. Again, the one that still seems outstanding is, are those relationships that they have with private inspectors, and how that would work, if it could work. So my last question is, was there any consideration of, instead of bringing this in-house and doing an RFP for kind of the overflow private inspectors, of taking a look at our licensing? If the issue is consistency, you know, why not bring them onto the software system? Why not use licensing to ensure the standards are being met? Why not toughen those standards up and leave this up to the private marketplace, but with better controls? As an example, you know, I hold a license through the state as a contractor, but I'm required to input permit applications and things within certain city systems. Fortunately, most cities use the same system, but a few use different systems, and, but, you know, that's a requirement for me to get through that process, and how I format things, and how I apply, and all that. Why don't we, why don't we just do that with the inspectors and, and make them use that system, so we don't have those delays? I guess I'm wondering if this could be dealt with through licensing, as opposed to bringing it in-house with an RFP?
Mayor, councilmember Nelson, so our CityView software system doesn't work outside of having it be a city. Our contract only allows city staff to have independent contractors use our internal system, would, would, they wouldn't be able to both work simultaneously. We'd have to have a separate software system built, configured. And so that was where we were looking at the cost versus bringing it all internal, or having two separate software systems. And again, having those, those legal agreements, having the annual maintenance fees for two different software systems, and then having, again, the, the training. I do the software training and configuration for CityView internally with our inspectors, so having to also provide that training for external inspectors, and then also providing that, like, IT support for them, when there's things that go wrong, which happens all the time, as you know, with software. Who do they call? They call the city, so then we're also providing that kind of IT support for them as well. So it, it kind of, you know, snowballed at that point. And so that was when we, you know, made the decision to, to go internal, and then that also, you know, helped to mitigate all of these other issues as well.
Okay. I, I mean, that would be something I'd be interested in looking at more, because I believe that I utilize CityView with this, with Scott County, with the city of Inver Grove Heights, and maybe potentially Burnsville and other places, in order to pull permits and things like that, as a, as a contractor. So, you know, if there's a way to look at that licensing and how we might allow that, would be of interest, but it may be a moot point, depending on what, what action the council takes here, so. Thank you for the time, I appreciate the information.
Councilmember Lowman?
Thank you, mayor. So I just want to get, I think, you know, Councilmember Nelson has kind of brought this forward, and also Councilmember Lassandro, and also to some extent, Carter. So if we were to hold this up, what changes could realistically be made between now and, and April 1st, that deadline? I mean, I mean, could there, what, what changes really could realistically be made between now and then, if we were to make a, hold this up today and make a change?
Mayor members, I, I can add a little bit. So the, the stuff that needs to get done between now and sometime at the beginning of April, in order to be ready, is that the RFP needs to be put together. We have sort of the bones, and we kind of know what we want in there, but it needs to be formally drafted. It needs to be posted for a few weeks, so people have a chance to respond. Then we need to review it, and then the contracts need to be entered into. The form of contract would be in that RFP, so there shouldn't really be much negotiation on that. That should be relatively administrative. That takes some time, though, and we want to give people a chance to see it and, and answer questions, so that people can give a, a good response. It's my understanding that the April 1st deadline is when the, the compliance kicks in, the requirements kick in. We have a little bit of room in that, in that we have, it's a bit of a slower time. I was, it was explained to me, although the world, you know, who knows what the world would be like in April, but we for sure have to have everything up and going once it gets warmer out, because that's when the market really picks up. Duke, is that about right?
Yes, that's correct.
So it's really the early RFP. So then my, my, my last question, I see my colleagues down there, is certainly there's some opportunities here to improve the process, and we've already acknowledged that. I like the program that we have, that we're bringing forward, but one of the questions I have, that I think that Councilmember Nelson has really put forward, is this idea of, he maybe didn't say this, but I'm going to say it. Are we going to reevaluate this program? So now we've got so many years' worth of, of private sector kind of being kind of the front end of this piece. When we get to, you know, the end of next year, or a couple of years out, will we reevaluate this program and say, hey, you know what, maybe we need to kind of be innovative, and maybe look at a hybrid model and try to do something different? How, how will we evaluate this program?
Mayor, councilmembers, so we are looking at different metrics, and we are building things into our CityView software, so that we can evaluate the program, to see how many hazards are being found on inspector, city inspector inspections versus private inspector inspections, when they are doing them. How many permits are being driven off of inspections that we're, that we're completing? Energy data that's going to be collected also off of this. So the metrics are going to be going to Emma, and she's going to be putting those into reports for sustainability reports. So we're going to be using a lot of the, the information that we're gaining through this program, and using it for evaluation going forward. With our new CityView software, we're able to do a lot of that data and evaluation, whereas when we had our previous permitting software, we weren't able to see those, those data points. So that's, that's part of the reason we're able to see all of these inconsistencies, because we do have a new software system, where in the past, we weren't able to see the percentage of hazards found privately versus city inspector inspections. So now that we can see that, we have to do something about that.
And Mr. Mayor, councilmembers, if I may add, one of the things we're also implementing is a customer service survey after the inspection. So to get responses from our constituents on how they feel the, you know, how was the appointment made, you know, was it handled timely, the inspector came out, you know, just getting some feedback on the service that we are providing will be implemented as well.
Well, mayor, given what's been said here, I, I wonder if it makes sense, I mean, I, you know, I certainly, I mean, I'm certainly open to, you know, I, Councilmember Nelson and some other folks have said they'd like to, to, to do some work with this, I'm open to that, but I wonder if it makes some sense to move this along, and then reopen it up at some other point in time, and make some adjustments, because we may want to make some additional readjustments. I'd be willing to, to move this forward with that, that caveat, that we kind of come back and reevaluate.
That's generous of you, councilmember. We do have a public hearing we've got to have first, but we, we will, we will have the public hearing first. I, I do have a question. Are other cities following this model, using this model, or are we, would we be an outlier if we adopted this model of, of home inspections?
Mr. Mayor, and I'm going to let Bernadette answer that. It's my understanding that, like, the city of Minneapolis only has private inspectors, and I think Richfield has only in-house inspectors. And Bernadette, do you want to add that? I mean, I think it's either or.
Yeah. Yep, mayor, councilmembers. So a lot of them are either or, like Carla was saying. So we would be kind of a, having kind of a hybrid approach to this, allowing external inspectors. The difference is with the city, like Carla was saying, the city of Minneapolis, they are solely external inspectors, and they have a complete external software system that the inspectors all complete their inspections through, and submit their inspections through. Richfield is all internal, so they have their internal system. So that's kind of, again, that's when we were talking about, do we go completely external, completely internal? And this is, this is kind of the, the gift.
So it's an either-or kind of thing, not necessarily an and, like we're proposing here, so understood.
Right. Because even, again, sorry to interrupt, but even with the inspectors that are going to be turning in their reports, the external inspectors, when they turn in those reports to our portal, we're still going to have to enter those by hand. So my staff will still have to enter those by hand into our system. So it's still, it's still not 100% mobile or digital, but it's, it's a better approach than having 1,200 inspections being entered by my front staff.
Understood, thank you. One other question, and then we'll get to Councilmember Nelson again, I think he has another question. You, you mentioned the, the data differences between the inspections between private and city inspectors, and the amount of issues found, and so on. Do we, do we know, are there, was there any follow-up to determine whether the hazards were simply going unreported or unidentified, or whether there were simply no hazards that these private, these private inspectors were finding? Any, any knowledge on that? Because the, the difference was, was obviously striking, there was a significant difference there.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I want to defer to Bernadette. She's the one that lives this every day and pulled the data.
Mayor, councilmembers, again, obviously, there are some homes that have no hazards, but it's very rare. I would say like 10 to 15% is a normal number for houses that have no hazards. But when our inspectors go out to a home to, you know, two months after someone buys a home, and now they're selling it again, which is not, you know, rare, especially in this economy, and they're finding hazards that they know were not created by that person who lived there for only two months, it's very obvious that they were just overlooked, and were given a kind of clean bill of health by the previous inspector. It's very obvious that they were just overlooked and were given a kind of clean bill of health by the previous inspector.
All right. Thank you. That's helpful. Councilmember Nelson.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I just, I quickly looked up what we had received from Mr. Myers with the realtors and he he asked for just one week in order to have some dialogue with the city. Might be able to help us on the communication end if we're able to address the issues in terms of timeliness and things like that and and get that message out there so there isn't confusion. So, you know, I don't, I don't think I'm, I would be asking for consideration of delay until anywhere near April, just to give them the week, or at least until our next meeting, to get those clarifications and see, you know, from my perspective, I just want to make sure it works, you know? And they may have some insight into what's going on in the marketplace and some other things that they see in other cities from a practical, you know, boots-on-the-ground perspective that may impact it. So that that's all I'd ask for is that one week and not anything more than that at this point. So I do appreciate all of the information that's been provided.
Thank you, councilmember. Council, are there any additional questions, comments on this? Because if not, we do have a public hearing associated with this and I would like to open the public hearing if at all possible. Thank you for the information. Thanks for the the staff report. It was helpful. With that, I will open the public hearing on item 7.3, which is a time-of-sale inspection evaluation ordinance. And I think we've got at least a couple of folks here in the council chambers who have been waiting patiently to to talk to us about this and I appreciate your patience and appreciate you coming in this evening. Good evening. Welcome.
Thank you, Mayor and councilpeople. I have been doing Truth in Housing for 35 years.
If you could identify yourself first.
I was going to do it here. Ronald Staley. I've run American Central Inspections and as I said, I've been doing inspections for 35 years. I wasn't sure all of, again, this has really snuck up on us. This was, this was very quick. The the first thing about the hazards is that's very easily explained. Because most of the hazards in the city of St. Paul, or excuse me, in the city of Minneapolis and Bloomington and the other cities that have RRs, which is repair, replace, you're like smoke detectors. In Bloomington, they won't, we have a a cellphone plugged in with an extension cord. And when we schedule appointments, we say, make sure all your smoke detectors work, make sure there's a smoke detector in every bedroom, make sure you've unplugged the freezer in the basement, make sure that your cellphones aren't plugged into extension cords because that's a hazard in the in the city of Bloomington. So we just, and I'm surprised it's not 2080. Because again, if we're there and a smoke detector isn't working, they can throw a battery in while we're there. And that will make that hazard go away. So we're not talking about uncapped gas lines. We're not talking about, you know, toilets running into the into the laundry tub downstairs. We're just talking about simple things. And I'm surprised it's only 4087. Because again, we're 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 private and we're trying to do a good job for your citizens in getting the inspections out. Also, this seven-day thing, I have no idea what that is. Because no realtor is going to put up with us not getting that report to them the day we do it. So every one of our of our clients get their report that day. And this sort of, again, a misnomer that there's a problem with getting reports out. Also, right now, they're talking about how convenient this is going to be because it's one stop. People call us up, we're out there that day. Do we require an application? No. Do we require someone to run a check down to the city? No. You call Richfield today and ask for an inspection, excuse me. If you were to call Richfield today and ask for an inspection, they'd say, sure, we can come out. And they, okay, great, come on out. Oh, no, no, did you do your application? No. Did you pay for it? No. Are we, have we, have you done any of the legwork beforehand in order to make this convenient for you? No. But you call us, we go out there, you can pay us with Zelle, Cash App, Cash, credit card. Sometimes we'll bill it to closing if people have some problems with coming up with the money. And the saying that it's going to be one-stop and easy is just not, we make it easy. Because we like when our realtors call us and say, we want that inspection done. So we do that very quickly. If there were problems with consistencies, staff has kept it a secret from us. They haven't had a single meeting, maybe ever, talking about consistencies, ever. So if they've had a problem with that, they should bring it to us and spend an hour and a half talking to us about what sort of things they're seeing that we're missing because it's your program. We will call whatever you want. You want us to call Purple Walls? We'll call Purple Walls. So we don't actually, like I said, we don't have a a dog in the fight on that. And also with the with consistency because it's all in-house. Richfield, you talk to people who work in Richfield and there's only two inspectors there. Sometimes they're out three weeks. Now, you're three times bigger and you're going to have three inspectors or three and a half. And then it's going to go down. And how's that going to work? Is it if you're friends with the people who make the decisions, are you going to get the contracts downwind? Or is it a strict lottery? You know, who does a good job, who doesn't do a good job? And, you know, you can get three inspectors to agree on a property if two of them are dead. So as far as that's concerned, I just, I I think there, this is a a solution in 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 search of a problem. And that when people say this is going to be easy because it's one-stop, it already is one-stop. And it's a way better, more convenient stop because, again, we can make this happen for you very nicely. And I don't think your your citizens are going to be happy with this at all. Let me see if I have any other notes. Again, it it might be streamlined after you apply and after you're all set up, but you're going to have a lot more reinspection. Also, say, they say that the extra, I know I only have six seconds, but if you need something tomorrow, it's $250 plus $100. You're up to $350 for a truth in housing. That's that's what in the paperwork here. So that's a lot of money for, I mean, you can get a buyer's inspection, four hours of my time for three and a half, for $350. And they're going to be getting $350 for a truth in housing because you're in a hurry. Also, they won't have access to lock boxes. The city won't be able to get in on the lock boxes for the vacant houses or the rehabbers or the people, the estates, et cetera. They won't be able to get in to look at the properties because it all has to be prepaid. Someone has to meet us there, et cetera, et cetera. So I guess that's all I have to say. This gentleman here, I saved some for him.
Thank you, Mr. Staley. Appreciate it.
My name is Bryce Staley. I have been a truth in housing evaluator for the city of Bloomington since 2005. So I'm one of the independent guys. Mayor, councilpeople, I'd like to offer myself up for any questions that you guys might have from the perspective of a licensed evaluator, somebody who's been doing this for 17 years. I would just like to throw myself out there if you guys have any questions. One of the things that Ron said that I'd I'd like to reiterate is is that if I'm, when I set an appointment in Bloomington, I'm keenly aware of what are the things that I see in the field all day long. So we do sort of run down, these are the hazards, this is what's going on, this is what I'm going to look for, this is how it's going to go down. And oh, by the way, if an outlet cover is off, I can stand there. I'll stand there and watch them put it on. I'm not going to write up a hazard if I can have them fix it standing there. So that probably explains, and I had an opportunity to talk to Duke about the program. This sort of was sprung on us in, basically, when we were told we were relicensing. And I guess the thing I want to say about April and April 1st and the real estate market from 17 years of doing this is is that April could not be the most, could not be a worst time to be messing with your program. Because what happens is this phone rings, this belt is on me 24 hours a day, and I go out and I do the work. I show up, I take a field copy, I take a picture of that field copy, I send it to my assistant who types it and files it with the city the same day. I have this down to a science. And I I cannot speak to the other gentlemen who are licensed with the city, the other 38 guys out there, if there's inconsistencies in the program. We need to, we obviously need to address those. I'm willing to address those. But as I said, as I had an opportunity to talk to Duke, he said, well, you're one of the good guys. And it's like, well, that's great, except like now I have a whole new process that I'm going to have to wrap my head around. And what I'm saying is is that Bloomington has always been a hybrid model. You've always had city inspectors and private evaluators. And to throw that program in the in the trash can in favor of an some sort of independent contractor yet to be defined is, it's going to, it's going to affect how I earn my living. It's going to affect me being able to, being able to pay for my kids going to college. And I've, you know, Duke's aware of this. We 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 do make good money because we provide exceptional service. And I don't dress this way in the morning, I don't put on my work belt in the morning and have a computer I carry with me and chargers that I carry with me to give bad service. And I I think that, I think that, you know, you guys just, and I, again, I, Mr. Nelson, Councilmember Nelson had a lot of good points. And I said to Duke, I said, give me a computer. Put it in the city hall. I'll come in and I'll type up my stuff. I mean, I, just give me access, this, this is a software problem. It's not a hardware problem. It's a software problem. And software problems can be fixed and should be attempted to be fixed. And so, and I think if you take a look at your numbers, and I'll just say this, I've got another minute to plead my case. If you look at the numbers, the private evaluators, your constituents are already voting. They're voting with their pocketbooks, they're voting with their time, and they're voting with their money. And if you look at the number of inspections done by private evaluators, we are consistently winning in that column for the last five years. 72% of the inspections in 2020 went to private evaluators. There's a reason for that. We provide a good service. We provide, we, in in, I would say, a superior service, but, you know, I don't want to, I don't want to bash the the department because Dean and those guys, they they do do a good job. But I think that, I think, I I've done this for 17 years. It's my livelihood. It's what I do. It's the only thing I do, and I do it well. So I I would, I would.
If I could just add one question, you've been doing this 17 years. How often do you work in Bloomington? How many inspections did you do in Bloomington last year?
Last year I did about 10% of all the inspections done in Bloomington.
What's that number?
I don't know, like, close to 60, 50, something like that. I mean, I'm not, you know, I'm not, I'm not the guy. There, I'm sure there's guys that do more than me. But I just, you know, I just, I I love my job. I love everything about it. I love talking to people. I love going to people's houses. You can learn an awful lot about people by by the stuff that hang on their walls. But, you know, I mean, that's, and that's pretty much, you know, like I said, I just, I just think that I wish more of my compatriots, more of my independent evaluators would would have come out today to talk to you guys because I I think that there's, I think there's some some conclusions being drawn that are just false. And I just don't, I, you know. Anyway, does anybody have any questions from the private guy? Anybody want to, want to ask me anything?
If if we do, this is not a shy group. We'll call you back.
Okay.
All right. Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak at this portion of this public hearing on item 7.3? Please come forward.
Brian Savick again. Do I sign it a second time?
I'll find you.
Thank you. Mayor and and councilmembers. I hate to use up whatever political goodwill I have. This isn't an issue that really even concerns me, but just as a citizen listening to this, I mean, my background is 50 years in systems and accounting. I had IT departments under me, reporting to me. It seems to be just qual, qual, problems with quality and turnaround. Some software issues. Why not write a batch program that anybody can key into and and it'll come back telling you that, okay, you didn't answer this one right or it's wrong. You know, that shouldn't be a major undertaking. I mean, that's what private business faces every day is quality problems and turnaround problems. That's what it's all about. I just, I, I'm learning a lot out of two meetings so far, but it's, it's almost scary as a citizen to watch government walk into private industry and say, you know, we can do it better. We're going to take it in. And we can because we have the power. You know, these are everyday problems in private industry. I mean, I hope you you listen to these folks because they they live that. But if it's an issue of you're not getting what you want, I see there was a fine, you know, up the fine. If if it's a, if you're having problems, you know, you should have data on where the problems are. Is it 20 with this inspector and one with another one? You can deal with that. It's data. And so it doesn't mean that government has to step in and take over what private industry is doing. Plus, on top of that, okay, you hire people, set up a department, now you got queuing issues. Sometimes they're going to be way too busy. Okay, your independent guys can take care of some of that. What happens when you only have two requests and two inspectors they've got all day? They're on the payroll doing nothing. You know, so I mean, all of the things I've heard, and I have no experience whatsoever in this, but all the things I've heard are just standard operating problems for any business. And it should be able to be handled by management. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Savick.
I know you guys are getting tired and so am I. I'll make it quick.
If you could just identify, I know.
Jim Farrell, okay.
Thank you, Mr. Farrell.
I looked at the ordinance, downloaded the ordinance. To me, it's, it's an issue that needs to be explained to the homeowner. Because there's certain issues in here that, this is really not written in a user-friendly way from a homeowner's perspective. I don't know who edited it, who reviewed it, but it certainly isn't. And there's certain issues in here that I said, bare explanation, the R, R value of the insulation. There's different R values for different insulation. Excuse me.
Mr. Farrell, if I can get you back on the microphone so we can make sure that the folks at home could, can hear what you're saying.
Yeah, there's different R values for different insulation. There's different insulation, insulating material that provides heat capture at different depths. And is, is somebody going to get in the rafters of my house and look at the insulation? He better be a small person because you can't get up there. I've owned the house since 79. Five years later, coming from California, decided to insulate it, which I did. And probably today, 21 inches of insulation probably isn't sufficient. 50% of the heat lost in a home in Minnesota goes through the roof. About 20% through the windows. And you can look at 20 to 25% through the walls. And the idea that it seems like this ordinance is targeted for houses that were built prior to 1980. Is that true? Anybody?
I don't believe there, I don't believe there are specific, they weren't aiming at a specific timeframe. I think it was houses in general. And correct me if I'm wrong, Carla, but I think that's the case. Yeah.
Yeah, well, it seems like in drilling a hole in the wall, an outside wall to determine if there's insulation in if there's insulation in the, in the wall, or the extent of the insulation. At that one point, the, the hole is drilled, two inches. There might be no insulation there at all. It might have dropped. And it does. Insulation does drop. So that's another issue. But I said earlier that this needs to be, like, when the, uh, the article appeared in the, in the, uh, the local, uh, Bloomington briefing. And it indicated that Minneapolis was the only, no, it indicated one other city. And why wouldn't you mention Minneapolis in the briefing? It was a simple matter to find out that it was Minneapolis. But the truth of the matter is, all this energy, uh, disclosure process started in California and Portland, Oregon. That's when it all started, back in two thousand and eight. Berkeley, California, and the UC Berkeley contracted with the city of Portland to address this actual issue. And that's where it all started. And exactly, if UC Portland's point-of-sale ordinance, it's twenty-three pages. Portland, Oregon's is twenty-six. Portland, Oregon had to hire sixty-seven house inspectors in order to comply with the ordinance they wrote. And the training that they've, obviously, they contracted a lot of those inspectors out. But the other thing that I wanna talk about is the time of sale license application. Oops, this requires, to the deference of my friends back there, eighteen hours of, uh, education credits every year. Who, who monitors that? Anybody? it doesn't seem like, in reading this, it's a code of ethics, there's no question about it. And the ver, requires verification of eighteen hours of continuing education credits each year to maintain your license. Who, who, who audits that all these inspectors have actually gone through this? The building department? Inspections? I don't know. Now, the other issue that, and I'll get off here.
Mr. Farrell, your five minutes are up here, so.
R B?
Your five minutes are up, so.
The only thing I wanna, just last comment. I think you got a lot of work to do before you kick this off April first. And my comment on April first is, it's because the real estate business starts to pick up, and I hope that's not the driving point. Do it right the first time.
Thank you, Mr. Farrell. Nora, do we have anyone on the phone who wishes to speak on item seven point three, our public hearing on a time-of-sale inspection evaluation ordinance?
As of the moment, sir, we don't have any participants or attendees via phone line, so you may proceed.
Thank you. Looks like everyone here in the council chambers has had an opportunity to speak on this. We have nobody on the line, so, Council, I would look for a motion to close the public hearing on item seven point three.
Some moves, Councilmember Loman.
Second, Coulter.
We have a motion by Councilmember Loman, a second by Councilmember Coulter to close the public hearing on item seven point three. There is no further council discussion on this. Mr. Brillert.
Carter.
Aye.
Coulter.
Aye.
DeLisandro.
Aye.
Loman.
Aye.
Martin.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Mayor Bussi.
Aye. Motion carries seven zero.
Some of the questions that I heard, actually, a lot more commentary than questions, but do have the specific question, the question of who monitors the education credits and the requirements that would, uh, that would be in place for, for folks. Ms. Henderson?
Mayor, councilmembers, I believe it's, um, our licensing division. They, um, take in all the paperwork for the licensing annually, and so they process those applications along with their, um, insurance requirements and their continuing education requirements.
Thank you, appreciate that.
I'd like to add one thing there, if I may, Mayor.
Please.
Uh, the education that they take is proposed to us. They could be taking, um, Minnesota State Education Board, uh, type classes that would relate. So we do, are pretty liberal on the education portion of what they have, and it is, such as the last gentleman mentioned, a code of ethics. So at any time, if we question it, or if our license, license department questions it, we do look into it.
Thank you. Council, additional questions based on what we heard during the public hearing? Anything? Anything unanswered in your minds that, uh, we could ask here?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember DeLisandro.
I don't know if, I don't know if this is, um, unanswered, I'm not sure, but I, I'm, I wanna just make sure I have the timeline right, and so, so that I can understand how this came about. So, um, love the energy audit thing, right? Gonna be huge supporter of that. And so what, what it sounds like happened was, uh, this came up, and that meant that we had to have an ability to capture that data, um, and that led us to a software package that allows us to do that. Is that, am I ret so far, or do we already have the software package?
Mr. Mayor, councilmembers, I'm gonna defer to Bernadette on that question.
Mayor, Councilmember DeLisandro, so we currently do have a software package. Um, we did have to go out and have it, um, updated to include the new items.
Okay.
And, um, because we have external inspectors, that's where the, um-
Totally.
Issues.
Understood, okay. So thank you for that, 'cause that's where I was going next. So you have this software package, and it has the updated data in it that we need to collect for the purposes of understanding the energy stuff. And we go, "Oh, wait, that software package isn't something that our external folks can use, so now we have to come up with another way to do that." And, um, the question that I'm, I'm asked, I guess is on my mind, is, was, was the option to change the license for the software or anything like that considered? And did we do, did we do any work to find out if that could be the hurdle that we overcame as opposed to having to kind of resolve it via the workforce change?
Got it. Mr. Mayor, councilmembers, I'm gonna take a stab at it, and then I'm gonna kick it to, um, Bernadette. I remember the conversations about adding additional licenses and the cost, um, and then getting into the whole city of Bloomington IT, 'cause we have to work, I mean, Hal has been from our IT department, side by side on this. And Bernadette, I'm gonna kick it to you to, to answer the rest of that.
Yes, uh, Mayor, councilmembers, so, um, we implemented CityView as a new software in twenty seventeen. Um, so it is a relatively new software system, and we did, um, invest significantly in that software. And so CityView is used by our planning department, our licensing department, we're going live with code enforcement with CityView software. So it's something that we're using broadly across community development and other departments. So it was not, um, it was not something that we proposed to go outside and get another software system, um, to use specifically for inspections, as, um, we already have something that we're using. And our IT steering committee, um, part of their, um, kind of, um, their mantra, if you will, is, um, kind of keep with what you have and kind of let everyone, um, let's not try to reinvent the wheel, let's, so to speak.
Yep.
Um, so that's, that's kind of where we were with, with that. So barring city staff hand-entering twelve hundred, um, external inspector reports, um, this is the compromise.
May I continue? I apologize, this, it might be more of a conversation, I apologize. Um, but, but totally, uh, totally get that. Um, my, my question around the license was actually, like, in the legal contract, do we, are we legally, are we legally not allowed to allow, is it, is it legal contract, or is it, um, IT norm that we don't allow external parties into our software? I guess that's really the question that I'm asking.
I, I don't know, Melissa Mandescheid may have a better idea of that.
Sure.
Mayor members, I don't know specifically as to this item, uh, this particular contract or rather software program, but I do know that, um, data security is, uh, an important part. We have very closely managed our firewalls, and typically, the contracts will provide for who can have access, um, to the data platform. And I also know that the licenses are, um, often quite expensive and, um, control a lot of that decision-making. I know that in my own, um, work group, uh, the licensing is usually quite, uh, expensive.
Understood, I appreciate that. Here's where I'm, here's where I'm going with this, just to be, just to be blunt. And I, I think this was referenced in the, the comments from one of our, um, one of our constituents here. Um, I, I don't mean to be flippant, but I'm pretty sure I could write you a mobile app that sits on top of that software, and you could enter all the data from any device on the planet, and it would go into your software without you ever needing to give me a specific license. Because that's what software does nowadays, and that's what APIs do and, and that kind of thing. And I don't mean to imply that we should do that between now and April first. Um, but I, I, I wonder, it is, it is, um, it is a challenge for me to understand that the human resources resolution was the right first resolution to this problem. And so I'll, I'll leave it at that, and I'll talk about that more in comments afterwards. But thank you for addressing the question. I, I mostly wanted to make sure I understood the timeline and, and the, the way that this came about. So thank you very much, appreciate it. Thank you, Mayor.
And Mayor, Councilmember DeLisandro, so just to clarify, um, our CityView software, where we enter this information, will have to go into an API for Center for Energy and Environment already, um, to get that energy data information and grab it, create that extra data point, uh, report, and bring it back into our CityView software. So that's, I think, where the multiple, um, software and APIs was an issue.
Council, additional questions? I'm not hearing any or seeing any. Uh, so just trying to frame this and move this forward, this is a variety of pieces. I think it's, uh, the, it's the time-of-sale energy, which I think we have all agreed on, because we, we did vote on that, and we agreed that was a good step forward, and it was something we needed to take care of. The, um, dealing with the, the needs within the inspections world, then, I think we're looking at a matter of consistency and timeliness, and still being able to provide the service to our residents and to the housing market as, as, as the need comes up. And, uh, the, I think, from my standpoint, from my concern, I think the biggest concern would be the consistency. To look at those numbers and to see how many don't have a, uh, an issue, or don't have a, a hazard identified compared to what the city inspectors have identified as hazards, um, it's, it's concerning to me, and I understand to, to hear from, from the Staley's that, you know, it could be as simple as not having a, a switch plate on, or, or a plug plate, or that kind of thing. But I, there's also the possibility that it could be something much larger. And I know that, um, I, I know, because, uh, having worked in construction through high school and college, that the city inspectors are much stricter and much, much tougher because they've been instructed to do so, to, to, to pick at every little thing. And so to, if I had the choice between the, oh, it's as simple as a switch plate, to, between that and to pick at every little thing, I wish there was a medium ground, but if there isn't, I would like to pick at every little thing, because we're talking about the housing stock in the city of Bloomington. And we're talking about, um, uh, the safety of somehow, you know, some safety issues. We're certainly talking about livability issues. We're talking about different things that, um, that make the housing stock in Bloomington attractive, uh, attainable, and, and what people wanna live in. And so, uh, as I try and work through this in my mind about the best way to do this, I, I agree, it's, it's interesting that the, um, it would be, I, I wonder if it would be as simple as simply making these tweaks, or, um, asking, raising the fines, or asking people to inspect better, that kind of thing, do better, hold them to higher standards, or is it a matter of the city taking this on themselves to ensure that it actually is going to happen, because we have much more control over it in that way? And, um, frankly, I'm, I'm, Council, I'm trying to figure this out myself, trying to figure out where to go with this, and trying to figure out what the best solution would be. And on top of all this, of course, is what we heard early in this discussion, is that, um, we, uh, we have heard from realtors that perhaps they, they haven't wrapped their head around this because they didn't get enough time to really think about this. So, uh, I, I'm, I'm thinking out loud right now, Council, and looking for thoughts, additional thoughts on that. And Councilmember Nelson, additional thoughts to add to this? Councilmember Loman? Councilmember Nelson?
Which one are you on first, Mayor?
You fire away. Deal is choice, you go ahead. Uh, Councilmember Nelson?
Um, so, yeah, I would just, you know, uh, kinda coming off of your comments, and I, I likewise am trying to get my head around this, and I think everyone wants the program to work best, and, and, uh, appreciate the efforts on, that staff has put into thinking through how to address these, you know, very different numbers that are coming from the different groups. But, you know, I would suggest maybe, you know, if we could spend two more weeks on it, engage with these various groups and see, um, what other information they have, if they can kind of help us get through some of these things that I think you and I are, maybe others are struggling with, um, that might be helpful. And come back in two weeks, uh, assuming we have a council meeting then, um, and, and see if, if we can get a little bit more direction, uh, coming out of that. That, that, that's kind of where I'm at, at this point, 'cause I, I agree with you, Mayor. It's a, it's a little bit of a challenge to figure out what exactly the right solution. Should we fix software? Should we change the labor? Should we, you know, take it over? I'd like more info.
Agreed, Councilmember. Councilmember Loman?
No, I'd say the same thing, I just think this thing isn't cooked quite yet. Um, so, uh, I'd like to give it a couple more weeks to get a little more done.
If we, uh, held this over until our February seventh meeting, asking for a couple of things, first of all, additional engagement with our, with the folks that have, we've not engaged with fully or appropriately, if, if we could do that, I think that would be helpful. Uh, I think, Council, if we have additional questions, if we wanna, if we want more clarity, uh, councilmembers, if you want more clarity and, and want additional information to help you make this decision, or to cook it a little bit more, Councilmember Loman, I, if, if we could quantify those, if you could actually talk through what that would be, what would be needed to help you make a decision, or help you clarify this in your minds, uh, I think we would need to do that. Uh, and I think, to be honest, I think February seventh would be about as late as we could do it, given February seventh to April first, it's, it's not that long, and we need to, if we're going to do it, we need to have that time, I think, so I don't know that we could push it out any farther. Councilmember Carter?
Thank you, Mayor. I guess one question I have, that I would love more information on, um, one of the, uh, testifiers mentioned, um, Richfield as an example, where they have all in, in-house staff doing this. I'd be curious what their wait times have been for people. Um, and I know we're proposing a hybrid model, but, um, to me, that's a, it would just be an important piece of information as we consider, um, even just our own internal capacity to be, like, to be able to handle, um, certain number of inspections. Uh, so that's one thing off the top of my head.
Councilmember DeLisandro?
So at risk of, of, uh, I can't even believe I'm gonna say this, okay? Here we go. Um, I am not a proponent of, of this because I want to be, but, um, the April first date for the energy audit is arbitrary, meaning, meaning we decided it, right? And we could, we could move that, too, if we needed to, to come up with a better way to pull this whole thing together, correct? Um, I don't like it, obviously, 'cause I'm one- I don't like it, obviously, because I'm, want to do the energy audits as soon as possible. But, and, but if we're going to, if we, if we get to February 7th and we're still not all satisfied, then what do we do, right? If we need more time, then do we, like, so is it like a December 31st type thing or a January 1st thing where we give ourselves this selling period, if you will, to really, you know, get ourselves a couple of, of interesting ideas? You know, does that allow us to do some RFI type thing for some software opportunities or some website on top of software type solutions that would provide us the ability to keep things the way they are, but give us more data collection opportunities or whatever? Throw that out there, just as another way of looking at potentially how to resolve some of this. Thanks.
Councilmember Martin?
Thank you very much, Mayor. I appreciate Councilmember DeLisandro's point about the timing on this one. Obviously, it's urgent. We're talking about declaring a climate crisis, but if the program isn't launched successfully, I mean, you want to start off on good foot. I, I will say, and this is just kind of a broader thing, so not as much of a hurry getting me the information, but I'm just curious, it was mentioned briefly, kind of the IT committee's general philosophy about looking at new software models and external integrations and things like that. So I'm just curious kind of what that is in a nutshell, because I got to imagine the world is evolving pretty fast these days and I just want to make sure we're not in the default mindset of things need to vacuum into the city for efficiency when we could do potentially creative integrations, as has been mentioned before. So it's a little bit longer term, but I'm just kind of curious, current mindset is there?
I would agree. And without IT folks here tonight, if we could make sure that we get this information. Additional thoughts, council, or questions that we would need to answer, need to have answered? So here's what I would propose. Councilmember Carter, go ahead.
I guess I would just be curious to know, maybe it's Mr. Fabregas, what your thinking is on the, to Lohman's point, or to Councilmember DeLisandro's point, to delaying the, that April 1st. Like, is that something that we could do? Because I, I agree, I feel like I'm, I just have so many more questions now. And, and even thinking back to our budget conversations, I felt like this was kind of an item that surprised us all. And so I, it's not surprising to me that some of the inspectors and realtors feel surprised by it. So I do, you know, I agree with other councilmembers' comments around needing more engagement, but I do have now some of these questions around software and, and I do want to make sure that we are, to the points already made, being thoughtful and being able to take the time necessary to, to have these conversations and to really fully assess all the solutions. Yeah, so I guess I'd be curious what the, the reaction is from staff on pushing the timeline and...
Mr. Fabregas Anderson, thoughts on that?
Mr. Mayor, councilmembers, Councilmember Carter, I believe the April 1st date is in ordinance and we would need to process an ordinance change to delay the effective date, which we'd have to go through notification and everything else as well. So, yeah, we've, we've got a fair amount of research here to do in light of this conversation if the council is wishing to do February 7th. So that will be another question that we'll just have to do a little bit of research on.
Mr. Mayor, councilmembers, personally, I think we should wait. And if we could push that date back, I'm sure Emma may disagree because we had asked for more time, this was actually supposed to take effect originally, internal conversations was January 1st. We would love to have more time to, to go through all of the things that were discussed tonight, because yes, I re, I called it my initiation, that budget conversation when, you know, all the questions were coming up and hadn't really put our arms around it the way I would like to, but feeling like we needed to get it done, get it done and implement it by April 1st was very important, you know, to Emma and her team and, you know, Sustainability Commission. So we're just trying to get, get it done. So.
Councilmember Lohman?
Well, I, I will say that I would be very disappointed if we need to change that date. I know we talk about trying to, to, you know, move this stuff forward, how important this is. But, you know, I can understand, you know, but, you know, I'd like us to, I would feel very uncomfortable for waiting this ever. Certainly, I want to have the best program that we can moving forward. So I just, I just get nervous when we start kicking that date out, you know, that we may not get to a resolution and I want to get us to a resolution. So I, I don't know how much time we need to get there, but I don't feel comfortable just kicking that date out until we're really certain what we want to do. So I don't know that I could support something beyond two weeks unless we're very clear about what we're trying to do.
Councilmember Nelson?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. And one of the questions I would have for us to discuss on the 7th is whether we could implement the energy audit with our current system and continue to work on the bringing the audits in-house at a future time, if that makes sense. It seems like the bringing it in-house is to address issues that are slightly outside of the energy audit portion. They are to deal with the consistency, the costs, the timeliness, those types of things. And my understanding from our previous conversations is the data points to do this energy portion should be fairly readily available to even the private inspectors. And so I, that would be one of the questions, you know, what would, what would happen if we, if we went forward with that and continued to marinate on whether we should bring this in-house, so we don't have to push that back?
So councilmembers, what I would suggest is that I'm going to make a motion that we, we lay this over, table it. What did we ever decide is the correct language here to?
Second.
To hold this over until our February 7th meeting to get some answers to the questions that have been raised here tonight. And at that point, to try and decide the path forward, whether we're, answer the questions where we're at the point where we're comfortable moving forward with the April 1st implementation date, and if not, to, to talk about what we might do otherwise. So I think that would be the, the motion that I would make.
Mayor, before you get, you have a second on that? I would like to add a little bit of information, just a reminder. We wanted to make sure you had as much information as possible for you, for your consideration tonight. And we weren't sure sort of where, how this conversation was going to go as well. And so we put out a notice for the ordinance amending fees that related to this and we put it in the packet and that's scheduled for February 7th. So I just wanted you all to know that was actually moving ahead as well and would be appearing on that February 7th agenda. So the timing works quite well.
Thank you. And I'll, I'll trust that staff will make sure all, everything lines up as it needs to and will, as we move forward with this, however it does go forward. I have a motion in a second to lay this over, table it, whatever title we're officially using now to, to the February 7th meeting where we'll take up this discussion again. Hearing no further discussion on this? Mr. Brillard? Carter?
Aye.
Coulter?
Aye.
DeLisandro?
Aye.
Lohman?
Aye.
Martin?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Mayor Bussie? Aye. Motion carries seven zero. Well, thank you for the, thank you for the, the discussion here. Thanks for the effort and thanks for what you brought forward and I look forward to continuing this and we'll see where we can keep moving this forward if, as need be. So thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and councilmembers.
So council, we're two minutes away from 10 o'clock and Councilmember Lohman is proving prescient here. Here's what I would like to suggest is that we take up item 7.4, that we hold off item 7.5 until February 7th as well, and then get to our public safety update just as quickly as possible, because I know that Chief Hartley has a lot to talk about this evening. So if there is no, there's no further discussion, I would like to, to move, we amend the agenda to, to move our item 7.5 to our February 7th meeting of the city council.
Second.
Motion in a second to move item 7.5 to our February 7th meeting?
Mayor, just, Mayor, I'm sorry, I'm sorry to jump in, but that's a public hearing and so we wouldn't be able to renotice it for February 7th or 2nd, whatever day that is, 7th. So we'd actually really prefer that you would open the public hearing and then continue it, hold it open until February 7th.
I understand.
Otherwise, we won't be able to accommodate that.
We will do just that once we get to that, but thank you for that, just to, thank you for that clarification. Thanks for keeping us in line here. So we will do that once we get to item 7.5. What I will do now is open the public hearing and then, or call item 7.4, which is another public hearing, and this is on the SAC deferral program ordinance and policy. And Ms. Gillespie, you get to stay with us tonight. Lucky you. Thanks for, thanks for sticking with us this late.
And good evening, Mayor and councilmembers. Barb Wolf here from Community Development.
Oh, Barb, I'm sorry, I didn't see you. Your, your name was not on my list of, of people for this. I apologize.
No worries. Bernadette's with me here this evening. And thank you. Interesting conversation that I'm listening to this evening, so. I trust that you can see my screen, the presentation?
Yes, we can. Please go ahead.
Okay. So tonight, we're going to discuss the SAC Small Business Deferral Program, along with a minor code amendment, thus the public hearing this evening. And this policy proposal is a result of our racial equity work, looking at existing policy and procedures and how best to serve our community. So what is SAC? Many of the councilmembers probably already know, but for the benefit of our viewing audience, the Met Council provides sanitary sewer treatment for wastewater generated from properties in the city of Bloomington, as well as the entire Twin Cities metro area. A sewer availability charge, more commonly known as a SAC, is collected from each property based on the amount of wastewater that is anticipated to generate. And this determination comes directly from the Met Council. The fee collected contributes to the construction and maintenance of the regional sewer system and sanitary sewage treatment facilities. So basically, the city collects these fees on behalf of the Met Council at the time of building permit issuance, and then the city turns around and pays them back to the Met Council. In order to promote small, in order to promote business development, the Met Council does provide communities the option to participate in their SAC deferral program to defer some of the SAC payment obligations. So staff would like to participate in the Met Council's program in order to minimize the startup costs by allowing businesses to make payments over a five-year term versus that full payment at the issuance of the building permit. So this is a list of the metro cities that have already adopted the Met Council's program for their communities, and each one of these has their own policy within the guidelines of the Met Council's program. There was research provided in the Council's packet. It shows for these communities, with the exception of the city of Minneapolis, that very few businesses do participate in the program within those communities. Looking at this data, we're not really sure if that's due to lack of awareness and promotion of the program or just not enough SAC unit determination to make the deferment worth it to the business or, or for some other reason completely. We did pull the data for the last five years of businesses here in the city of Bloomington with a SAC determination of 10 units or less over the last five years. And nearly 48% of those businesses only had one SAC determination. So that may or may not be worthwhile to a business owner. But we do want to promote this program as helping small businesses and we'd like to educate our own staff and the awareness of this so that we can introduce it to businesses as they make first contact with the city. So as part of the Met Council's program, they do allow communities to have a SAC determination of 25 or fewer SAC units and a deferment up to 10 years. But as part of our proposal this evening, we're proposing a SAC determination of 10 units or less and a deferment of five years. So if this program would be successful and we found more need of it, where businesses had more than SAC 10 unit, or more than the 10 units, we could relook at changing those requirements on the program. We would follow a fixed interest rate, which is determined by the Met Council on an annual basis, based off of their cost of debt. And so the rate for 2022 is 1.98%. And for comparison for last year, for 2021, that rate was 2.14%. So there's not a, a lot of change on that. We looked back on the data with the Met Council for the past 15 years and it stays relatively small. We would require down payment equal to 20% of the total fee plus the first monthly payment. And finance would bill and collect the fees from the business owner on a monthly basis. And we would also require a signed deferred payment agreement from the applicant. And in order to do this program, we, the city must sign a master SAC deferral agreement just to participate in the program. Here's an example of a small business owner with a SAC determination of four credits. In this example, this is with a fixed interest rate of 2.14%, which was the, the rate in 2021. The SAC unit fee itself can also change on an annual basis, although it does not change every year. So the $2,485 is still the same as it was in 2021. It's the same for 2022. So in this example, you can see a business owner with four SAC units would have a cost of $9,940 that they would have to pay at the time that they pick up their building permit, which they had to pay for their building permit and they would also have to pay for this fee. So in our proposal, 20% of the total SAC fees plus the first monthly payment, they would only need to pay $2,127 and some change at that time of pickup, leaving their remaining balance of a little over $8,000. And so their monthly payment over the next five years would be $139.87. So you can see in, in this case, a new business that's starting a business and they have a lot of costs that they have to outline in the beginning, this would be a benefit to them so that they don't have to have so much cost outlined. To provide for this program for our small businesses, it does result in a slight amendment. As you can see here, underlined is the changes in Chapter 11, Section 11.65 for wastewater service, allowing for deferred payments for SAC units. And again, when we're referring to this, we're only referring to commercial businesses. It would not be for residential. And as part of the pilot group here in Community Development, staff did conduct a racial equity impact assessment for this policy. And through this process, staff do not foresee any adverse impacts to racial or ethnic groups. And this would be a positive impact for our community. So the program would benefit small business owners and it's, it would be available to businesses citywide who are eligible based on the criteria. But staff would be able to target small business owners and entrepreneurs as they come into the city to discuss the process and how they would start their business. And so as part of that, we really want to market internally to our own staff who encounter business owners on a daily basis through their work, such as the city clerk's office or the planning department, so that we can promote and market the program through the city, through the city that way, and then also through the city's website. And we do believe the program can contribute to eliminating disparities in employment and attract future workforce for Bloomington employees by helping them to remain economically competitive by bringing these businesses into our community. The application will be fully accessible via online form and will have it in multiple languages. And then also, as part of our proposed Business Resource Center at the former Fire Station 3, we would promote and guide businesses through this process as well. So this is a public hearing tonight for the ordinance amendment and staff is also requesting action this evening. And with that, I do have Bernadette on the line and we will stand for questions or comments.
Thank you, Ms. Wolf. Appreciate it. Thanks for the presentation. Council, any questions of Ms. Wolf? Councilmember Nelson?
Yeah, thanks, Mayor. I just got three hopefully quick questions here. I saw that some communities extended the financing for 10 years. I saw some communities included WAC charges. WAC charges. And just wondering, out of curiosity, why we didn't have those options in here, with the pros and cons of that?
Thank you, Mayor and Councilmember Nelson and council members. We do know that the program from the Met Council does allow for the deferment up to 10 years. Looking at the risk of it, there's really not much risk, because we would be paying this back to the Met Council, collecting the fees, have the business owners sign a deferred payment agreement. But we're, wanted to start out sort of as a pilot on this for a year, and, and then reassess it at that time to see what types of businesses would want to apply for that. Because again, we could raise it beyond the 10 SAC units, up to 25 SAC units as well. So, just looking at the appetite of what we would take on it. And I don't recall your second question.
The, the WAC part of it.
Yeah. Thank you for that. The Public Works is looking at the WAC fees. We thought that maybe we would be able to combine this at the same time, but they won't be prepared with that till at least 2023. So, we did not want to include that at this time.
Right. That makes sense. And then, my last question was, I looked at the chart that showed the different cities, and like, some cities have had this since 2017, and like, one company has used it. Other cities have been more successful. Any lessons learned there from looking through that, and how to make this actually, you know, something that people will use?
Thank you, Councilmember Nelson, Mayor and council members. That's where we believe that we really need to market and promote this program ourselves. And so, bringing the awareness to our own internal staff that this is something that does exist, and to make sure that our businesses do know that. When we're looking at that as well, in the high percentage that have one or two SAC units, that might not be worth a business owner to actually go through the process of deferring it for five years. So, we didn't pick out any particular reason why, but we do want to make a larger effort to promote and market it our own selves.
Good. Thank you.
Councilmember DeLisandro?
Thank you, Mayor. Two quick questions, hopefully. I was focused on the Bloomington cities, or the Bloomington businesses that you've got on your table. The first question I had was, what generally determines the number of SAC units that you need? Because I, I find that, for example, that North Star Tavern only has one, and others have, like, eight, and I would have thought that would be the opposite. And so, obviously, I don't know what I'm talking about as it relates to SAC units. So, I would love to just understand the table a little bit more, and how, how that's determined.
Thank you, Councilmember DeLisandro. I'll turn that over to Bernadette.
Thank you, Mayor and council members. So, like Barb had said, the Met Council makes the SAC determination. So, for North Star Tavern, for example, there was a previous restaurant there, or a previous business there. So, they might have had credit there. So, really, they might have 10 SAC charges, but the previous owner had paid nine of those. And so, they only owed one, based off of their usage with their new plan. They extended their patio. So, with their patio being extended, they had to pay one additional SAC charge, because they had additional people, and so, they had additional usage at that site.
Okay, totally helpful. Thank you, Mayor. Really quickly, that, so what I'm looking at then, in this table, is the new SAC units, not necessarily the sum total of the units that that entity has. Okay, right. So, then, the, the second question that I had was just about the program. Is there an opportunity for retroactive support here? So, are any of these folks, for example, able to go back? Because we didn't have the program, would they be eligible to go back and, and retroactively be part of the program if, if they found like, they needed to? Or, I guess, because they would have probably already had to pay, or anything upfront, they probably, it doesn't make any difference, right? Am I reading that correctly?
Thank you, Councilmember DeLisandro. That would be correct. We would not be able to retroactive it. And at the time, they've already paid for their SAC units.
None of these folks are ineligible for any additional units at, in the future, and participating in the program, though, right? It's not just for brand-new businesses?
Correct. Councilmember DeLisandro, council members. It would be available for, so, maybe I should have Bernadette explain this. As businesses come in, and they would alter their existing site, it may require additional SAC units. And so, at that time, yes, they could participate in the deferral program.
Very good. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Counsel, additional questions? Seeing no hands going up. This is a public hearing, and I will open the public hearing right now, on item 7.4, a public hearing on the SAC deferral program ordinance and policy. Anyone in the council chambers wishing to speak on this?
Brian Savig again. Just my two cents worth on the agreements. As I understand it, this SAC, does it follow the business, or does it follow the building owner?
Ms. Wolf?
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. It, it would follow the building, the site.
Okay. And is there any exposure of the city to bad debt? In other words, the building goes under, and they walk away from it? Do we owe the Met Council for uncollected fees?
Thank you for that, Bernadette.
So, as soon as the use is no longer at that site, the Met Council has a policy that they would, at that point, wipe away any future fees that the city would owe to them.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Anyone else? No one else in the chambers. Nora, do we have anyone on the line who wishes to speak to item 7.4 tonight? Public hearing for item 7.4.
Last of the moment, there are no participants via phone line. You may continue.
Thank you. Counsel, nobody coming forward, nobody on the line? I'll look for a motion to close the public hearing on item 7.4.
So moved. Councilmember Lohman.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Lohman, second by Councilmember DeLisandro, to close the public hearing on item 7.4. No further counsel discussion on this. Mr. Brillard. Carter.
Aye.
Coulter.
Aye.
DeLisandro.
Aye.
Lohman.
Aye.
Martin.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Mayor Bussie.
Aye. Motion carries 7-0 to close the public hearing on item 7.4. Counsel, additional questions or comments on this? I mean, from my perspective, pretty straightforward, and I think, actually, Bloomington's a little late to the game on this, and I'm glad we're catching up on this a little bit, to help our small businesses and give them a little more opportunity to succeed. Anything to add here?
Mayor, if you would, please. I'm just excited about this, in the sense that, with all the economic development we may have coming up here, we'll have something to offer in this regard. And, and also, it's encouraging to see how many, you know, compared to some of the other cities, how many businesses have applied even for additional credit, uh, units in the past, uh, five years or so. So, I'm, I'm thinking we might set the bar for participation in this program.
Yes.
Which would be pretty good.
I would think so. Counsel, anything else? If not, counsel, I would look for action on this.
Well, Mayor, I'd be happy to put a motion forward, unless somebody else wants to do it.
Councilmember Lohman.
I'll move to adopt, uh, this, adopt the city of Bloomington sewer availability charges, small business deferral program policy.
Second, Martin.
We have a motion by Councilmember Lohman, a second by Councilmember Martin, to, to where are we here? To adopt the city of Bloomington sewer availability charge, small business deferral program policy. There are no further counsel discussion on this. Mr. Brillard. Carter.
Aye.
Coulter.
Aye.
DeLisandro.
Aye.
Lohman.
Aye.
Martin.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Mayor Bussie.
Aye. Motion carries 7-0. Councilmember Lohman.
Mayor, I'll move, a motion to adopt an ordinance amending Chapter 11 of the city code related to sewer availability charges and water access charges payment deferral program.
Second, Martin.
Motion by Councilmember Lohman, second by Councilmember Martin, to adopt the ordinance amending Chapter 11 of the city code related to the sewer availability charge and water access charge payment deferral program. No further counsel discussion on this. Mr. Brillard. Carter.
Aye.
Coulter.
Aye.
DeLisandro.
Aye.
Lohman.
Aye.
Martin.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Mayor Bussie.
Aye. Motion carries 7-0. Moving on to item 7.5. As I said, a public hearing for our targeted residential picketing ordinance. What I would like to do is open the public hearing on this, and then continue this until our February 7th meeting. So, I will officially open the public hearing on item 7.5. And I will make a motion to continue item 7.5 to February 7th.
Second.
Motion, and a second by Councilmember Lohman, to continue item 7.5 to our February 7th meeting. There are no further counsel discussion on this. Mr. Brillard. Carter.
Aye.
Coulter.
Aye.
DeLisandro.
Aye.
Lohman.
Aye.
Martin.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Mayor Bussie.
Aye. Motion carries 7-0. And with that, our last of our public hearings. Nora, we can thank you, and let you get down with the rest of your evening. So, thank you very much for your help this evening, but you can go now. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor, and have a good evening.
Thank you.
Bye-bye.
Item 8 on our agenda is our organizational business, and item 8.1 is a public safety update. We had asked Chief Hartley to come and talk to us on a couple of occasions, and he was willing to come this evening to kind of review 2021, I think, and to look forward to 2022, as for the Bloomington police plans for the upcoming years. So, Chief Hartley, thanks for sticking it out with us. Welcome. Thanks for being here.
No problem. Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. I'm glad to be here. It's a little late, but obviously, a topic that we have responded to over the past several months. I know many of you have gotten inquiries as well, from your constituents, on what does crime look like in the city of Bloomington. So, we're going to try to take a look at some of the numbers, and then, I also think it's just as important to talk about what we're doing, to help combat and decrease some of those crime numbers. And, and then some of the, some of the goals for the police department, not all of them, but some that I think are pertinent to our abilities to go out and, again, try to prevent crime in the city. So, with that, I will just let you know, you can go on to the first slide, and we will get at it. I know it's late, but we will, we'll get through these and touch on some of the highlights. So, obviously, violent crime has been a topic throughout Hennepin County, throughout the state, throughout the country. And unfortunately, Bloomington is not exempt from that. And as we look at some of the numbers, comparing 2021, what we'll look at is numbers based on a three-year average. And, you know, I hate to say it, the good thing is, we didn't have a year like last year, where we had record numbers of homicides in the city. Those numbers fell back down to where they usually are. But overall, we did see about a 12% increase on a three-year average in violent crime. Some of the ones that I think, and I've kind of identified them later in here, are what we call priority crimes, and I think ones that cause residents some concern, that would be some of your aggravated assaults, your burglaries, your robberies, and obviously, you know, a higher number of auto theft. So, instead of kind of going into, you know, as we go through here, what we're doing to help kind of prevent some of those, we'll save that for a little bit later on. As you know, a year ago, we converted from a UCR method of reporting crimes, it was October of last year, to what's called the NIBR, is the National Incident-Based Reporting. That has a little bit, we're, we're reporting more crimes. And so, when you see that 12% increase in Group A, more of your violent crimes, that does about 2% to 3%, we're just reporting more of what it used to be. We would just report the highest level of crime, but now we're reporting all of them. So, that does play a part of that. The Group A, which is more of your lower-level crimes, some of your property crimes, we are seeing a 9% increase over a three-year average on those. I can tell you, we, you know, it's hard to, to compare our numbers to other cities at this point, just because we, I know the, the public and you all were expecting this. And so, we weren't going to wait for other cities to get their crime data, but we'll certainly put that out to give you an idea how we compare with other cities. But again, as many of you know, we are looking at increase in violent crime throughout the Hennepin, and especially the metro area. So, second slide, we look at just what we've reported over the last five years, and you can see we are up in 2021. We didn't take the time to put percentages in there, but, you know, looking from 2017, we stayed somewhat consistent, but then jumped up in 2021. And again, these are just the crimes that we're reporting, not, not every incident, if you will. Next slide, please. This just gives you, what I talked about was the priority crimes. These are the ones that, as, as a Bloomington resident, I'm most concerned with. Obviously, the homicide are very manageable, which is great. But you can do, you do see a trend, as we go into 2021, of, you know, robberies staying somewhat consistent, but the aggravated assaults. Keep in mind, I sent data out to you all about a month and a half ago, and I think it's important for the community to know that aggravated assaults are those assaults that occur with, with great bodily harm, or with bodily harm, and also with a weapon. And about a third of those are drug-related, about a third of those are domestics, and a third of those are just others. So, that does account for what those are. And then, the last one I just want to hit on is motor vehicle theft. Obviously, not a violent crime, but one that affects a lot of people. And you can see from the numbers, we had a pretty significant increase in 2021. Next slide, please. And so, what I did is, I just want to hit on, we, I get asked a lot about the violent crime in Bloomington, and so, we're going to add a section to our data dashboard, so that the community can track, month to month, how some of these priority crimes are trending in our city. And as you can see, as I've already alluded to, homicide is, is back down to where we usually average, around one. Sexual assault, or rapes, they seem to be somewhat consistent. Next slide, please. Robberies are trending upwards. Again, a lot of those, not, you know, there's considerable number that happen in our commercial districts, but a lot of those are drug-related as well. And then, as I've hit on, the aggravated assaults are also trending up, and that seems to be consistent throughout Hennepin County. Next slide, please. And then, we had the burglaries, which also affect our residents, and, and those are up higher. Keep in mind, if you break into an underground parking garage, an apartment complex, and you break into a car, that is not just a theft from motor vehicle, but that's actually a burglary. So, that does account for some of those. But again, that is a trend that I'm concerned with, and one that we will be addressing with, with some different techniques and strategies that I'll, I'll cover here in a little bit. And then, motor vehicle theft, this too, is a trend throughout Hennepin County, and we are not exempt. And we do partner with our neighboring agencies, and we've got a grant program that puts a little bit of proactive police, policing into trying to prevent motor vehicle thefts. But I do want to just hit on that, and we've gotten a lot of, you know, public, you know, public service announcements. But a lot of the cars that are stolen are done so with keys in the ignition, and they're running, or they've left the fob inside. And so, we really got to really educate the public on, if we want to see that number start to come down, it's all about prevention, locking your car, and making sure the keys are not in it. Next slide, please. This just gives you an idea of the adult bookings, and how we've trended. We are down, obviously, from 2019, and this is actual hard, you brought into the Bloomington Police Department, ordered straight to Hennepin County, and you are booked. So, again, those numbers are down over the last three years. Next slide. And then, this just shows that, it's kind of confusing, but this is arrest, but also, if, if I'm at a store, and I'm detained for shoplifting, and the police arrive and issue me a citation, and I'm not actually booked, that still counts as an arrest for data purposes. So, that just includes the citations, along with the hard arrest numbers. And again, And again, I don't have an explanation. I think the only thing for 2020 to explain why that's higher is that Hennepin County Jail probably was not recommending bringing people down during the, you know, the kind of the COVID year. And so I think that's what explains why we see a decrease in the previous slide, but yet this one, when we include all citations, it just, they were recommending a, a simple citation in lieu of a booking. Next slide, please. This here just shows, obviously, traffic stops. We have been collecting traffic stop data since April of 2021, and so there's a lot of things, you know, demographic data, but I did include, just so that you would kind of get an idea, just in traffic stops, and how we can separate that between Bloomington residents and non-residents, and the numbers there. Again, that's just May through December of each year, so we have an equal comparison of how many months, and it shows you also a, a number of cited. And, and then the, just the last, from 2017 to 2021, you do see, again, I'm not proud of a 48% decrease in traffic stops, but there's, I think, a lot that goes into that with the unrest that we've seen throughout the Twin Cities. We've seen, obviously, the pandemic, and I guess maybe a little bit of unwillingness of the officers to go out and be as proactive in these times as they were. Not to say that we're not, you know, out addressing traffic concerns from the constituents, but you know, again, Bloomington is not unique in that, that a lot of police departments throughout the country are trying to find a way to kind of reinvigorate their officers and get back to that proactive model. But again, it's, it's understandable in our current times why we would see maybe a little bit of a pause there. Next slide, please. This here is just to kind of show you the number of pursuits. We have been, for the last seven years, aggressively reining in our pursuit policy. We still leave a lot of the decision-making on the officers. I trust in their training, I trust in their judgment, and, and I think what you're seeing is a higher number of people that are fleeing police. It's not contributed to a higher number of crimes being committed, but it's an emboldened, I think, criminal class that are just deciding, you know what, I'm going to run. So as you see a higher number of pursuits, you also see a higher number of terminations, which I think is, is a number that pay attention to. It's one that, again, we've, we've worked extremely hard in, in kind of just re-ingraining in our Police Department, this, this risk versus reward of pursuing a vehicle and understanding that, you know, if the, if the reward isn't worth the risk to our, you know, our, the people that are traveling on our roadways, we terminate. And I'm proud to see that number of 67% terminations. And we keep, we send the message that we're not going to tolerate crime in Bloomington. We are going to pursue you, but we're going to do so safely and with as much minimal risk, as with minimal risk as we can to the, to the, the public. Next slide, please. So as, as you see a little bit of, you know, traffic enforcement proactivity decrease, I will tell you that we put a high emphasis on visibility, getting out, and interacting with, especially with those that are reporting higher incidence of crime in their neighborhood. That's what these numbers are related to as far as directed patrols, a significant increase. And again, that is, that is just a Police Department that's responsive to what we're being asked to do and not just simply driving around and looking out the front windshield with squad car, but actually concentrating your efforts and in those directed patrol areas. Next call, or next slide, please. This just gives you an idea of where our numbers, this is for calls for service, but what is not in here is the administrative. If I make a, an internal phone call to dispatch, or if I'm out and I call in and ask for something, those aren't reported here. And then the purple is indicative of what percentage of those calls for service occur at the Mall of America. So we're down a little bit in 2021, nothing significant. And then next slide. And then they add back in, this is, this is all calls, this is everything that gets put into a CAD. So if, you know, someone calls in and says, you know, that, whether it's a crime or not. And so again, this just shows we've stayed fairly steady through the last four years. And then I just added, so that you could see at that table at the bottom, what, you know, as far as Mall of America, what are the top four incidents that make up our call load there? And then over to the far right, the 12, 13, 8, and 10%. So staying somewhat consistent with where incidents at the Mall of America compare to the rest of the, the city. Next slide, please. This is a significant issue throughout the metro area, really throughout the country. But you see the jump, 355, I would have never thought that until staff put together this. But the impact that this has on somebody, a victim, is significant. And so we put out a really good, by Katie Zeroll, our crime, our crime prevention coordinator, and then investigator Bill King, put out a webinar, which has got a lot of really good information in it. Been in contact with the City Attorney's Office on looking at some, some ordinance that we could potentially consider, which I would back 100% to try to make it as difficult as possible for people to drive in to our community and steal catalytic converters, and then go and, and then actually, you know, sell them and, and, and keep that trade going. So again, I'm just going to hit, whether it's, you're fine to stay there, but whether it's catalytic converter thefts, we've got a really good crime prevention and safety tip tab. I would recommend any one of the council, and also those that are listening to check that out. And more to come on how we're going to combat people stealing those. Next slide. I get asked a lot about the amount of personnel we had to dedicate to the, some of the hotel shelters. Comfort Inn, Holiday Inn Airport were two of the more longstanding. They housed folks there longer than any of the others in Bloomington. And as you can see, we have just about eliminated, you know, from a high of August of 20, down, especially Comfort Inn, to where we're now back down to where we were averaging before. And, and again, same thing for Holiday Inn Airport, a little spike there, but keep in mind, that's a four and not a 45. My eyesight's getting bad, but extremely manageable. And I just want to, I just want to, you know, kind of call into, I know it's late, but the numbers that you see dropping like that, that was a collaborative effort. I couldn't thank the, the other city departments that assisted us in, in, in coming up with a plan that held the, you know, those businesses a little bit more accountable so that we weren't, you know, utilizing all of our police resources up there, community development, you know, inspections. And it was, it was by, you know, everybody getting together and coming up with the best case for, for, you know, not only providing a safe environment for those that had to temporarily stay there, but also keeping some of the, the folks that were coming into prey on those individuals out as well. So I think that's a, a win there. Next slide, please. So we've talked about a lot of increases here, and again, I think some areas are concerning. As I've said, to me, I want to just touch on some of the things that we're doing to help, you know, bring those crime numbers down and, you know, make Bloomington as safe as possible. We continue to partner with our federal law enforcement agencies. We do have a Haida Task Force. You will see in a slide here later on that we do have an increase, a significant increase in the fentanyl that we have, that we have seized in 2021 compared to the last three years. And so by just having not only an investigator embedded on the DEA Task Force and the assets that that can help us out with, but the financial support that we get from a Haida grant. We are, there's a couple of programs here that I just want to touch on because I think they're worthy. But the overdose fatality review, this is a partnership with Public Health that would do more than just, you know, we can respond to an overdose, and it's, it's the, it's the legwork after to make sure that maybe that person gets the resources that they need. And, and again, just a little bit more of a deeper dive into those that are suffering from addiction and how we can get in there and effectively intervene. Hennepin County Embedded Joint Community Police Partnership, that has been a long, I believe, we're going on about eight years with that, where, you know, again, that person comes in from Hennepin County and goes out and forges those relationships in the county, builds those, those partnerships. And so therefore, when we do have crime that's being committed in the community, I think we're better purpose to get people to call in and actually report those, especially folks that come from, you know, maybe new Americans who don't necessarily trust law enforcement. That's where those, those relationships pay off. I'll touch on it a little bit, so I'm not going to spend a lot of time, but the Embedded Social Worker Program, I've got some numbers further down, and I'll touch a little further on that. Next slide. The Electronic Forensics Lab, it's a very costly program. Just about every crime, major crime that's committed these days, there is some digital forensic that's going to need to be processed. And we, Commander Damon Bitney spearheaded this program, I believe, a couple, two years ago. But we looked at the cost and thought, you know what, we do have a lot of work in this area, but so does some of our partnering, our neighboring agencies, and so therefore we partner with Eden Prairie and Scott County. And, and it has been a great program and one that I would recommend considering to help defray some of the costs involved with that equipment. We do meet with, speaking of our neighbors, you know, we, we did have a couple of higher-profile carjackings. I believe in Bloomington, we had three last year. But again, three too many, and anything we can do in, in hooking up with our neighboring communities. Again, we find that crime is transient. If it's happening in Edina, it's coming into Bloomington. If it's happening in Bloomington, it's going into Richfield. So the more communications we have with those police departments, the better and more effective our enforcement actions will be. Just a few more on there that, I'm not going to go into all of them, but understand that we utilize a lot of data sharing, a lot of intelligence, and, and again, all, all kind of focused on the prevention side of it. Next slide. Again, not all of this is always just kind of the proactive with the equipment and gear. We are looking at a, a participation with a Metro Youth Diversion Center. Again, anything we can do in a well-rounded approach to help prevent people from committing crime in the first place, we're all for. And, and that was, would be something that, this is a, a new program that has established itself in Minneapolis. They've had some success, and we are hoping that they can come into Bloomington and, and expand on that. And, and again, provide a, a different diversion for those, especially the youth that are committing crimes. And we continue to have a very strong relationship with the Minnesota Internet Crimes Against Children Task Force. Next slide. And then I'm just going to hit on a couple of our internal programs that our Crime Prevention Unit takes up. Again, Katie Zeroll does an excellent, excellent job with not only just her community contacts, but a, 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 a very vigorous, you know, community input in the form of block captains that pays dividends every year. We put out webinars that I, I touched on, you know, the Neighborhood Watch Program. And then one of the things that we've partnered with Communications in the last several years is a Q and A. I'll just give you a quick, quick, quick example. We don't have it happen often, but swatting in Bloomington does occur. And we recently, Deputy Chief Jeff Giles, put out a, a, a Q and A that just kind of went into the details. A citizen who called in, was concerned about their own teenage children, having problems with those who are calling in from all over different parts of the, the country that were, you know, having us respond two different times to their house on what we thought was a SWAT call. But now we have a program where you can actually register if you think you've got potential, not only just a swatting possibility, but also medical issues that you can register with dispatch so that we know beforehand, as we're on our way to the call, what to expect in any past contact we've had. So, and then again, just the last thing, Twitter notifications. We, we just, you know, kind of aggressively try to use Twitter to inform the community. Next slide. Talk about the Embedded Social Worker Program. This is obviously the, all the rage, and it very well should be in any police department throughout the country. We saw our number of crisis calls increase over the last eight, you know, or, or 10 years to a point where we're extremely fortunate to have two, two social workers from Hennepin County. One is on a grant that expires later this year. But as you can see, the number of referrals since we've started the program has went up. And next slide, please. Maybe a little out of, but anyway, I'll hit on this. I, I think it's just a little out of order. But just to show you the overdose calls, that stays somewhat consistent as we're, we're trending a little upwards. But thank goodness with the implementation of Narcan that we use daily between ourselves and the fire department, you can see those fatal overdoses stay somewhat consistent. Next slide. This is the narcotics that we've recovered. I just put this on in here to kind of give you a sense of, the fentanyl is kind of the latest thing that seems to be, you know, generating a lot of, whether it's, you know, some of the violence that you see that probably can account for some of that uptick. The drug trade has always been behind a, a lot of the crimes that we see in the community, and I don't think 2021 was any different. You know, some fall off in some areas, doesn't necessarily mean that it's, it's trending downward. Could be just that, you know, as we challenge with staffing, we have had to pull some people from our investigative unit, especially our, our special investigations unit, and they're just not able to work the same volume of cases that they once did. We'll get them back up to full speed, but that could account for some of those numbers. Next slide. This is, just gives you an idea of the number of calls that we get each year that deal with crisis, mental health, suicide, and then, you know, the suicide threats and attempts. Again, I'd like to think, and I'm, I'm, I'm confident that, that our Embedded Social Worker Program is starting to have some impact on this. The reason why we do this is because we're trying to limit the number of times that we have to go out from a police approach and, and have one more of which is a social, you know, social worker, counselor, somebody who's got the, you know, a better approach to that. And so anyway, we do see a, a small drop down to where it was in 2019, and my hope is that we'll see those continue to go down, hopefully. Next slide. Real quick, the only, we're still inventorying a lot of property and evidence, but we do have gun firearm seizures that are up. 227 in 2021, which, again, as we try to combat, you know, violence on, on the street, whether it's here or another city, it's important to get illegal firearms off of the street. Next slide. Just going to hit on just a couple of these things. These are BPD projects and that, that really, I think, have a direct effect. We're constantly looking at how to improve, but number three there, patrol staffing, making sure that we've got the right number. If you would have asked me, you know, 10 years ago, that, you know, when are the busiest in, in Bloomington, I would have told you probably on a Friday or Saturday night. That's not true. It's about one o'clock in the afternoon on a weekday. And so putting the resources where they need to be to effectively respond and, and quickly, you know, serve the public is one of the, the, one of the BPD projects. Is uh, one of the, the um, one of the BPD projects. We continue to look at how, how to best utilize our mental health and crisis intervention response. Uh, that's a, you know, that's an ongoing project every year. Um, next slide. And then um, one that I think is, is really important, not only for our apartment, but others is the recruiting, hiring and retention of police officers. Uh, when we look at what's going on throughout um, whether it's Bloomington or, or elsewhere. Um, I can tell you, we are, are battling uh, challenges in our hiring, uh, retention, uh, even the recruiting. There's just not a lot of candidates that are in the pipeline looking to be police officers. So this is where I'm going to give my plug. Um, our officers are doing, I think, excellent police work. Um, they're not perfect, as I'm not either, but um, anytime, you know, I just hats off to uh, Councilmember DeLisandro, Carter. Um, and, and the others, um, um, Nathan or Councilmember Coulter. Are coming in and riding along and getting to know what uh, what that job is entailing. And uh, I would put the open invite out to any other council member that wants to come in. Um, I think uh, again, you'll, you'll have a, a, a good conversation with a police officer, he's going to kind of let you know what that job entails. And um, and, and really kind of, you can ask the questions that uh, I think will help you down the road. Um, you know, support this police department. So um, next slide. Very quickly for the public, um, there's a lot of information on our website, I would encourage you all to go there. And um, you can look at the tabs and, and get most of your questions answered. Next tab or next slide. Um, and also this is something that uh, I'm proud of because um, you know, early last year, we made it a priority. To become one of the most transparent police departments in the state. And uh, I would put our, what we put up there for the public to view uh, every month against anyone else. And uh, what we're going to do is, is actually add where we're going to track those priority crimes. And so that you can look month to month and see which way they're trending. And again, uh, crime statistics uh, for the, for the public to um, you know, I know they some, you know, we'll get emails and they're concerned and rightfully so. I would encourage anybody to call, they can talk directly to me and I'll answer their, their questions and um, but you know. Familiar, familiarize yourself with this data dashboard, because I think a lot of the questions that you may have, um, uh, you could probably get answered right there. And then next slide. And then also with what's happening in your neighborhood, uh, this crime map is a great one, but I will remind people. To put in the dates that you're looking for, because if you don't, it's, it's messy and it's hard to kind of decipher. Especially if you're looking to kind of hone in on just your neighborhood, so um, take advantage of that. And I believe that's the last slide, next slide. Um, I'm not going to hit on uh, these talking points because I know it's late. And I want to make sure that uh, I've got plenty of time for questions. Next slide. And final, next slide, and that is it. Questions?
Thank you, Chief.
You are welcome.
Thanks for getting through that, I appreciate it. Uh, a lot of information there, a lot of, a lot of details, a lot of statistics and uh, an interesting look. Uh, an interesting way to look at the last couple of years, because it has been an interesting couple of years. It's um, telling to see the numbers that have gone up and it's telling to see the numbers that have gone down. Um, so uh, th- this has been useful, it's been, it's helpful to, to see that information and get that perspective. Council questions? Councilmember Carter.
Thank you, Mayor. I had a quick question, um, I think it was on one of the first slides, it, you had shown us that um. And the, it was in that first table, weapons had gone up significantly. Uh, and I'm just curious, really, what, what does that mean? Is that confiscating illegal firearms or is, and that's pretty much, is that what it entails?
Yep. If it was a weapon that was involved in a crime, it would be reflected in aggravated assault. Um, or a homicide, um, that's just simply a, a weapon that was, that was, you know, confiscated and um, or a, an illegal firearm, if, if you will.
Okay. Um, and I'm just curious, is there anything that we can be doing as a city to help with? The issue of these guns, the illegal or illegally. Held guns on the streets, or is it kind of a broader issue?
You know, I, I, I think it is broader, um, you know, we, we stay, you know, obviously still aggressive. And if someone's got an illegal firearm, we're going to take it from them and um, you know, even more so even just the, the safekeeping. And some, you know, some of the numbers in our, in our impounds are probably reflective of, of a safekeeping. Um, you know, it's, there, there's just, there's so many, there's so many firearms out there. And, and you know, those that do everything right with their firearms and they secure them, but they're the victim of a burglary. And somehow somebody gets their hands on them, you've got straw buyers, it's just, you know, there's so many different loose ends in, whether it's a federal. State crime, it's, it's got to be probably tightened up a little bit. Um, but you know, it's unfortunately, you know, there's crimes on the books, but it's people that are breaking the, the law. To obtain illegal firearms and then go out and commit crimes.
Okay, thank you.
Council, additional questions? Councilmember DeLisandro.
I had one question for you, Chief. Um, in my experience with some of the um, folks I've had the pleasure of riding along with, um, they've mentioned that. A lot of the, especially um, folks who have uh, mental health challenges, oftentimes they're recurring. And so I think you, you mentioned kind of in your ongoing projects area, uh, some of the uh, um, recurrence reduction strategies. I was wondering if you could talk a little bit more about that and if there was anything that, that we needed to do to help you um, in that area. Um, so that, you know, uh, if those Hennepin County folks need to be more responsive or, you know, uh, what, what, what are your thinking there? I'd, I'd love to know a little bit more about that.
Yeah, that, that's a good question, uh, Mr. Mayor, Councilmember DeLisandro. You know, it's, it's about the follow-up, it's about resources that are already there that a lot of people just don't know. Um, you know, you look at the caseload that our, that our social workers carry. Um, it's getting them involved early and it's being kind of that conduit to get services that they may not be aware of, the, 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 the person in need. Um, you know, there is a, unfortunately, there's not a, a one-size-fits-all prevention and, and, and where, you know, we come out. And the social worker gets involved and we never have to deal with that person again. Um, I wish that was the case, but even if we can get the resources to a smaller percentage of them. You know, that's what's frustrating with the officers is that they have to go out, especially when there's been a crime that's been committed by somebody who's in crisis. Now it's not as easy as, you know, I mean, nine times out of 10, they were going to go to the hospital, obviously, but if it's a significant crime. Um, you know, now they're in the system and they're going to bail out and they're going to go back out. And you know, that's where I think the frustration lies. Um, as far as what you can do, I'm just gonna, let me tell you, you know, obviously, social workers are expensive. Um, you know, we've got a very good thing going with Hennepin County right now. Uh, but I envision down the road as many other police departments that the city of Bloomington is going to have their own. Social worker that's going to be embedded with the police department. And you know, we still utilize, I don't want to, you know, I've, obviously, Hennepin County is a great partner. Um, but I do think the future is where we have our own embedded. And um, we just, you know, I, I, I think you'll see that, I really do.
Council, before we get to additional questions, we are bumping up against 11 o'clock here, which is our designated stop time. Uh, we do have a few more items to, that we can get through and I think we can get through them probably within a half hour. So uh, I would move that we extend our uh, our deadline, our council deadline to 11:30. And work to get through the rest of our agenda, I would make that a motion.
Second?
Got a motion in a second to extend our deadline until 11:30. No further council discussion on this, Mr. Billard.
Carter?
Aye.
Coulter?
Aye.
DeLisandro?
Aye.
Lohman?
Aye.
Martin?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Mayor Bussie?
Aye. Motion carries seven zero. Thank you all very much, I appreciate that. Try not to do this very often, but unfortunately, sometimes we just end up with uh, a lot of, a lot of items on the agenda and a lot of talkers, so I appreciate that. Councilmember Nelson, get to your question in just one second, a question for the, the chief, you mentioned that crime is transitory. It's um, the bad guys don't care what side of 494 they're on. It's, it, it makes its way back and forth. Could you explain a bit the work that I know you're doing with our partner agencies in, in Richfield, in Edina, in Eden Prairie, even south of the river? To combat some of these numbers that we're seeing?
Yeah, well, I think it starts with uh, you know, the sharing of intelligence. Um, again, if uh, we're looking for a, a prolific burglar in Bloomington, there's no doubt. Um, that they're driving into our residential areas, no different than they're driving into a Richfield residential areas. And so the communication, um, the information sharing of our detectives and um, and just working. I mean, it's, it's not uncommon, just last night where uh, Richfield and Bloomington worked together. Uh, to stop a car that was uh, had committed a crime in Richfield, came into Bloomington. And um, you know, a, a, an ongoing relationship building so that um, you know, we just, we make sure that. If there's evidence that could solve a crime in another city, those other cities are being made, made aware of that as quickly as possible.
Thank you, Chief, and, and thanks, thanks for your work along those lines, because you're absolutely right. I think it's the, that coordination and the communication between departments, between cities, between you chiefs and, and, and the officers working, I think is just vital. So thank you for doing that so far.
Thank you.
Councilmember Nelson?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Uh, just a couple of things quickly here. Um, you mentioned staffing has been a challenge and hiring people and the, the flow. And I think I recently saw that uh, maybe had four or five uh, individuals uh, joining, so that was, that was heartening to see. Um, and I think in your presentation tonight, you mentioned some special investigation. Um, detectives or officers are, are maybe doing patrols. Um, and then I also got an email earlier tonight that one of the dispatch individuals is going to go work in public works. So I guess my, my question is, how are we doing, how are you doing on staffing? And is there anything that the council should be looking at to support you in that?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Coul- or Nelson. Uh, we are no different than really any other police department when it comes to just the, the staffing challenges. You know, we, 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 our primary responsibility as a police department is to respond to emergencies within our city. And we will not go below our minimums on uh, on that staffing levels, uh, we can't, we won't. And so therefore, when I talked about having to remove uh, certain uh, you know, bodies from investigations. And put them back into patrol temporarily, uh, we do that just because of the core service that we've got to provide and that is responding to emergency calls. Uh, hopefully it's temporary, we do have uh, five people in our field training, you're right, we just hired five additional, so there is help on the way. Um, but um, it's just, like I said, it's, it's convincing um, a, a generation that this is a, a good noble profession to go into. Uh, it's convincing uh, people that are doing the job, that there's support there. And I would just say, what can you do? It's what you've done and it's to support the officers, it's support the men and women that are doing this job. Uh, not just those that are all wearing this uniform, there's other people that the un- unsung heroes of this police department. Uh, are the dispatchers, a, an incredibly difficult job, one that we see where, you're right, where. Uh, Public Works stolen of our employees from us, but uh, we're going to have to just live with that, but uh, that's a tough job. And so when we look to hire dispatchers, we've got to be upfront, transparent, that this is a multitasking and. Um, but I would just say that, you know, continue that support. Continue to um, you know, reach out and when the job's well done, let people know it's a job well done. And I know you've done that uh, several times, as you all have. Um, and really, uh, you know, you're gonna, as you have in the past, you're going to see some budget requests and. And you know, I think we've been, we've been extremely fortunate to have a, a council that supported us. Uh, through our, you know, we, we can't do a job without the proper equipment. And so therefore, continue to just do those things and we'll get there, we'll get, you know, we've got another hiring process uh, open right now. Uh, the days of getting 400 applicants are done. And uh, I think we're going to be lucky if we get 50 this go around, but this is still a great police department. And uh, as a shameless plug, if you're listening out there and you've got an interest in police work, you come talk to me and we'll get you in the door here.
Chief Hartley, uh, last time I checked, stealing is a crime, so maybe someone at Public Works need to have the police come talk to them about stealing employees. But um, I, I sympathize with that, that and like I said, I, I appreciate your comments and uh, all the work that you are doing, your leadership team is doing, our officers are doing. And um, dispatch, I, I appreciate you recognizing them, because I know it's something this council has talked about. And uh, wow, that, that is a tough job there and, and I just really appreciate the work they're doing. I know it's been difficult, I know we're really working hard to, to uh, fix that. Um, and I hope we can keep making progress on it, so um, thanks for the update, very much appreciate it and thanks for staying so late.
Councilmember Lohman?
Thank you, uh, Mayor and Chief Hartley. Um, how's morale?
Uh, Mr. Mayor and Councilmember Lohman, uh, morale could be better. Uh, I think it comes with being short-staffed. Um, you know, but I, it's, it's like anything else, I'm sure morale in other departments isn't always as, as good either, but uh, you know, we're working on it. We're trying to uh, remind those that have been around for a while that when we all walked in the door, a brand-new officer. Um, we didn't want to hear all the negatives and what, what, what isn't uh, good about the job. And so um, you know, that's, it's a challenge for, for those in leadership positions uh, throughout the city. But um, you know, I, I, I still think that when people come uh, in the door each day at that police department, they're coming in to. Uh, serve the public and do so in a noble and, uh, with, with integrity and um, you know, uh, to answer your question, it, it could be better. But uh, I'm, I'm certainly not going to give up on them and we'll, 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 we'll continue to go out and serve.
Well, anything we can do there to help, we, you know, certainly uh, will want to, want to do that, so just let us, let us know. Um, so just a couple of questions, uh, based on the data that we saw there. Uh, I noticed that there was a little bit of a difference in uh, um, uh, when we looked at drivers that were non-residents and Bloomington residents. Uh, is, is that common for the city of Bloomington, common for cities generally to have that kind of difference in terms of uh, folks being uh, being pulled over? Uh, with that slide, can you give me a little insight on that, how that, how that works?
Sure, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, Councilman Lohman. Um, you know, it's hard to answer that question because we never kept track of uh, of data like that before until April of uh, 2021. So um, you know, I think you'd have to look at the city, you've got uh, major freeways that are coming through, not that we do a lot of traffic enforcement, but they are. Uh, feeding this community, uh, the Mall of America, and so um. I, I, I don't know how it compares to other cities, we will be able to look into those numbers, as you know, we're doing a disparity study with. Uh, the uh, Center for Police Equity. And so we'll get a little bit more information on that here, I believe in the summer. Um, I, I hate to, usually I'm a guy that tries to answer every question, but hard to, hard to see how that compares. Um, you know, I'd like to be able to look at that and say that our Bloomington residents are just more law-abiding.
Well, that's what I assumed, that, that's what I always figured when I, when I saw that, so uh, you're just confirming for me uh, without, without saying that. So then, um, you know, I saw that we have robbery and aggravated assaults. And you know, this may be the impossible question, uh, just from a crime generally. Uh, I know there's a, you know, it can kind of be, there's a feeling that it's just, it's, it's, there's more of it going on and you've got some statistics that are showing that. Do we know what the drivers are uh, with this? I mean, you mentioned drugs, you know, i- is there something different nowadays uh, than, you know, 20 years ago? Is it the economy? Uh, what, what, what makes up all of that that makes it feel different today?
Uh, well, I think people are a little bit more connected than they were, um, you know, back, you know, years ago. I think, you know, you can log on to social media and you can see your neighbors talking about, you know, having their catalytic converters stolen. Um, to answer the question about some of the robberies and the aggravated assaults, they are, they are fueled by drugs and the drug trade. Um, and, and that's been a problem for, for decades and, and probably will continue to be. Um, but you know, I, I just, you know, I, I, I live in the community, I know the feel, I know, you know, those that uh, are friends of mine and family that live here. And uh, you know, they, 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 there just has this sense that it's uh, not as safe. And that's again, that's indicative on, on me to lead a police department to make sure that when people go out. And they're um, you know, frequenting our businesses or enjoying our parks, uh, that they can do so in a safe, a safe way. And so um, again. And so again, a lot of that, a lot of that robbery is, is, and aggravated assaults fueled by drugs. And, and again, if, if, if people have a quasi-relationship, it's hard to kind of prevent stuff like that. It's not as if they're just driving in, in, in most cases and just committing the, you know, the, 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 the concentrated crime. There's usually a relationship between a suspect and a victim, not always, but in, in a percentage of the cases.
Well, I just want to say thank you and just so you know, a little birdie should tell you that I did take a ride along with one of your officers. I'll let you try to figure out who it is.
Well, I appreciate that.
Councilmember Carter?
Thank you, Mayor. So I guess I just wanted to chime in. You had made a comment encouraging those of us on council to participate in those ride-alongs. And I know several of us had. And I, I was just reflecting on my first ride-along in 2020 to my last one just last week. And it was, it's been so valuable to have those experiences, especially to just see and learn about how things change, right? And they're dealing with different kinds of things depending on what's going on in the environment. So the, the challenges that they were having in 2020 are different challenges that they're facing right now. And so I just, I found it such a valuable experience and so wanted to chime in with that. And then I will also say, and I think every single conversation, especially during my last ride-along where I got to talk with quite a few officers, every single one of them was thanking me so much for being out there. And they were so grateful for all the council members who had been out and wanted me to also extend the invitation to others on council to go out and ride along with them. You know, just really the opportunity to see what their day-to-day is like, to get to them, get to know them as people, or as individuals. I think it meant a lot to me and it obviously meant a lot to them too. And so I would just echo you, Chief Hartley, and encourage everybody, if you haven't, to go out and do one of those ride-alongs. And I know, I know I'm gonna do this and I think others are too, but mine will be very regular. And so if we could all get a regular consistency going out with them and, and hearing about those specific needs and concerns and things that they love about their job too, I think would be really valuable for all of us.
Well, Mr. Mayor, councilmember Carter, I really, really appreciate that. Again, that's probably the best, you know, when you ask what you can do is, is just to show that level of support. And I think it'll go, you know, cops talk. And when, when you, when you go home at night, they're gonna talk about the council member that came in and, and gave the time. And, and again, I know, when I talk about here and the now, I know that many of the council members that, that are serving have, have, have done that. So, but I would just encourage if, if, if you can in the next, you know, month or so, I'd really appreciate it. Because again, I think it goes far for when, when, when people are talking to their friends at work here and they say, and again, this is asked, but do you have the support as a city council? Because we've seen cities where they'll put that in their job, have the complete support of the city council. Cities to the south of us are doing that because they're doing anything to try to attract people in. And again, you don't have, you don't have to agree with everything and, and I expect you're gonna hold the line. And when, when the tough questions are gonna be asked, are gonna be asked and we're gonna answer them for you. But I think before you ask that, it just helps to have a little bit more of that bearing and what it's like to go out there each day. And you're exactly right, the job has changed. It'll always change.
Counsel, unless there's anything further, I will say thank you, Chief. Thanks for being here tonight. Thanks for sticking with us this late. Thank you for the information. Thank you for your service and I assume you're counting down the days and happy for you there as well, so.
Yeah, well, we got a lot of work to do between now and then, so thank you so much.
Thank you, Chief. Counsel, next on our agenda is item 8.2. And if you recall, that is the 2022 legislative policies. It was actually item 6.9 on our, on our consent agenda. And we did manage, we got through item 7.1, the local sales tax resolution, which we had talked about needing really to come ahead of fully the 2022 legislative policies. So the fact that we did approve item 7.1, I would look for a motion to approve our 2022 legislative policies.
Thank you, Colter.
A motion by councilmember Colter, a second by councilmember Loman to approve our 2022 legislative policies. Hearing no further council discussion, Mr. Brillard. Carter?
Aye.
Colter?
Aye.
DeLisandro?
Aye.
Loman?
Aye.
Martin?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Mayor Bussie?
Aye. Motion carries seven zero.
Item 8.3, our appointments to our local Board of Review. Is Mr. Gerschmel here with us this evening?
He is, Mr. Mayor.
There he is, he's coming.
Good evening, Mayor, councilmembers. Yes, I am here.
Good evening, welcome. Thanks for staying with us this late.
You bet. Um, so this item is just an appointment for two members of the Local Board of Appeal and Equalization.
All right, and I think, trying to catch up here on my agenda. And there it is. So we, we've got, I, I think in the council packet, it said we have three openings and only two that we're able to fill this evening. Is that correct?
Yeah, that's correct. We actually had three openings. And, and if you can, if you recall, the way our Local Board of Appeal is structured, all five members have to be versed in, in real estate. And two of them have to have commercial real estate experience. So right now we are looking for one additional member that is versed in commercial real estate. That person can be a, a real estate broker. They could be an appraiser. They could be a property manager. They could be even, God forbid, a property tax attorney. But they certainly could be any of those folks. And if anybody knows of those folks, be certainly interested to talk about, talk to them about the, this volunteer opportunity for them. And it only meets a couple of times a year for two, or really once a year, it's two meetings. But so it's not a super lengthy amount of time. But we would look to, we were looking to add that fifth member as soon as we find that person before our April meeting. So that's what I have for you tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Gerschmel. I am looking frantically through past emails to find the list of, of applicants. And I believe we got it from Mr. Verbrugge a while back, or was it last week? I can't recall.
Yeah, so you have two applicants. You have Andrew Robinson, who has served on the board before. And I believe it's Brad Moore is our other applicant, who also has served on the board.
Thank you, that's, that's helpful. So counsel, we've got two previous members of the, of the board, of the Local Board of Review who are seeking appointment, Andrew Robinson and Brad Moore. I would look for action as to their appointment to the board.
Mayor, I'd move to, uh, uh, move to appoint Andrew Robinson and Brad Moore to the Local Board of Review with terms expiring 6/30, I think it's 2024 and not 3024. Well, that'd be a long term.
It'd be a long term and that, yeah, 6/30 2024, just to be clear, would be the appointment. We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
I have a motion by councilmember Loman, a second by councilmember Martin to appoint Andrew Robinson and Brad Moore to the Local Board of Review with terms expiring 6/30 2024. Hearing no further council discussion on this, Mr. Brillard. Carter?
Aye.
Colter?
Aye.
DeLisandro?
Aye.
Loman?
Aye.
Martin?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Mayor Bussie?
Aye. Motion carries seven zero.
Thank you, Mayor and councilmembers.
Uh, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Gerschmel. Thanks for, as I said, sticking with us this late. Item 8.3 is an appointment to the HRA. And as you saw in your packet, the, one of the appointments that we made back in December is not able to fill the vacancy that he was, he's, he was elected to. He notified the HR administrator that he's actually no longer a Bloomington resident. So we had an opening on the HRA board. In discussing it with Erica Coleman, our HRA director here in the city of Bloomington, the, the decision was made that perhaps this appointment should be filled by a council member for a variety of reasons. For the fact that we're, we're looking for somebody who can be up and running quickly, that we're looking for somebody who could continue to strengthen the board and continue to work, the council work in conjunction with the, the HRA board work. And ideally then in conjunction as we move forward with our, our strategic planning and so on. And so we already have a board member, councilmember Colter already serves on our HRA board. And well, to, to look, to point a second council member to the HRA board, it is a mayoral appointment and with the approval of the, the city council. And after discussion with, with each of you and trying to figure who would be the best and who would fit best, I would like to, I would like to make the recommendation that councilmember Patrick Martin be appointed to the HRA board to a term coinciding with his term in office. Variety of reasons, obviously Patrick is, is very well qualified and would be great on the board. Also the fact that a lot of the work that the HRA is doing is occurring over in District Four. And so he certainly would be well-versed in, in everything going on in that. So I would make the recommendation that we appoint councilmember Patrick Martin to the HRA board. And I would look for council comment and then ultimately council motion to approve the mayor's appointment. No comments?
Doesn't sound like it. I'd be happy to move, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember DeLisandro?
All right. I will move to approve the mayor's appointment of Patrick Martin to the Housing and Redevelopment Authority HRA board to a term coinciding with the term in office.
Second?
Motion by councilmember DeLisandro, second by councilmember Carter to appoint, to approve the mayor's appointment of Patrick Martin to the HRA board. Hearing no further council discussion on this, Mr. Brillard. Carter?
Aye.
Colter?
Aye.
DeLisandro?
Aye.
Loman?
Aye.
Martin?
Just to clarify, do I need to abstain on this? Is this a conflict?
You can vote for yourself. You can vote for yourself. And councilmember Nelson?
Yeah, I guess.
Mayor Bussie?
Aye. Motion carries seven zero.
Thank you, councilmember Martin, and, and thank you, councilmember Nelson. I know there was a discussion between the two of you as to who, who had the, the time and the capacity to, to serve on the, the board and how it would all work out. So I appreciate that you were able to work that out and we can get to a resolution on that. So thank you very much. It is appreciated. And our final item tonight is item 8.4, which is the City Council Policy and Issue Update. Mr. Verbrugge?
Mr. Mayor and councilmembers, I, I have no new topics of discussion for this evening.
Seems we've covered everything tonight. That's right. Counsel, anything to add in item 8.4, Policy and Issue Update?
Mr. Mayor, if I would please. Mr. Verbrugge, I think we talked back when we were first looking at the local option sales tax stuff. So just some potential for a way to support our seniors and those on fixed income with some relief. I, I have a lot of thoughts on that and I, none of them are probably viable, but that's, you know, not my job. But I would love to know, since we talked about it last, is there anything that you all can pull together that would help us understand, you know, get your most creative minds together and, and do something around that? Whether that's, you know, something on the utility bill or, you know, something within our control that helps offset a little bit or blunts a little bit of that. I think we've heard pretty consistently over the last couple of, of meetings that there is a real desire to provide some support to those of, of our, our seniors in, in the community. So I know I brought it up before. I just wanted to continue to encourage us to do some additional work on that if possible. So you don't have to give me any specifics, but I just would love to, to have you guys continue to think about that. Thank you.
Thank you, councilmember. Councilmember Colter and then councilmember Nelson. Councilmember Colter?
Thank you, Mayor. Just two very, very quick things. The first is that, as I'd mentioned a few weeks ago, I had a community conversation event this past Thursday. It was done via Zoom, via the, the city Zoom account. And I was very ably assisted by Tracy Smith with our Community Outreach Engagement Division. Just wanted to report that it was, as always, a fantastic discussion, a lot of great questions asked. And I'm, I'm grateful to everyone who showed up virtually to, to participate. So I just wanted to offer that. And then the second piece I, I just wanted to bring up very briefly is that, you know, as we know, of course, conversations are moving forward again in regards to the proposed water park development over in the South Loop area by the mall. And I, I do think, you know, those conversations are a good thing. Excuse me, and I don't want to, you know, put the cart before the horse here too much. But, you know, I, I think it's clear obviously that those conversations will involve the city. And, you know, whatever, you know, those requests may be, I think we have a responsibility to ourselves as, as the stewards of public dollars and, and frankly, a responsibility to the public to ensure that, that things proceed smoothly. And I, I believe that is in everyone's best interests. Ours, you know, as, as city government as well as Triple Fives, but for our residents and taxpayers and, and folks who work in that area as well. And I am just very concerned about the potential of operational hamstrings if there is not a significant discussion about labor neutrality with regards to the water park. And so I'm not, I'm not going to propose anything specific tonight. I'm not going to bring anything up tonight. But I do believe that staff should work with Triple Five and labor to encourage a conversation to address those issues on the front end. And I, I will just state that this is going to be a very critical piece for me as we get closer to some key decision points here in the next couple of months. And having seen what has happened in some, some other places where there have been issues related to, to labor disputes, I just really want to, want us to make sure that our, our ducks are in a row here to the greatest extent possible. And again, I, I really believe that it's in everyone's best interests that they are. So I just wanted to sort of mention that publicly. And I think I will follow up with the city manager perhaps tomorrow. And we can discuss what that looks like in a little more concrete of a fashion. But just wanted to bring that up publicly.
Thank you, councilmember Colter. Councilmember Nelson, you had your hand up and now I see your hand down. Did you have an item?
Oh, I think councilmember Carter was before me.
Oh, I'm sorry, councilmember Carter.
Thank you, Mayor. So I just wanted to bring up something that I had brought up in one of the first meetings of the year. And that was around charitable gambling and our policy in Bloomington. And I wanted to see if there were others on council who were also interested in this. Currently, the revenue generated, it, it's, the requirement is to go to a nonprofit or charity and currently can go to any nonprofit or charity. And I would like to propose that we, we require those revenues to be dedicated to Bloomington nonprofits. And so just wanted to put that out there again and see if there is interest from others on council.
Counsel, interest in that kind of thing, looking, looking into that? I think that's, it's worth looking into at least and having that discussion. And I saw, I see three shaking heads here and I saw a thumbs up from councilmember Martin. So yes, I think, yes, staff, if we could kind of get the ball rolling or at least kind of initiate that and figure out where we are and what the possibilities would be.
Mr. Mayor and councilmembers, just so, councilmember Carter, just so we're clear, what I'm understanding is you would like to review our requirement for the percentage of charitable gaming funds that have to be expended within the trade area. And the, the term trade area is very important because we're not, as I understand it, able to confine those dollars within Bloomington. There is a larger trade area that goes beyond the city border. So we just need to do a little research and identify what that is. But there certainly is, there certainly is room to do more than what we currently have in our policy. So we'll get to work on it. We'll bring it back to council.
Okay, that sounds great. I- Okay, that sounds great, I, the person who had originally reached out to me, and I think, I believe Councilmember Nelson or Councilmember Coulter about this, had indicated that she had gone to another city, and they said that they only allowed nonprofits in their city, and so that's, so my assumption was that that was the case, so if not, whatever the other options are, I just think it would be great if we could have a greater benefit to Bloomington nonprofits.
And I think that kind of proves the point, just to get a little more information on this and understand it a little bit better and what our, our possibilities and our options are.
Thank you.
Now, Councilmember Nelson.
Yeah, thanks, Mayor, super quick follow-up on one of our public commenters, Mr. Armitage had asked about the trash hauling, and it sounded like there were three houses on a private road, and so I guess my question, and this is like sort of clarification, I know that's three units and, and not four, but why would they not be allowed to get their own tr- trash hauling if they're in a private type situation, I know townhouses and other things can do that, so I don't need an answer right now, I know you're gonna come back with an answer there, I, it just, it was one of the things I was a little confused about in that whole conversation, because most of the multifamily community can get their own trash hauler, and is there a way to help make it, and what are the details of that, the safety issues and things, so. Sure. Mr. Mayor and councilmembers, Councilmember Nelson, our staff had been discussing this with Mr. Armitage, and in fact, a communication went out from staff to him this afternoon, I think it went by mail, I'm not sure if it went via email, so not certain if he had a chance to see it before this evening, and I did not have a chance to review it prior to the meeting tonight either, so we will, we will turn that information back around and get it in the council's hands this week. Yeah, thank you very much, appreciate that.
Yes, thanks, I had questions on that as well, so thanks for bringing that up, Councilmember Nelson. Counsel, anything else? If not, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adjourn this evening, no further council discussion, Mr. Brillard. Carter?
Aye.
Coulter?
Aye.
DeLisandro?
Aye.
Loman?
Aye.
Martin?
Aye.
Nelson?
I don't know if this is being overly technical, but it's after 11:30, so I, I don't know if we can actually act on this motion, I think we're stuck in the meeting.
Mayor Bussie?
Aye, motion carries, we'll go seven zeros, what we're going there.
Okay.
Was that an abstention?
We are adjourned, thank you much, thanks everybody for sticking out, sticking it out, long night, good discussion, thanks to staff who stuck it out this late as well, and anybody still watching, well done, thank you much, have a good night.